Members may participate in person or by electronic means. By council members, for council members participating by electronic means for the recently amended procedural bylaw, please ensure your video is turned on and let the clerk know if you leave the meeting for the purposes of confirming quorum. If council members, if any, by electronic means lose connection during any portion of the hearing, we'll recess until the connection is restored. Members of the public can view the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which will be tweeted out at @Vancityclerk on Twitter. Of course, we acknowledge, as always, we are on the unceded traditional territories of the Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh people, and thank them for having care for this land and look forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. Also want to recognize our great staff here at the City of Vancouver who work hard every day to make our city an exceptional place to live. Clerks, can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stewart in the chair, councillor Carr.
Here.
Councillor Degenova. Councillor Degenova. Not here at the moment. Councillor Frye.
Here.
Councillor Swanson. Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weeb.
Present.
Councillor Boyle will be joining us in just a few moments. Councillor Dominado. Not here at the moment. Councillor Bly.
Present.
Councillor Kirby Young. Not here. You have quorum, Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much, clerks. Let's see, so just before we begin hearing from speakers, a few things to remind folks that public may participate by speaking in person, by phone, or by submitting written comments to mayor and council. Speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should state whether they are in support or oppose the recommendations. And if they are resident of Vancouver, speakers may only speak once and should follow on on Twitter @Vancityclerk for updates on the progress of the meeting. And any comments on the agenda items can be submitted in writing through our online web form at Vancouver.ca forward slash public dash hearing dash comments. And of course, this link is on Twitter. Those speaking on behalf of other persons or groups will have eight minutes to speak, but only if those represented are also present on the phone or in person and must not be speakers themselves. And I'll ask those folks in this situation that confirm that they're on the line. If you have a presentation, I'll help you through navigate the slides. And again, these presentations have to be pre-registered with the clerks. And due to our longstanding commitment to diversity and inclusion, just reminder that when addressing speakers and staff, we will avoid using gendered honorifics and instead refer to the person by first name, last name, role, or title. We're in a quasi judicial body this evening, which means council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation and not drift too far into policy, although this is a fairly wide berth on this item. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, which should save debate until after the close of the speakers list. After hearing from speakers, council may approve the application, refuse the application, or refer the application for further consideration. If we don't finish from hearing speakers today, we will recess and reconvene the meeting on Tuesday, December fourteenth. We are looking at other dates in case we're not finished concluded on the fourteenth as well. So on November second, all council members were present and then declared a conflict of interest on this agenda item. Council received a staff presentation, asked two rounds of questions to staff, and heard up to speaker forty-nine over a period of two nights. To remember, any members of the public who wish to speak to council on this item, please call 1-833-353-8610, code 56723 hashtag before the close of the speakers list. And I'll repeat this number often, and it's on on Twitter and on the live stream. For any speakers that are physically in City Hall, the clerks will ask you to come forward to the podium when it is your turn to speak. And there'll be slight delay as the podium will have to be sanitized between speakers. We're gonna now gonna continue hearing from registered speakers on the Streamlining Rental Around Local Shopping Areas report. And the next speaker is speaker number fifty, Pierre Walder.
Hi there, Mayor, can you hear me?
Sure can. I've got the five minutes whenever you're ready to go.
Sorry to interrupt. We also have a presentation that I just want to make sure that's on the screen, just two slides.
Yeah, no problem. I'll just check what the clerks to make sure that's there. Clerks, I'm just trying to get on to my, I think I'm being connected now, but is the presentation ready to go, clerks?
Yes, it's on the screen.
Great, okay. So I'll ask you to time clerks as I'm just, my remote desktop seems to have cut out. So I'll need somebody to start my computer, I think, in chambers, but otherwise we can go ahead with the with the presentation. Peter Walder, please go ahead.
Great. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. I'm here to show my support for this policy. Now, I should maybe apologize in advance because this has been an emotional hearing for me. My best friend recently told me he's planning on moving to Kelowna because of how broken Vancouver's housing system is. He's living with his mom, with his wife, and their two kids, and they can't find suitable housing in the city. I grew up in Vancouver, and he's, I think, my only friend from my youth still in the City of Vancouver, the only one. But now my friend, like all the other ones before him, he's reached his limits, and I'm angry. I'm angry at the decades of planning and political cowardice that has prioritized the comfort of people who are lucky enough to buy houses decades ago, planning that is built upon a central conceit, keeping renters and people who can't afford houses out of most of the city unless they're in some basement. And by the way, this is what causes loneliness in this city. Friends and family not being able to live close to each other, being forced into sprawl or beyond. The other night, we heard house owners pontificate about how apartments cause loneliness while opposing desperately needed housing. And that is deeply offensive. Now, what I hope you're looking at is a comparison of when this policy was last proposed, almost two years ago, as the rental transition zone policy and how it is now. And you can see it's been already substantially reduced. Entire areas have been removed. And I think that when you councillors sent this back for more consultation, you knew what that meant. You knew what would happen. You knew that staff would get the message you were sending out loud and clear. Make this smaller, make it less controversial, make it less uncomfortable for the richest and most privileged residents in this city. And you got your wish. The policy has already been cut back, but I am worried that it still won't be enough, that even this small, modest program, after years of planning and consultation at work, still won't be timid and weak enough for you. Please flip slide two. This public hearing demonstrates what I'm talking about. This shows a couple of maps, which I got from Twitter, they're accurate up to the weekend, and it shows where the letters in opposition to this policy have come from. The written opposition here is overwhelmingly coming from just a few neighborhoods, especially West Point Gray. This is especially so on a per capita basis, as you can see, where West Point Gray is dominating this conversation. I say this is no accident. As part of the consultation leading up to this, staff held info sessions on the rental policy across the city. I attended one in twenty twenty, before the first COVID lockdown, to give you a sense of how long ago this was. This policy affects renters more than anyone, more than house owners. And yet there is an info session in Dunbar where relatively few renters live, and it was not one in the West End where many renters live. Despite this, staff's presentation on this policy showed that the vast majority of renters, and even a majority of owners, support this policy, but and yet I feel the need to remind you that your job is not to give Westside house owners a veto over housing policy. The SRP is supposed to be the replacement for the Affordable Housing Choices interim rezoning policy, which expired in twenty nineteen under your watch, and you still have not replaced it. Some of you recently have been talking about the health of living on arterial streets, how it isn't just to force renters to live only on busy polluted streets like that. And good, you should be concerned about that. It is unjust. But you have maintained a system where it is illegal to build new housing on the city's side streets. This is your chance to slightly change that. But until you do, you sound like hypocrites. Hypocrites who spit out platitudes while actively protecting the very evil you complain about. After three years of this council, the housing crisis is worse than it's ever been. You failed to take action on climate change. You failed to take action on housing. Why? I think it's because you're too afraid to rock the boat when healthy house owners show up to complain. I hope I'm wrong. I hope you'll prove me wrong if pass this policy because it deserves to be passed. The city needs more rental power, and renters deserve to live on side streets. This is a small, modest incremental policy. And if you won't pass this, what hope is there? You will pass any other, even slightly controversial policy. As leaders, you need to recognize that some people will never be satisfied unless the city is frozen in amber, the moment after they move in, of course. Because what exactly do you think is going to come from the Vancouver plan or the Broadway plan? A recommendation that nothing changed? Because I don't think that this council would have the stomach to act on any other recommendation. If you can't pass this, I just don't believe it's capable of happening, anything, and I'm done.
Thank you so much. That is the five minutes, and I don't see any questions for you, so I am going to move on to the next speaker. Thanks so much for participating tonight. Counsel, we're on to speaker number fifty-one, who's Aaron Wilson.
Hello?
Hi there. You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready. Please go ahead.
Hi there, my name is Aaron Wilson. I've lived in Vancouver for eleven years. I'm a homeowner. I heard about this public hearing via Van Van City BuzzFeed, I think it's called, Van City News, and I've been following along with the public hearings. And so basically, I just want to say that everybody here, they should all be ashamed of themselves. Like, you all got elected to these positions to fix the housing problems in Vancouver, and yet you guys just sit here with your obstructionist views. Look how much effort went into this proposal from the city staff. How many resources were piled into this? And you think that some trees and some nimby's are legitimate reason to not go ahead with this? The federal government is inviting immigrants into this country in the thousands, and we don't have anywhere to house them. Like, this is a big problem. In the previous building I lived in, there was four people living in a single five hundred square foot apartment. And this is common occurrence, like, all across the city, like, as the prices go up, people share smaller and smaller spaces, like, this is going to become like Hong Kong, where eventually a big swath of this city is going to be living inside, like, rooms the size of, like, closets. Like, it's not going in the right direction. I support this proposal and very, very strongly urge the council to vote for this proposal, or else get out of the way and let someone else do what has to be done. Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much for your time tonight. I don't see any questions for you, so I will move to the next speaker. Thanks though for participating. We have fifty-two Serena Jackson.
Hi, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. My name is Serena Jackson, and I'm a renter in Grandview, Woodlands, and I'm here to express my strong support for this policy. I have lived in my current home for just under a year, and I can say that my quality of life has improved thanks to where I live. I am a short walk from groceries, banking, pharmacies, restaurants, a hardware store, and other retailers. It's very easy for me to live without a car. We talk a lot about the benefits of walkable neighborhoods, fifteen minute cities, and whatever other jargon you would like to use. We know this kind of land use is better for people and the planet. This policy gives us more tools to make that happen. In both my personal and professional life, I see the impacts of our housing crisis up close every day. I'm not here to speak on behalf of my employer or my advisory body, but I co-chair the city's TS LGBTQ plus advisory committee, and I work for a youth-serving nonprofit. Every day, I see to young people, people living with disabilities, folks with multiple marginalized identities, and they can't find an affordable place to live. Our severe lack of housing supply has created an environment where even tiny dilapidated basement suites, far from shops and services, have immense competition from renters desperate for a place to call home. This, of course, drives up the price of rent for everyone and continues to stack power imbalances in favor of landlords, and it results in droves of young, smart, creative people leaving Vancouver. I want to live in a vibrant city where everyone has a chance to live in a home that they can afford in a neighborhood that meets their daily needs. I don't want to live in a playground for the wealthy where the service workers who build and maintain that playground are forced to endure lengthy commutes, which we know are bad for people and for the planet. I know this policy is not a magic wand or a cure-all, but we need more rental housing, lots of it. We know it's unfair to regulate renters to allow arterial and cramped basement suites. Building more rentals and building rentals on side streets makes sense, and this policy can help make that happen. Counsel, I am asking you to please pass this policy. Thank you.
Thanks so much. There are no questions for you, but appreciate you calling in this evening. I'm just going to move to the next speaker, who is number counsel fifty-three of one hundred fifteen, is Nathan Edelson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Stewart. I'd like to begin by acknowledging the Coast Salish people on whose ancestral land we gather tonight, and to thank members of council, each and every one, for receiving a recent consultant report concerning the future of Falls Creek South for information so that resident staff and others can work together to expand affordable housing and address local and citywide needs through what I believe can be an ongoing partnership. I think there are some interesting ideas in the report before you tonight, but it also contains some precedents that put at risk the quality of life and the sense of community engagement in many neighborhoods. And I would recommend that that's it be referred to city plan process for further consideration and refinements. But the core idea of expanding rental housing in different parts of the city, I think, is excellent. As councillor Weeb stated, the city needs more Falls Creek Souths, highly livable, truly affordable, mixed-income neighborhoods. Falls Creek South has the benefit of the creek, Granville Island, wonderful views, and a considerable amount of publicly owned land. But every neighborhood has large parks, school grounds, and local commercial districts that can serve as focal points for medium-density development. And most of this can be away from busy arterials that pose considerable livability and health challenges for local residents. And the city can use a combination of strategic procurement and zoning regulations to achieve outcomes that will be meaningful for generations to come. Several other helpful amendments were made by council in its work on Falls Creek South that may be relevant to this report. First concerns existing buildings. In most instances, existing homes are worth protecting for their likely building life. This is in part due to their embodied environmental qualities and in part because, as Gordon Price has noted, the best way to build affordable housing is to build old housing. Scott Hind has mentioned a number of ways in which densification can be achieved with development that limits underground parking, maximizes the amount of space actually used for dwellings, and respects the essential qualities of existing homes. Second part has to do with non-market development. The operation and possibly the construction of affordable housing is best managed by non-market enterprises. As some critics have noted, too much value is going into the hands of those who control and speculate on land before even a single unit is produced. And it is challenging for city staff to oversee private landlords to ensure the ongoing delivery of housing affordability. Finally, community services must be provided in keeping with the needs of existing as well as future residents. What I have found is when they are given the time, information, and respectful process to understand current challenges and opportunities, local residents, business people, and service providers can work with the city and senior governments to come together to address both local and citywide needs. This is a challenging opportunity for city plan and its implementation through general genuine community planning. And I honestly believe that part of the job of city planners, members of council, and community leaders who are worthy of those titles is to help bring people together to seek solutions to the challenges of the day and to do this in a way that is respectful, not to dismiss others as nimby, uncaring, or worse. This is part of why we honor many who have come before us, Art Phillips, Walter Hardwick, Marguerite Ford, and this year, I think especially, a Philip Owen. To buy borrow a phrase from a recent American president, the most underestimated of all, who overcame those who mislabeled him with a smile and a twinkle in his eye and became a champion for so many of us. Large area rezonings like this, the one proposed before you, are likely to lead to a great deal of uncertainty, some speculation, and a limited amount of truly affordable housing and an urban design that may be problematic. I think it needs the refinement of local planning, or at least holds that possibility open. That doesn't mean that initial new projects can't go ahead, but there should be a way of making sure that each neighborhood can be looked at so that the design can fit into those neighborhoods. Thank you very much for your time, and I wish you luck in this in this hard decision.
Thank you so much. There are no questions for you, but do want to thank you for sharing your thoughts this evening, as always. And thanks, counsel. We're going to move on to speaker number fifty-four, who is Julius Setoni.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. Yes, I'd like to recognize the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh nations as owning the land on which I live. My name is Julius Chetany. I'm a trained professionally trained biological scientist, a scientific illustrator, and an educator. I live in Zone C2 in West Point Gray, and I do support rezoning. But I'd like to make two important points about this. So first of all, we are undoubtedly, from all the mountains of evidence available in a climate emergency, and I hope that nobody disputes that because there is no reason to anymore at all. So we need to desperately both reduce emissions of greenhouse gases and also enlist widespread public cooperation in protecting biological diversity. These are the underpinnings for what we need for a sustainable future. So as a biologist, I'd like to make two points specifically. One of them is that, yes, rezoning is going to be necessary and critically important to reduce vehicle emissions caused by people needing to move around a lot to shop and do other things that they need to farther away from home. By rezoning areas that will allow people to walk to shopping centers, for example, we can reduce this problem of urban deserts that we're seeing. That makes it more difficult for people to live sustainable lives for the long term. Also, rezoning would reduce the intensity or the speed of urban sprawl and the large cost of vehicle emissions that this would cause. So although I do enjoy renting in a neighborhood here in West Point Gray where there are many beautiful old houses, what's more important to me is to fight climate change. We have to make sacrifices for this, absolutely, and provide people with more options for sustainable living and reduce vehicle use. Now, there, my second point is that I want to make it crystal clear that we also need to find a way while rezoning and creating these taller apartment complexes to preserve the large trees that we have in Vancouver. We have a kind of an urban forest here, and this is critically important for a couple of reasons. And I think that it can be done, but this, there must be measures put in place to preserve some of these large trees. So for example, not only are they a tourist draw, which, you know, is economically important, but more important than that, the trees are important for the mental and emotional health of city residents, especially as population density increases, especially as we rezon for this reason. We're going to need for people to have these connections to the natural world. And that's where the second point comes in, on this second point, that one of the important things we need to do is to be able to reach people in educational and conservation outreach to inspire them to show concern for the natural world, which is going to go hand in hand with fighting the climate crisis. And to do that, we rely on any kind of connection they have to the natural world. For many people, seeing these large trees on along streets is the only is the closest they're going to get to some of these ancient forests that we're striving to protect in B.C. here, for example, or to similar organisms that you might find in some of these ancient forests, not the same, but similar. So we need this kind of connection that people have to these to be available to them as well. And we need this to be a reminder for them for what we will lose if we don't take action. I just think it's super important for this. Also, they provide a direct benefit to fighting urban climate change by temperature regulation, atmospheric conditioning such as atmospheric carbon sequestration, habitat space for birds and other pollinators, and also as a pool of diverse mycorrhizal fungi into the city that support our urban forest and our gardens. So as a biologist, I can't overstate the importance of protecting Vancouver's urban forest, especially the plantings of the largest trees, whether they are native species especially, but also some of the ones that have been introduced, because some of these are really impressively large and would make a large psychological impact on people in a way that is going to help us in the long run in fighting the climate crisis. We need to make sure that whatever means are used to set up the the new apartment buildings that are going to be put in these places, that they take measures to not remove these largest trees. But as I said, I do support rezoning if it is going to allow for the reduced emission of greenhouse gases because that is something that we are long, long overdue on acting upon. And I would support the Climate Emergency Action Plan in every way that I can.
Thank you.
And that's it basically for me.
Thank you so much. That's the five minutes. I don't see any questions for you from council, so I'm going to move to the next speaker. But thanks for participating and sorry about mispronouncing your last name.
No worries. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to speaker number fifty-five, Maureen Sharon.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Oh, okay. First of all, you all pretty well know me. I've lived here my entire life. My first comment is always to thank you guys so much for the too many long, long, long days and all your efforts in in doing your jobs. I I don't envy you. I'm going to jump in right first off to what's a minor point, but I'm really not happy with the removal of the setbacks on the upper floors. And right now, we seem to focus on the only people being negatively affected by that as being the existing single-family homeowners or duplex owners. And and I think we need to look further into the future and realize that removing that and having more shading and, you know, kind of lack of sun is really going to impact most, the eventual rental properties that are going to be there because, you know, ten, twenty, or thirty years, that's what's going to be there, and then those people are going to be impacted by that. So I I really think the value of those setbacks the way they are now really should be retained. But the other thing that I that I want to speak of is I can't help thinking we're we're stuck in in Einstein's comment of constantly doing the same thing and expecting to have different results. So we we have really no idea whether there's going to be a land lift as a result of this rezoning. You know, kind of lots of signs point to that it that's going to be there and lots of, you know, I can't in my mind see why it wouldn't be going up. But I I hearken back to the chief planner having told us that the city really has no idea of the total zoned capacity that is available already. And so I'll look back to the one decision, and I don't remember when it was made in the last ten, fifteen years, where we rezoned all the arterial streets for whatever it is today. And we didn't understand in any great idea whether we were going to get what we wanted. We certainly didn't get affordability, else we wouldn't be sitting here tonight having to deal with this again. And and so we keep rezoning with this grand hope that somehow we're going to get affordability and I we keep doing it again and again and again, and we don't seem to ever get there. And so I don't have an answer at this point, but I'm kind of hoping that somebody can come up with something that actually has a better chance than this of getting the affordable housing that we need, because I don't think rezoning is how we get there. And I wish I was more involved in the industry to kind of make some suggestions, but doing the same thing over and over again isn't getting us there. So and my last point is, I know that that there's lots of these nimby comments and whatever. But really, and I keep saying this, the entire planet cannot live here, and at some point... And at some point, we need to figure out kind of what the quote and goal is and when is the city kind of to the point that we want it. Cause I sure the hell hope I'm not here at the time it begins to look like the downtown core with twenty and thirty-story buildings everywhere because that just destroys the livability that everybody wants to come here for. So, (sigh) um, I'm, I'm not, I'm definitely opposed to the portion of this that goes to the, the streets one block off the arterials. Um, I'm not totally happy with the C two piece because I really wish I could see a plan that I would be delivering the affordable housing that we need. And somebody made a comment to me one day about something and she said, well, look at all the density we got. And I said that, uh, the, uh, the objective was not density, it was affordability. So in my mind, you know, kind of that particular discussion, I said that, uh, that plan failed because it didn't deliver what we really wanted.
Thanks so much. That is the, that's the five minutes. Thank you so much. There are no questions, so I am going to move.
Okay.
The next speaker. Thank you so much for participating tonight. Uh, next, uh, speaker fifty-six out of one fifteen is, um, Cameron Thorne, speaker number fifty-six.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Council. Uh, my name is Cameron Thorne, uh, Vice President Development with Strand. Uh, thanks again for the opportunity to speak with you this evening in support of the recommendations within the, within the report before you. Um, I've presented before you a number of times now, and I think, uh, many of you know that our company has a long-term vision of providing purpose-built, secured rental housing in multiple locations across our city. We currently have some nine hundred rental units either completed, under construction, or in the approval process with the city. Um, so we're committed to rental. Um, I believe the recommendations proposed in the report will facilitate the delivery of critically needed new rental housing. It's no secret to anyone that Vancouver's facing a, a housing supply crisis and a lack of affordable, uh, rental homes. From my perspective, um, there are some, some areas of, of particular interest to me and, and that I want to highlight here. Um, one is that amending the C two district schedule to enable, uh, six-story mixed-use rental projects without a rezoning is, again, very supportable. Uh, I like the idea of implementing the residential rental tenure design guidelines as this will provide guidance and clarity on building designs, which will enable simpler building forms, which will be better for, uh, the green buildings policy, mitigating construction costs and enhancing the public realm. And I'm supportive of, of housing in areas closer to transit, shopping and services that reduce reliance on the automobile. Uh, processing times under the current, um, methods or processes to build rental housing can be quite lengthy and carry with it a fair degree of uncertainty regarding, uh, both the density, the massing and the form of development that will eventually be agreed upon. When you look at the letter of inquiry process and then the timeline from a rezoning application to a public carrying, you're looking at somewhere around fifteen to eighteen months of processing time and the associated financial carrying costs, uh, to, to, uh, to go through that, that time period. And that, that has a real impact on the financial viability, viability of rental projects. Um, I believe that in general, if we can look at incentives and policy changes that can improve the processing times and provide more clarity and certainty, will certainly reduce the costs and the risks of building purpose-built rental housing, and these should be applauded and encouraged. Uh, finally, I want to thank staff, uh, for the technical work and the extensive consultations undertaken over the past two years, uh, to get us to this point. And, uh, I would strongly encourage councils to support the recommendations in this report. Thanks very much.
Thanks so much. You do have, uh, three questions?
Mayor Stewart, point of privilege. It's Counselor Kirby Young. Could I be adding to you?
Uh, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Counselor Dejanova, Counselor Swanson, Counselor Dominado, Counselor Kirby Young, questions for this, uh, speaker? So Counselor Dejanova first, up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
Thanks so much. I'm wondering if you might be able to comment a little bit on, you had talked about the timelines and that you felt that this, this would move forward. I, I mean, I've, I've seen a lot of different policies come forward, uh, some of them broader than others. Um, but what we're considering here is, is in a sense, a different way forward. But we've already had STUR, we've had Rental One Hundred, and short, the social housing or rental tenure, and it is supposed to be or rental tenure. So I understand right now staff don't have the capacity to move that out to market rental. So right now it's just social housing or non-market housing. Um, do, do you feel that STUR or Rental One Hundred, uh, significantly met those needs of, to address timelines? Or the time that you would be waiting in the city of Vancouver versus other municipalities to get through the process?
Well, certainly under Rental One Hundred, um, and we built some projects under Rental One Hundred. It was a good program, but there's still the timelines to go through the rezoning process. Um, and, and, and what I like is, uh, again, is the idea of being able to move true to a, basically to a D.P. application as opposed to a rezoning application, and that will, as I say, save, uh, uh, you know, fifteen to eighteen months. So we still, we still submitted a rezoning application under Rental One Hundred. So, uh, to me, there's a difference between that and this.
Okay, and, and I'm just wondering, can you, can you comment a little bit on, uh, the time that this, this takes? As you said, uh, you know, creates a financial burden. Do you feel that that?
Sorry, I think you broke up. I mean, I can't hear you.
Counselor Dejanova is frozen.
Yeah, I lost you there.
Yep. So I, what I'm going to do is just pause her timer and I'll move on to Counselor Swanson.
Yeah, thanks. I've got two questions. One is if, um, processing time is reduced as is proposed here and your costs are subsequently reduced, would you reduce the rents that you charge in the resulting buildings?
Well, good evening, Counselor Swanson. Um, the, the rents under the program that we're looking at is, is market rent. So I think in terms of, of, uh, reducing the, the, uh, reducing the rents is, um, not so much. The question is to me is can we afford to deliver the building in the first place? I mean, if we get into situations where, uh, the carrying costs become excessive, and I think you heard from some other speakers in the last couple of nights, it, it made these projects, um, uh, to a point where they weren't feasible. Um, certainly, r- rather than arbitrarily, I guess, reducing a rent, I think you could afford to build it and deliver it at a more, at a more effective rate, which in a sense, I guess, you could rent it for less in that scenario as well. Just the cost goes down. So obviously the costs are lower, you can afford to, 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 to rent it at a lower rate in that sense, too.
Okay, second question is, as a developer, can you see yourself taking advantage of the provisions in this report for, um, building below-market rental?
I, you know, I.
Or no?
It's not the kind of plot, y- yeah, Counselor Swanson, it's, it's not what I, uh, built to date. I, I, I think that, that there are some, some folks that are more specialized in that kind of thing. It's not to say that it's not something that couldn't be explored under the right circumstances. Um, you know, we focused on delivering a certain type of housing. And as I said, I think there's some people that specialize in building, uh, non-market or below-market. Um, but certainly for all of us, and these incentives will certainly help deliver, I think, a spectrum of housing, whether it's below-market or, or rental housing as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Swanson. We have, uh, Counselor Dominado next.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Um, yeah, just a couple of questions. Um, you may have heard some of the callers before over the last couple of nights, and, and there have been concerns raised about, um, whether, uh, this proposal will, um, address affordability in the city. I, I'm interested in your perspective on, um, what adding, uh, rental supply does do for the city in the context of that conversation. Um, not necessarily about these specific buildings, but, um, if you could just comment on that in, in the broader context of what adding supply might do.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to say anything that's earth-shattering that you haven't heard from other people before. Um, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's really an issue of demand and supply. And, and, you know, we're, we're, we're not price, uh, setters, we're, we're price takers. So, you know, we've got, in terms of us delivering housing, we've got to contend with land costs, we've got to contend with labor costs, rising construction costs. They're all, they're all factors that, that are, uh, inputs into, into the, into the ability to build rental housing. Again, as I said earlier, if, if, if the carrying costs and, and the level of risk go down because you're, you're, uh, reducing the uncertainty associ- the uncertainty and the timeline is associated with the rezoning process, it's going to enable you to, uh, perhaps take on projects that maybe wouldn't be otherwise feasible. So you're going to be adding more supply. And again, if you add more supply, um, you're going to be able to, um, um, certainly (sigh) create more opportunities. Uh, more supply is going to, we al- we already know that we've got an overwhelming amount of demand. So obviously adding a little more supply or as much supply as we can, can add is going to, is going to certainly help the, help the, help, uh, reduce the cost or at least make housing a little more affordable. And we've seen that in other places like Seattle, um, as well.
Uh, thanks for that. And just one more question, um, just, uh, with respect to, you mentioned the, the timelines for processing these applications. Um, eh, one of the things that we have done at the city is we've had, um, uh, you know, expedited process for housing applications. Do you think there could be, um, and I've got this question sent in to staff, but, um, did we look at an expedited process for rental? Beyond, beyond the rezoning?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly would welcome it, um, um, but to me, this is an important first set step. If we can, you know, from my experience, the, the timelines, as I said earlier, are say fifteen to eighteen months to get through the, the, the pre-application, um, or the inquiry process and the, and the rezoning process. And then you have somewhere between, say, six to eight months to get through a development permit process. So if you were able to go from, uh, you know, from, uh, twenty-four months, say, uh, combining the overall rezoning D.P. process down to six to eight months, that to me would be a, a significant first step. But again, if there's other, if there's other things that staff could, could offer as well as, uh, a way to streamline even the D.P. process for, uh, for rental, I, I certainly think that would be welcomed.
Great, thank you. That's probably my time.
Counselor Kirby Young, and then we'll get to you, Counselor Dejanova.
Yeah, thank you. I have two questions I'd like to tackle with the time I have. Um, one, the first one is following up on Counselor Swanson's question when she asked you about, um, affordability and if it would lower the rents. And you had emphasized sort of the no longer having the requirement for the rezoning process. Would you say that the starting rents for any specific new building and new homes would be lower if it gets to market faster? That eighteen months that you referenced than if it goes to market or after having to go through a longer process at a later date?
Yeah, I would say, I would say in theory, your, your starting rents can be, can be lower for that very fact. You are, your, your costs are lower, so in theory, your, your starting rents can be lower.
Okay, so time does make a difference, in other words?
Time, ti- time, time definitely makes a difference in both in just the absolute time of getting through the process. And again, I think the other thing that's worth emphasizing is, um, reducing the risk. You know, there's a, there's a premium, um, in terms of even getting bank financing. When there's a greater degree of, of risk, the, the banks are going to want to see, you know, a, a higher yield, higher return on cost just for the fact that you're carrying a greater amount of risk. So again, you can, you, you can reduce the risk and the time that, those are, those are benefits on, on both fronts.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then my second question i- is really this, and that's a lot of the rental incentive programs that we've had have been time-bound, either pilots or a specific number of projects, um, and some have ceased, um, some had an extension, um, in order to bring in more applications because they weren't necessarily generating the interest. If council, from your perspective as an industry person, if council didn't pass this report, what rental programs or mechanisms would you see that you would have to bring rental forward if you wanted to do this? What, what's left standing, exactly, for you to build rental?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question. I mean, as I said earlier, you know, did, did a number of things under the Rental One Hundred. Uh, you know, it, it certainly had, had benefits, um, but, you know, I don't know, um, I don't know what program I, we would, we would look to build things under, um, in the absence of this. We would just be, we'd be caught in the same parad- paradigm of, of, um, of, uh, you know, longer timelines and, um, in, in no real, um, sort of opportunity to, to compete with, you know, say in the C two zone where developers or condo units are, are, um, building, um, you know, lower density, but, but, but they're building condo. Um, we would be competing against, against developers of that housing product. And, and certainly it doesn't make it easy to, to, to compete with that. So, um, we, we, I think the end, the end result would be you just wouldn't get the, um, supply of rental housing that I think the council's looking for.
Right, because we, we have a num- we don't have a number of sort of sustained, ongoing rental programs right now. And then there's the economics of building rental, the strata, that's what I hear you saying, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And I, I mean, Rental One Hundred was a good program, but, you know, again, as you say, a lot of these programs are time-limited. To me, this would be, you know, if this was a, a, a change to the zoning district, this, you know, and it's obviously something that lives in perpetuity. Um, you know, I think, uh, I think that, again, it's another, it's another thing that creates more certainty for, uh, for the development community. And I think, and, and for people in the area, knowing, certainly it's good for everybody, whether you're a builder of rental housing or you're people living in the area. I think it's just better to, to try and have some programs that you know, um, aren't time-limited.
Okay, and one last quick question. Um, for sort of the, the non-C two zones or the off arterial, people suggested that lower forms, that, you know, two or three stories would be preferable, like a quadruplex, triplex, things of that nature. Do you have a general comment on the economics around delivering rental, um, in that more sort of gentle density or sort of different typologies?
Yeah, uh, I, I, you know, I'd be hesitant to, to wager, um, a, 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 a response on that because I, we haven't built that form of housing. Um, uh, so I, I, I guess in a sense, there's, there's probably other people that can answer that question better, um, than me, I'm afraid.
Okay, no problem. Fair enough. Thanks for speaking to council today.
Thanks so much. Hey, Counselor Dejanova, you've got about three minutes left.
Thanks, uh, and thanks to my colleagues for answering, for asking one of my questions to catch me up while I was trying to, to get my app going here again for WebEx. I'm wondering if you can answer this, uh, this question since I was going to ask you about the outcomes on affordability. The SHORT program that I'd mentioned before, are you aware of that? Or is that something that you're, um, you understand sort of the SHORT program that became permanent from a pilot recently?
Uh, the SHORT program? No, I'm, I'm, I'm not.
All right, so, uh, the social housing or rental tenure, I mean, to the acronym SHORT. Um, I mean, the policy in looking at this as a way forward, what we're considering here tonight, and looking at also other ways that that could, that we've tried to move that forward. I mean, it says to continue to implement the social housing or rental tenure program, to pri- prioritize and expedite affordable housing projects through the development process, the intent being to learn lessons from the pilot. So we had a pilot, you know, certain number of weeks rezoning, certain number D.P. Um, but i- if you go down the report, and it was late twenty eighteen, this report specifically, that projected in ten years of delivery that it would be twenty-five hundred nonprofit-led projects, forty-two hundred inclusionary housing units and fifty-nine hundred city land projects, like fifty-nine hundred units delivered there. Do you think this is a better way forward than that if that included rental tenure and market rental tenure to deliver more affordable housing? But you had, you know, uh, you'd, you'd have like a, a twelve-week D.P. process and, you know, maybe a little bit longer on the rezoning side? But it was kind of set in stone? Would that be helpful?
Well, I mean, I do recall, um, you, you're right, there, there was a program that I do recall, um, reading on several years back. And I think at least my own expectations or thoughts were a lot of it was focused more around the delivery of below-market housing. And again, I think, I think those, these are, these are all great tools, so I wouldn't want to criticize those. And I think maybe in some ways, you, you, you know, you've got a number of policy objectives that you're trying to achieve. You're trying to create a spectrum of housing. And so maybe you do focus, um, you know, the, the shorter, what did you say, a twelve-week D.P. process? Maybe, maybe that, and given, given that you can only process so many applications at the same time, maybe you, you focus those really expediated timelines on, on the kind of housing that is, that is oftentimes harder to deliver, like below-market housing. And, and, um, you're not saying that we wouldn't want a, a fast D.P. process for- And, and you're not saying that we wouldn't want a, a fast DP process for, for market rental housing. But, but again, if you, if you, if you've got limited bandwidth in terms of where your staff resources can go, I would suggest that you, you look at those, those, those shorter DPs for, again, for social housing and market housing. And, and, and I think that the very fact that you're going to, again, hopefully tonight, or whatever night you get through the speakers list, but hopefully support the recommendations before you, that will be a, a, in my mind, a big step in, in creating a greater supply of rental housing, even if we aren't dealing, or even if we're not enjoying 12-week DP processing timelines.
Thanks. That's over my time. Thanks, Mayor Stewart, and good to know we don't have to reinvent the wheel all the time, but thank you very much.
Thanks so much. That's it for questions, speaker. Appreciate you coming in this evening. And we're going to move on to speaker 57, Gail Gatt.
Hello?
Hi there. You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, fellow councillors. I am speaking tonight in opposition to this motion. I have a number of objections, but my main objection is around the whole process of the city, city planning. Citywide planning that we were promised by every one of you who have now been elected to council. In the last election, there was a lot of discontent about the way neighborhoods were not listened to and the way things were run through. And it was an election issue, and each one of you promised that we in the neighborhoods, we the people who live here, would have a greater say and that we would be listened to more carefully and that there would be citywide planning. If what I observed, and particularly with respect to this particular initiative that has come from staff, is that this is a process of dealing with city planning before there is any citywide planning. This particular project is, or this particular proposal is just breathtaking in its scope. It is going to affect almost every neighborhood in the city. And it is being done without, with very little consultation. It's being done without notice to the property owners who are going to be faced with this right in front of their face. I'm one of them, if this goes through. I don't believe that there's been enough notice. Usually until about a couple of years ago, if there was going to be rezoning, there would be boards up where there's going to be rezoning. Now this is just going to, to be right across the city and various secondary arteries. I don't think people know what's happening. I don't think that there's been enough notice. I don't think there's been enough consultation. But I really object on the grounds that you are just snatching or that these sorts of proposals, if they're passed, and others that have been passed, are just snatching out any groundwork, anything for us to really deal with in terms of the characters of our neighborhoods. Because the rezoning is taking place, as I said, at a breathtaking rate before that process is even underway. The other objection that I have is that city council asked approximately a year ago for couns, or for staff to bring back the report in detail based on the projections that many planning initiatives were being brought forward in terms of what the realistic growth rate is. That didn't happen in any meaningful way. And so I do not know how we can justify spending taxpayers' money, having city staff spend, I don't know how many hours, we don't get reports. It'd be nice to see a price tag of, you know, of, of what it actually cost us in salaries to get this 348-page report and all the staff meetings and all the meetings with stakeholders, et cetera, along the way, when we don't even have a realistic idea of why we are making the projections or why staff has adopted the projections of population growth. It seems to me that we are just planning in a vacuum. I hope that you reject this. I hope that you leave something to be dealt with in the city planning process. And I hope that the campaign promise that you each addressed and promised that it would be better this time around is involvement of the neighborhoods. I don't think there's been proper notification at all, as I said, just to the surrounding landowners and the surrounding residents, let alone people in the city at large. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you for listening. I understand that that is your, you know, your charter obligation to do it. But I thank you for the service you put in, the evenings that you put in, trying to address all of the matters that staff brings to you week after week after week. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, councillor.
Thanks very much. You do have a question from Counselor Kirby Young. Counselor Kirby Young, go ahead.
Yeah, hi there, and thanks for speaking. I just wondered if I could ask you one question, just for context, it's helpful to understand people's situations. You mentioned that the scope of the plan you felt was breathtaking. And I'm wondering, because this applies sort of just to off arterial, is that your specific situation? And you don't have to answer if you don't want to, but just trying to get a sense, are you close into an arterial? Or can you describe a little bit for us how you feel this is going to impact you?
I live a block over from the arterial, that, one of the arterials that would be affected by this. Essentially, my neighbors across the street will be, their land could be assembled and I could be facing, I don't know, a six-story building, I go, I don't, up to a six-story building, I understand. And, you know, there's not that much information without reading a long, long report. But my understanding is that there could be an apartment block for the whole block. It could be, you know, a major reconstruction in my neighborhood. It would block views, it would block light, et cetera, and so on. So there's all sorts of considerations, but, you know, and this isn't just my neighborhood. I mean, this is every neighborhood you want to go in, into, more or less. There's going to be some secondary arterials where there's going to be this very dense housing put in. And we just don't know. If this goes through, somebody assembles land and they can put up an apartment block in front of me. And the other thing that really worries me, councillor, is that when this first came out, it was my understanding that in fact my very house could be assembled and there could be four-story buildings. So that it doesn't seem that there's very much left whatsoever to plan in our neighborhood in a citywide planning process.
Okay, so a big concern that I hear just reflecting back is, is scale and change. Is that fair to say?
Yes, dramatic change, citywide change, yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you hearing that.
Thanks so much. That's it for questions, and we'll move on to the next speaker. Thank you again for your time this evening and your attention to this matter. The next speaker is Nathan Hawkins, speaker number 58.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. You have up to five minutes.
Hi, counsel. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to this tonight. My name's Nathan. I am 27 years old and I am a renter in Champlain Heights. And the apartment building that I live in, it was made possible by one of the predecessors to this policy. So thank you for passing that policy. I imagine a lot of you have not tried to rent in the market recently. So I wanted to paint a picture of what it took me to find the apartment unit that I live in now and why I'm so in support of this policy. I used to live with my parents in Carisdale, and I was looking to move out of my house for about two years. Every week, I spent three to five hours browsing real estate listings, trying to find a place that I could rent affordably per my income. And it took me two years to find this place. And technically, it's not even in that less than 30% of my monthly income that I'm spending on rent. I pay about 35%. And I just, it, it's such a desperate situation for a lot of people. Frankly, I'm doing pretty well. I'm on track to make about $53,000 this year after tax, that's about $45,000. And I'm paying 15,000, 1,500 a month in rent. And like frankly, that's a lot better than many other Canadians when our median income is around 37, 38,000 a year. So if I am in trouble, think about how many more people, even less fortunate than me, are in trouble with the status quo. It, it's just, it's unacceptable. And I'm really hoping that the councillors recognize a vote no against this policy is a vote in support of the status quo. It's a vote in support of people like myself and others who are spending years, hundreds of hours looking for a place they can afford to rent. That's just, that's not okay. The second part of my story is the preservation of single detached housing is anti-family. Because I would love to live in the neighborhood where my parents live in Carisdale. I would love to be able to afford to be a five-minute walk away from them. When I have kids, I would love for them to be a couple of blocks away and they can come and see my kids whenever. But I can't afford to live in Carisdale. And I can't afford to live there because we have refused to allow new housing in that neighborhood unless it's knocking over an old affordable house to build a new, more expensive house. And that's just so backwards to me. I, I, I really think that there's many, many families who are being split apart because the insane rise in housing costs in our city. It just makes it impossible for children to live near their parents. And, and that is destroying families. So frankly, if you care about families, you should be voting in support of more apartment buildings, more affordable housing in communities, especially the mansion communities like West Point Gray, like Shaughnessy. And, and we should be encouraging more of Carisdale to be like the apartment portion of Carisdale, which is wonderful and less like the large houses with the 70-foot frontage in Carisdale. The third part of the story that I want to tell is the status quo forces new condos to compete with existing affordable housing. I see this all the time along their Buttes corridor. There's a three-story affordable building that has probably been around since the 30s or earlier. And that land gets purchased, it gets knocked down, and what do they build instead? They build a four-story condo there. Knocking down a affordable three-story building to build a four-story building that is less affordable is completely insane. It, it's so bad for affordability. It's so bad for the climate and the embodied carbon that are in those buildings. It just makes no sense. We should be preserving as many of those existing affordable apartments as we could, not forcing new housing to compete with those people, and instead make single detached luxury homeowners compete. Because that, that's how we displace the fewest amount of people. That's how we add the most affordable housing. There's some mansion lot that I saw in West Point Gray that's like, it's just absurdly large. You could easily fit like a 2,000 apartment blocks on this piece of land that's like 300 by 300 square feet. But we don't. We, we don't allow that. The only thing we allow is a giant mansion, which just makes no sense if you, if you agree that we are in a housing crisis.
I agree. We're at the nine minutes, so, but, but you do have a question from Counselor D'Agostino. Please go ahead, Counselor D'Agostino.
Thanks very much. And I, I have to say, I appreciate that you signed up to speak tonight, and thank you for that. And I understand that it's difficult for people who are renting. In fact, I have helped people recently who've been trying to find rental. And I know that it's out of reach for many people, even, you know, even choosing the lowest rental, even if that doesn't meet their needs for a family or, or whomever that might be. So I, I just wanted to acknowledge that. And I also wanted to ask you the question, ask you a question. Do you feel that, is six stories enough? I mean, is it fair to say that here we're looking at six stories and we're kind of chopping things up in a sense? Like we look at duplexes separately, but then in doing that, we can, you know, you literally get, as you said, a newly built home, and it costs more, but half the land in a newly built home in East Vancouver recently sold for more than the entire price of the lot and the old home. So I'm just wondering, when a, you know, a developer goes to buy up land to build six stories, or maybe it should be eight stories, or maybe in some areas it should be more, some areas it could be less. Do you think that that's helpful, you know, to the next generation too, as you mentioned, you know, your kids one day? Do you think that we're going to be able to sustain ourselves? So first question is, do you think six stories is enough? And do you think that, you know, not looking at the land economics here, if we're increasing them, is that fair to future generations?
I think this policy gives me a sliver of hope for the future of Vancouver and affordable housing. And I'm really strongly in support of this policy in particular. I think I would like to see more density. It does, it doesn't really matter to me if it's height, if it's more lot coverage, if it's less setback. I just want to see more homes on a piece of land. However we make that happen, I think that's great. But really, I think we need to have more apartments that are off arterials. Half a block is not enough, in my opinion. I'd like to see four, five blocks off of arterials that are allowing you to build 10-story, 12-story affordable homes. I think the proposal for the Jericho lands is like really, really optimistic and, and just amazing vision for the future of the city. And in, in terms of fairness for the next generation, I, I think the zoning that prohibits anything but single detached homes, I see that as a subsidy to luxury, single-family homeowners. I, I, I think that whatever you call this land lift, it's actually, that's the true price. Like that, if you house more than one person per acre of land, that's, that's what you can afford. And so I, I'm really, I guess, against density and height restrictions on land.
I, I suppose I'm wondering, when we consider increasing zone capacity, that can provide a lift to the homeowner? And when they go to sell it to a developer or someone who's assembling the lots for a developer, that can put the price up of the land and result in higher cost market rental? Because it all equates downwards and the market pays for that. So I'm, I'm wondering, do you think, you had said you support 10, 12 stories. Would it disappoint you if you looked in Carisdale and saw somewhere that you thought, you know, 12 stories off of this arterial might actually be a good idea in this spot? But the developer built six because that's what we allowed them to do as city council. Would that disappoint you?
I, I think that the answer to that is we can be even more ambitious. Like I would love to see the city and nonprofits buying land at whatever the single detached home price is. And then they go to the city, they get rezoned for 12, whatever. It doesn't matter the height of the density to me, as long as there's more homes and more affordability. I, I'd love to see us go that route, right? Like if, if we're so worried about landowners and developers capturing that value, let's fund the city. Let's fund nonprofits. Let's fund the government to do it.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate you making the time to speak to council and waiting to speak to us. Thank you.
Counselor Swanson?
Hi.
For questions?
Yeah, thanks for coming in. Don't answer this if you don't want. You said that you paid about 1,500 a month in rent. Is that for a studio or a one-bed or?
That's a one-bed with a den. It's about 700 square feet.
Whoa. So you, with this program, in order to rent a place like that in Carisdale, you'd probably end up paying, well, I'd say a minimum 2,300 a month. It wouldn't be really affordable on your income. Is that a problem for you, that the, that the rental housing that gets built under this program isn't really going to be affordable for people that are making 50K?
I think that this will encourage the, the doors to open for more rental being built. And maybe it's not quite at the level of affordability for me, but at least it's a step in the right direction. And I think i- if council takes a step like this and shows that they're encouraging more rental development, even more affordability can come in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. That's it for questions, speaker. Appreciate you coming in tonight. Appreciate you coming in tonight, thanks, council. We, uh, speakers fifty-nine, sixty and sixty-one have withdrawn, so we have, uh, speaker number sixty-two, it says Michael Weeb here, so, um, the speaker number sixty-two.
Good evening.
Hi there, this is, uh, Michael Weeb.
My name is Michael Weeb, uh, no relation.
Okay, uh, please go ahead.
Thanks. I'm a renter in Vancouver and I support this policy. I want to ask, what does our city stand for? According to a recent report, Vancouver was ranked the least affordable city in North America. Are you proud of that? We've heard a lot of opposition to rental apartments on the grounds of negative impacts on street parking, noise, congestion, privacy, shadows, and so on. Now, those are real costs to apartments, but what about the benefits? New housing will allow people to live near their jobs and have a short commute, to live near their family and grandparents, and to stay in the city that they grew up in. Amazon is creating three thousand jobs in Vancouver and new apartments for tech workers will prevent them from competing with residents over our limited housing stock and making housing even more unaffordable. We also need to consider the number of people bearing the cost and the number of people enjoying the benefits of new apartments. How many people would suffer from more difficult street parking caused by a new apartment on their street? A few dozen? Now compare that to the dozens of people who would have a place to live in that new building. What do you value more, easy street parking for the rich or housing for everyone? So do the costs of apartments outweigh the benefits? If you think that, then you think Vancouver should be a playground for the rich. And apparently, that is what our leaders have thought historically. For decades, our public policy has been skewed to favor the interests of rich homeowners instead of prioritizing housing for everyone. Demand to live here has continuously and dramatically increased, but instead of allowing housing supply to keep up, we preserve single-family neighborhoods like museums so that rich people don't have to stress out about street parking or suffer the indignity of living next to an apartment building. And one point, in terms of these hearings being representative, let's think about the thousands of renters who would live in the new buildings constructed under this policy. How many of their voices have been heard at these hearings? Are you taking them into account? It's time for a change. Wealthy homeowners have benefited at the expense of everyone else for long enough. A fair and just housing policy starts by supporting secured rental housing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, I don't see any questions for you, so I will move to speaker number sixty-three, uh, Mary Davison.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes, please.
Hi, I'm a renter in Kitsilano, I've lived in Kitsilano since, uh, nineteen ninety-four. I'm a retired professor from McGill, uh, where I taught interdisciplinary courses that involved history of art, architecture and urban design. Uh, McGill asked me to do that because I'd put, completed the PhD program in history of art and architecture at Yale. And I taught in the Stanford Art and Architecture Department while earning a PhD in English at Stanford. So I have a lot of vested interests here. I, I think the, uh, overall plan is well-intentioned, but I see an awful lot of problems with implementing it. Based on my experience of both owning condos and renting in various cities across North America. And I, of course, applaud the attempt to have people near transit because I did my doctoral research in the city of London and learned about the tube. And for somebody from the west coast, it was a revelation. Of course, I've long since used the metro in Paris, the metro in Montreal, the New York subway system, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I don't want to own anymore, it's the hassle of being a condo owner and serving on the boards was a nightmare. Um, but I'm old enough and I'm not able to aff- that I don't want to go through it again. And the real problem I have is I'm one of the lucky people living in Kitsilano in a rental unit in an older house. There are three apartments in it and most of the houses in my neighborhood, uh, are in fact rental units. On the other hand, I have watched in horror, uh, what's happened to the loss of rentals because of the city halls prioritizing these more luxurious mansions, so-called. Of course, Point Gray Road is exceptional, but I can give you some immediate examples. I take the buses, um, I walk up Trudge Street to Fourth to get the bus to go east. Uh, and I go to Fourth if I want to go out to UBC. I've watched while t- throughout three older houses, all of which had rental units, uh, from West Second to West Third on Trudge alone. Um, people bought them and renovated them and turned them into quadruplexes, two of them. Um, but they fell into financial difficulties and had to resell. And they are now single-family homes. There went eight rental units in less than a la- a year. And then, uh, somebody was allowed to take a triplex and turn it into a thr- uh, a single home, and there goes three more units. So that's eleven rental units lost in one block in less than a year. That is outrageous. Now, I'm particularly outraged because I cannot possibly afford market rates. And ninety-five to ninety-seven percent of Vancouverites cannot. So I'm all in favor of good new housing, near transit and walkability to, uh, run your errands. But I have a whole lot of faith in the implementation of this policy. Um, because the more affordable rents are in the older neber- neighborhoods and older houses. Each place I owned, uh, was built around nineteen eighty, which seems to have been the last time the city allowed, uh, uh, easy billing of apartment houses. They were well-built, but of course they needed repairs by now. Uh, I, because I've studied all of this stuff and visited ancient sites, as far back as, uh, Akotiri, which is about four thousand years old, destroyed by the volcano on Thera that exploded. And then, of course, no Pompei Herculaneum. But I know a lot about, uh, domestic housing and apartment housing from high antiquities to the present. I'm particularly interested in modernism and gave a talk for the AIA on west coast modernism at the behest of professor out of UBC. Um, now.
Sorry, just ten seconds left.
Here's a suggestion, okay, I'll be, please. There's lots of ways you can solve this, and one of them is to follow the European and English model of building homes over retail. We have loads of empty stores that have been empty for years. We have vacant lots all up and down West Fourth, the same thing's happened on Broadway, and there's plenty of building space on Twelfth. Um, you need to build housing, you can use prefab to expedite the process, to put things above. You, if you just even had four stories, you could do better, so.
Thank, thank you so much, we're at, uh, I've given you a little extra time, but I, uh, there are no, uh, questions for you. So do want to thank you so much for participating tonight, thank you.
Bye.
Thanks, uh, we have, uh, speaker number sixty-four, Wendy Lee.
Speaker sixty-four is not on the line, Mayor Stewart.
Thanks, uh, speaker sixty-five has withdrawn, and speaker sixty-six is Jenny McLean. Jenny McLean.
Hello?
Hi there, you have up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay, good, um, I'm a mother in my fifties. I lived in Vancouver full-time for twenty-two years and raised my children there. I lived in the Kensington Cedar Cottage neighborhood and I currently live there part-time and ha- rent, uh, as a roommate in a house near Twelfth and Main. And I was able to participate in the building, the plans with the public when King Edward Village was built. And that was a building that was put up at night and Twenty-Fifth. And I, uh, liked the way that that was done because there was a lot of neighborhood consultation. And, for example, representative from Cedar Cottage neighborhood house came and spoke about whether or not there'd be enough childcare spaces for a potential amount of kids that would go into the building, and the library was built in that building, and the grocery store. And there was a lot of efforts to integrate that development into the neighborhood, and it worked out very successfully. And, um, as far as this new policies that are being presented today, um, and for the other days, because I've listened to all the comments, I'm totally opposed because I believe that it's too quick to really be able to integrate. And it's not really fair for children because they need to have a more integrated sense of community around them. And I've seen density experiments fail in Vancouver, for example. E- I'd say Yelltown didn't work out, because I know somebody who lived there and they had to drive to Surrey for their childcare. And so it's something, when you put density somewhere, you're expecting that everything for children or families or stores will right away be there for that person, and so they don't have to drive. But actually, people do have to drive, because if they can't get their needs met in that area, because it's just too dense and too urban of an area, they do end up having to drive. And if you put too many people in when you don't have adequate childcare spaces, it's not right. And there used to be a lot more emphasis on allowing like mixed demographics for true livability in neighborhoods. So it would be looked at, not just for these single adults to go into places, but h- how would it be for children? And there's a huge reluctance to really look at children, like living in cities, and what do children need? They don't really need to live somewhere like what they built at Canby and Marine, which is a horrible environment for children. And the kind of strip mall that's there was actually, there was a stabbing in the underground parking, I mean, it's very dangerous. Like, you can't just put your foot on the gas and build all this stuff like overnight and expect that you can have a livable city. So I, I'm just really just wanting to register my opposition, thank you.
Thanks so much, I don't see any questions, uh, for you, but appreciate you calling in this evening. Uh, council speaker sixty-seven have withdrawn, uh, speaker sixty-eight is, uh, Mary Down.
Um, yes, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes, please.
Okay, my name is Mary Down, I'm a resident of Vancouver. I am totally opposed to this proposed stream zoning. Could someone, whoever is responsible for this oversight, please explain why no mailed notices have been sent to the city residents, both homeowners and renters who live in the proposed rezoning areas? I thought it was city policy to inform residents of any upcoming proposals of zoning changes. Most Vancouver residents are completely unaware of the proposed changes, which will have an incredible impact on our city. Despite a decade with record amounts of rezoning and redevelopment, Vancouver still has a desperate lack of affordable housing. Spot rezonings, land assemblies, displacement, speculation and land inflation are contributors to our lack of affordable housing. City staff have finally admitted, after council waited over a year for an answer, that they have no idea how many homes can be built under Vancouver's existing zoning, without having any other spot rezonings anywhere in the city. City staff has also admitted that their housing need projections, which are two and a half times more than population growth statistics suggest, are aspirational rather than being based in fact. Since September two thousand and eighteen, duplex zoning is allowed throughout the city with up to four units on a single lot, two units of attached homes which could be owned by different owners, plus one secondary rental suite for each of them. The claims being made by staff that no increase in land value or speculation is anticipated due to the proposed streamlined rezoning deserves careful scrutiny and independent review. It is the job of our elected officials to ensure that the scrutiny and review is done properly before you make decisions. The Georgia Strait has recently provided a number of examples of sites in Vancouver that have been rezoned for affordable rental housing, with the result so far being that the land remains vacant. But the owners and/or speculators enjoy windfall profits with the new higher-density status. The result is devastating for affordability. The so-called affordable housing that developers are proposing simply isn't working. You also need to consider what scale of growth can be supported by existing infrastructure and amenities, such as schools, utilities and services. Adding new development next to a school doesn't mean those new residents will be able to get their children into that school. Without increased local school capacity, many parents have to commute their children across town to other schools. Climate change and the environment are so important. Focus should be on the three Rs of reduce, reuse and recycle as much as possible, such as adaptive reuse of existing buildings. The greenest house is the one that already exists. So many of our young people have been calling in this evening and during the other evenings, talking about their difficulties in finding affordable housing and in support of this program. But they don't seem to understand that density and affordability are not the same thing. As a previous spoken speaker this evening commented, trying to rezone ourselves into affordable housing doesn't seem to be working. Homeowners have tried to contribute to adding missing middle housing in the form of extra suites, laneway and infill housing have been discouraged by the onerous, lengthy and expensive hoops they have to jump through at city hall. Perhaps the answer to providing affordable housing would be to simplify, speed up and cut costs for many local homeowners to provide more affordable housing. This could help to retain our tree canopies and local gardens and our heritage homes and neighborhoods, and at the same time providing housing that is actually affordable. I do feel that it would be in omission to not mention the elephant in the room, which is the contributions that developers make to the campaigns of many local politicians. Let's put income and profit into the hands of all of Vancouver's homeowners and the smaller builders who serve them, rather than a select few. Thank you.
Thanks, uh, I don't see any questions for you, but thank you for your time this evening. And we'll move on to the next speaker, who's Elizabeth Murphy, speaker number sixty-nine. Clerks, do we have Elizabeth Murphy on the line?
Uh, speaker sixty-nine is not on the line.
Thank you, clerks, we're moving on to speaker number seventy, Evan Allegrado.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes, please.
Hi, Mayor and council, my name's Evan Allegrado, I'm the president at Intercorp Homes. I first want to applaud staff and, and say that this policy is one of the best policies ever I've seen come out of city hall. It's the only rental policy, in my opinion, that has the ability to slow down or potentially reverse the shortage of housing in the city. It's truly a housing-first policy and I full-heartedly support it. Council first saw this rental policy in November two thousand and nineteen. As I recall, this policy is one of the first big moves by council after the two thousand and eighteen ele- election. That was almost exactly twenty-four months ago when council supported the original draft. Since then, the housing shortage has gotten worse, even through COVID. This policy has three distinct areas of focus, C2, off arterials and on arterials. I'll only be commenting to the off and on arterial, arterial portions of the policy because the C2 changes just seem like the right thing to do. Because every single rezoning in C2 has been approved by council, all councils in the past. Let's first want to start with the on arterials portion of the policy, which I think is the most important. In two thousand and nineteen, the approved SRP eliminated all other rental rezoning policies, except for the Merp pilot project, which is ending shortly. I want to stress this, that the two thousand and nineteen policy, policy eliminated all other rental rezoning policies across the city to rezone on arterials. This is serious because every member in council campaigned on rental and affordable housing. I supported the elimination of the other arterial policies when this policy came out because it intended to streamline and consolidate the other policies, which would, would have made this a simplified, simplified path for it. So I thought it was going to be some short-term pain, short-term pain for long-term gain. Council does not su- su- support this policy. In a short while, when the extension of the Merp pilot, pilot project ends, there will not be a single rezoning policy that'll be available to deliver rental housing on arterials. That means that a council- That means that a council that all campaigned on rental housing will have actually eliminated all opportunities to deliver rental housing. Rather than foster them, it would be a monumental step backwards. People would agree renewing single family with single family isn't sustainable. Lastly, off arterials. I've listened to and expect to listen to much more people want to exclude renters from their neighborhoods. I'd say shame on them, NIMBY activism is a form of inequality. People are afraid that rental will continue to creep until their sacred single-family neighborhood. I'm just shocked to hear that. Single family needs to, to add density. Otherwise, we're just excluding people from our communities. Overall, by saying no to this policy, you're saying no to, you're eliminating much more than you can think. So council, I asked you, I asked you to stand by your campaign promises three years ago. But to approve this rental policy without any amendment and help solve the housing crisis further. Rather than exaggerate it more. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much for your uh, time this evening, uh, you do have a number of questions. Uh, we have councillor Kirby Young, councillor Frye, councillor Baseknowa, councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, hi, thanks for speaking to council, I have two questions for you. Um, and the first one, you heard me ask, um, you may, or you may have heard me ask one of the speakers earlier, what's left standing in terms of rental policies? And you really um, touched on that in terms of elimination of everything except for MERC. Which was the one I was referring to that had to be extended in order to secure additional participation. So just to be really explicitly clear, if there aren't any other rental incentive programs left standing. Do you think we will see rental getting built in the city through zoning or other means? Or do you think that we will end up with more strata?
Well, I mean, I just said it, there's no policies on arterials to do it. Um, there's some areas in OCPs that are rental only, OCPs or rental only areas. But generally speaking, if this policy doesn't get approved, there's nothing. And so, um, and, and I wish, I shouldn't say that, there's some opportunities for non-market and social housing opportunities. But, I mean, eh, we're talking about, we're trying to find um, policy that we can develop at scale. To help um, add supply rather than, you know, eliminate it. Um, I think that the big thing to recognize is that there's a lot of people moving here. The federal government stipulates, you know, the immigration policies. And the local governments are stipulating the amount of supply and, you know, if we don't continue to keep up. You know, the rent, the housing shortage and, you know, rents are going to continue to go up. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, and I, I can ask you another question and it's really up to you if you want to answer it or not. But I know that some people are going to be listening to this and they're going to sort of be either thinking. Or will probably hear some speakers suggest that you're industry, so you have a vested interest in this because this is what you do for a living. Do you have a comment on that or how you would respond to that? This is, this may be.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, well. I do have a vested interest in it, I want to see like Vancouver to exceed, um, and grow and, you know, possibly, you know. Become the, the city that people say it is. But like, like me as a developer, so I first like, I'm an employee, right? So if this policy doesn't go forward, you know, it doesn't really affect me. Like I, we work in metro Vancouver, so we work in every municipality. We work in municipalities down in the state, so, I mean, like I said, like it, it would be impactful. Um, but it's not devastating, so, um, I, you know. I just want to, you know, I just want to see that the housing gets delivered, delivered. Otherwise, there's just going to be no opportunities in Vancouver and it's going to get worse. And then it, you know, we'll just continue to build in other municipalities like Burnaby and Coquitlambe in the Valley. You know, where the policies are supporting um, rental housing and other forms of housing.
Okay, thanks, I'm gonna leave it there because we have a full night, but thank you.
Thank you, uh, councillor Frye.
Yeah, uh, thanks, uh, thanks Evan, thanks for joining us. Um, and you acknowledged off the top that um, that council has, has approved a lot of these. The, in fact, all the C two rental projects that came forward. Which, which is true, um, now I'm just curious. Um, so, so what is, what does this mean as far as making a difference? If, if these would inevitably get sort of approved theoretically? The, the, the removal of the zoning process, what does this mean to you? In terms of time and money and getting projects off the ground?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, I think I heard one of the other speakers, I think it was Cameron. Um, it's about like twelve to eighteen months, maybe uh, in an extreme situation, twenty-four months. So when you, you know, you put, you know, the, all the, you know, factors into delivering the housing. You know, if you take twenty-four months off the schedule and the interest and like, and all the costs associated, associated to it. It makes rental more competitive uh, to condos. And, you know, people will invest. Uh, so I think, I think what it like really will do is it will accelerate the delivery of rental housing. And that's the key thing here is in like a ten-year cycle. This policy could double or triple the amount of rental in the C two. Where either nothing could happen or people may choose to do condos in a four-story form.
Right, but working off. I guess working off the assumption though that people may otherwise. And I appreciate that this will rapidly sort of scale up the interest in, in, in building rental. But obviously people are building rental and choosing to go through the zoning. And, and eating those extra couple, a couple of years. So I guess where I'm going with this is that this does add a sort of new level of profit. And obviously, you know, developers are in the business of building and making profit and building more and that's, that's how that works. I'm curious though with the end of the MERC and, and with the sort of, do you, do you see an opportunity to kind of? Will the market supply more affordable housing that we actually, you know. Would otherwise be supporting through, through MERC type projects but won't be as this is articulated?
Yeah, I mean, the problem with MERC is it, MERC only works for sites that are, um, that landowners have owned for a long time. And have a really low land basis. No one's able to go buy sites and redevelop in MERC. Um, I think the, I think the thing, like the real big focus here. Is if everyone wants rental rates to get lower, developers to build non-market housing. It's only going to happen if the supply increases dramatically. Cause I just like, you know, we, we look at supply and demand factors here and, you know, we think Vancouver is almost seventy-five thousand homes. Short of a balanced market. Uh, or I should say metro Vancouver, not just Vancouver. So that's, that's getting up to like where Seattle is. And if you look at Seattle as a case study, Seattle pretty much enacted this policy about ten years ago. And there was a, um, a housing, uh, a housing boom, I guess you can say a rental housing boom. And rents went down dramatically. They, they initially went up, I will recognize that because there's still a backlog of housing, but then they went down. And I brought this up at the beginning of my speech, is like this policy has the potential to do it. And predominantly it's not C twos, C twos are a drop in the bucket. You know, there's not a lot of C two zoning there and there's not a lot of sites there. But the on arterials, you know, you can just imagine there's a ton of opportunities on, on arterials. And then the off arterials, that's going to be much slower because the economics is going to be really hard to do. And I think like, you know, I, I speak to the neighborhoods, the change in the off arterials are, is going to be really slow. Like I would say less than one percent a year. But the real opportunity is the on arterials where there's dramatic supply.
I had another question, but I appreciate your answer and I'm out of time, so I'll have to leave it at that.
Thanks, councillor Dejune, about supplies.
Thanks very much, thanks Evan for, um, for your presentation. I, the first question I'm going to ask you, I mean it sincerely, do you feel that six stories is enough for all rental? And that's inclusionary enough to move forward?
I actually do, um, until the building code changes where you can do, you know, low-cost construction at a higher constru- uh, higher height. Um, six stories, I think is the right density, um, for the, you know, kind of the desired, um, outcomes. Once you get above six story, you're going to have to do concrete. And the amount of density that you need to, um, increase is dramatic to make the economics work on concrete.
I'm, I'm very aware of that, I'm aware, I'm just wondering what about mass timber and other options that we're seeing?
So the mass timber, yeah, I mean, mass timber modular housing, I would say yes, it's in the future. I, I think we probably have at least ten years, five to ten years until all the trades. Um, the manufacturing, uh, facilities, um, the consultants are, are all up to speed. So that they are, you know, the costs are more competitive than standard wood frame, stick frame construction. Um, you know, there's a ton, a lot of money and effort is in going into making those, um, forms of development efficient and cost-effective. But it, it, it just, you know, real estate, you know, it's, it's been like, con- concrete construction, wood frame construction. Is a sleepy industry, the innovation has been really slow on the construction side of things. So it's moving, it's happening, um, it's not like the tech industry where it changes overnight, but it's going to happen. But I'm, right now, you know, the six story I think is the right approach. Um, but you know, in five, I think, you know, staff should always be reviewing this as, you know. The industry is catching up on different construction forms.
Okay, and then, um, I, I also have another, thanks for talking to me about built form. I'm, I'm going to talk to you about time, um, in the timeline because time is money and, and I've always argued. And I think that I've actually asked you the question before as, as to, does, you know, does a longer timeframe often mean higher cost to the end? Uh, renter or homeowner, um, you know, or the market, but it, are you familiar with the short program?
Yes, yes, I'm familiar with it, yeah, the twelve-week DP. I mean, to answer your, your question, yes, like time, time kills you. Um, and the thing is, is, you know, we're, we're price takers. But we have, like, when we go do financing and ask for bank financing, the bank requires a minimum profit. So if we, if we can't pass on the cost to the, like the, you know, to higher rental rates or, you know, in the condo, condo, um, situation. Like increased prices, we can't get bank financing.
And your, and your performance doesn't work at all?
Yeah, it doesn't work, so nothing happens, so when you cut down the schedule, it, the required profit is lower. So that, you know, the bank will finance you and then you can actually lower your rate.
I want to squeeze one more question in here, and on the city of Vancouver website currently, although it still calls it a pilot and the short program is permanent. I've asked this in inquiries and all, so I'll have to go to staff. But by working closely with the developer, who can be nonprofit, public or private. We establish a schedule to complete rezoning approvals in twenty-eight weeks. And development permits in twelve weeks, cutting around forty weeks out of the current process. Do you think that this would help things, make things more viable? We're really talking about affordability here, is it just what you can build? Or is it about timelines so that the bank doesn't just say no?
I mean, I think absolutely, like, I think if it should, you know, those timelines, if you can do that for everything. Would make the city generally more affordable. Um, I think, I think developers, and take it even a step further, developers would take less density. If they could guarantee those timelines.
I've heard that many times over, oh, sorry, I thought you were.
That goes back, yeah, that goes back to my, my comments about the bank financing. Is if you speed up time, you don't need as much density because you don't need the profit that the bank requires.
Yeah, people need to have, thank you, that's, that's all my time, thanks Evan.
Uh, that's it for questions, so again, thank you so much for calling in this evening and we're going to move on to the next speaker. Speaker number, uh, seventy-one of one hundred and fifteen is, um, Naomi Steinberg.
Hi.
Hello, up to five minutes, please.
Great, thank you. Um, so I'm a third generation Vancouver born to the supernatural lands, territories of the Muskin Squamish Slavitou. Unceded but shared by people of all nations. I can't say that I'm in opposition or in favor of the streamlining, I tick the box other. As I'm concerned with the noise by law. To be clear, I know council and staff work hard and I'm not sure how you absorb all the information to then make reasonable decisions. I know that there are, um, four zoning applications coming for hearing on the sixteenth and then two more on November eighteenth. Both in, along the Canby corridor. So definitely I could be in favor of streamlining, but as long as there were some important changes made in insurance. That there would be ongoing negotiation within the context of local plans. Tapping my mind back to day one, I liked what speaker number six had to say in terms of longhouse typology. And the kinds of communities that can be fostered and individuals that can be supported in this way. Um, or speaker number eight, uh, talking about the tree canopy and the cap at two stories that might actually be able to meet density. I did have to miss B two as I was at work as a performing artist. Uh, from today, speaker number fifty-three spoke about the need, uh, for refinement and to hold open the possibility of local planning. And number fifty-four, the biologist, uh, talked about the rich soil and how purpose-built rental is great. But, uh, um, I would like to say the purpose must not be to line the pockets of a few. Um, and then speaker number sixty-eight, rezoning into affordability doesn't work. What about simplifying and cutting costs for infill or duplex or these other kinds of densification models? That would allow us to retain more tree canopy and local gardens. Blanket rezoning is not how you get affordable housing or how you meet climate goals. I'm not sure how the streamlining connects with big move number one, which I heard you say a number of times, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, a big move number one in the Vancouver plan, I'm really not sure how the streamlining connects with that. If I, uh, living on the Canby corridor, if I look at some of these excavations around me at the soil loss. At the water table being altered, at the number of trees cut, at how heavy this is on the pocketbook. Um, at how toxic cement is, none of the process for building this housing is environmentally friendly. And certainly there's a huge lack in salvaging. So if, um, if this streamlining goes through, then please, I urge you to use your power to demand more salvaging. Um, and to create policies to aid in warehousing, apprenticeship and market repurposing, uh, um, marketing repurposed materials. Make more than abatement mandatory, create jobs, divert from the waste stream, be globally competitive and trend-setting. Whether this process is streamlined or not, a house or assembly sits for six to eighteen months waiting for permits, stagnating. That would be a time for salvaging to happen and skill sharing in terms of repurposing and in terms of being an entrepreneur. But my first point, if nothing else, the rate of change must be considered and so I propose another amendment to the noise by law. For areas already slated for comprehensive redevelopment like the Canby corridor. Given the massive ongoing barrage of brutal sound, six days a week until eight PM, perhaps for decades. Given the fact that city crews end at three PM, could we please ask developers to end at five PM maximum? Or perhaps six-thirty if we have to wiggle around and negotiate? To hear that brutalizing sound of the excavators, of the shoring drillers, of the rock breakers. Is causing many people to lose their minds and decrease our ability to, um, make income. So as you're considering this rezoning, please consider these kinds of refinements and amendments. And do not talk about the Canby corridor as an example of success. There's no Skytrain entrance at thirty-third, there's no amenity between twenty-fifth and forty-first. Um, and whole blocks and now side street blocks are falling, lining the pockets of a few realtors and speculators. And the so-called secured rental is often managed by a savvy investor. Um, so, um, particularly concerning if you're not going to be getting the DCL and the CAC. How are these new communities meant to have facilitated activities such as what Susan Haid said would be important to create complete communities? Um, the amenities such as daycares often serve just the residents of these high-end condos. So, um, I think there's a lot of great ideas that have been generated in this meeting and I hope you consider them all very seriously, thank you.
Thanks so much, I don't see any questions for you and, uh, we're going to move to the next speaker. I don't see any questions for you and, uh, we're gonna move to the next speaker. Uh, council, we are at, uh, speaker number seventy-two and just to let you know, I'm gonna just, uh, give us a bio break at, uh, eight o'clock or close, thereabouts. Uh, so speaker number seventy-two is, uh, Carol Volkart.
Hello, I'm on the line.
You are? Please go ahead. Yes, I can, up to five minutes, please.
Thank you for the chance to speak on this issue. My name is Carol Volkart and I live in the Dunbar area of Vancouver in an area that will be affected by rental rezoning. I am opposed to this plan for reasons that I have seen playing out in real life around me. One reason is affordability. Staff have said they don't believe this policy will increase land values. But this summer, my neighbors and I were shocked to hear that someone was assembling seven lots near us for just the kind of housing you are proposing, proposing. The price of these, of each of these lots was five point five million, double the assessed value. How can anyone build reasonably priced housing on land that expensive? And how can anyone argue that land values won't increase if you can put more hous- if you can put more housing on the same size piece of property? Why are developers so enthusiastic about this policy? There is mu- there must be a lot of money to be made. They're very noticeably careful about saying they're going to deliver more affordable housing, though. My other reason for my opposition is consultation, or rather the lack of it. However, the city is doing its consultation, it is not working. Here's my real life example. When I went out to rake my leaves two days before the start of the public hearing on November the second, I met a lot of my leaf raking neighbors. None of them knew anything about this plan, even though they will be directly affected. These are not stay-at-home bodies disconnected from the world. They are teachers, retired professors, geologists and people with wide professional and social circles, but still, they hadn't heard of it. Their focus is not on city hall. They don't spend their days online looking at city websites, taking Shape Your City surveys or signing up for the city's virt- virtual workshops. They don't know what the city is up to and I suspect the majority of residents are just like them. In fact, numerous people I've run into since, even today after the hearings are well started and have had some publicity, still don't know about the plan. I believe the city has a basic duty to ensure that people are informed about initiatives that will affect them. There are ways to get information out beyond city websites, surveys and three hundred and forty-eight page staff reports. Written notices could be sent to every single affected household. There could be well-publicized town hall meetings in every neighborhood, even if they had to be online. Residents associations could be affor- informed. I am told the Dunbar Residents Association never got any notice about the plan. I know your report says there is support for the plan, but when I look at who was asked for their opinion, the consultations seem to be heavily weighted towards so-called stakeholders, renters, business and development groups. One clue to the problem is the very definition of stakeholders. The report refers to stakeholders and the general public as two separate entities. Surely the majority of citizens, the people most affected by this plan, are the biggest stakeholders of all, but it doesn't look like any special efforts were made to contact them. It seems obvious that people should at least be told about major changes affecting them, but I think the city should go further than that. Instead of imposing a top-down, one-size-fits-all plan on the whole city, how about going out into the neighborhoods and working with residents to find appropriate, acceptable ways of adding affordable housing to each? I think many residents would welcome the opportunity. They want their family and friends to stay in the city and not be forced to move away. They want workers to be able to live near their jobs and for shopping areas to survive. What they don't want is speculators buying up properties and leaving them vacant and deteriorating until super expensive rentals are built on them. I urge you to reject this proposal if only on the grounds that citizens have not been properly informed and consulted. Go back to the drawing board, but this time involve neighborhoods and their residents from the start. You'll be surprised at the response. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions for you, so I will, uh, thank you so much for participating. Council, we're at, uh, two minutes to eight by my clock and so let's, uh, let's take, uh, ten minutes just to stretch our legs and, uh, clear our, uh, minds and come back at, uh, ten after eight. Uh, we're, we'll pick up with speaker number seventy-three, Vivian Wong.
Hi, Mayor Stewart. You, you, right now, there's five on the line or on WebEx, so we're not quite at quorum. Oh, there we are, six.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Uh, my clock shows ten after eight, so we'll move to hear from, uh, speaker seventy-three, Vivian Wong, speaker number seventy-three.
Speaker seventy-three is not on the line.
Thank you very much. Speaker number seventy-four is Neil Robinson.
Hello, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah, up to five minutes, please.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Neil Robertson. I'm an architect, uh, one of the principals of Stuart Howard Architects and I'm speaking to you in support of this proposed by staff. In my view, this policy is simply a continuation, formula- formalization and amelioration of longstanding citywide rezoning policies, namely this, uh, the Rental One Hundred program and the Affordable Housing Choices interim rezoning policy. We were the first firm in the city to rezonate properties under the, uh, Affordable Housing Choices, uh, interim rezoning policy when is, when it was adopted by council in twenty twelve. And we've rezoned several properties under both programs, many of them before this council. We were also one of the firms that was engaged by staff to study, study and test the proposed A-six and A-five zones. I've read many of the community comments and listened to many of the speakers. While I agree with many of the observations, I believe however, on balance, this is a good proposal. which addresses the stated goal of increasing rental supply while simultaneously expediting processing. Some speakers lamented the prescriptive approach to rezoning that essentially pre-zones lots long arterials, similar to what has been done in the Camby Corridor planned with the RMA zone. Certainly bespoke CD-one rezoning does create opportunities for unique responses to site and context. However, the CD-one approach to processing, in my experience, is never less than two years to get to public hearing. The use of pre-zoning regulations in view of design guidelines generally cut that time down to approximately one year. My understanding of one of the mandates given to staff was to address processing issues, and I believe that this approach would achieve this goal. Some speakers expressed concern about the boxy expression that results from this policy. Based on our testing of the proposed zones, I agree that to achieve maximum density, you will find more rectilinear expressions compared to some of the typical multifamily expressions of building stepbacks above the fourth floor. To reference Robert Venturi, we would be getting more decorated sheds than ducks. It will be down to the skill of the architect to ensure a high level of design, but our studies show that interesting and engaging results are certainly possible. An added bonus of not requiring stepbacks above the fourth floor is that loading lines can be maintained and structural transfers are eliminated, thereby significantly helping the project performance. And I will note that the A-five and A-six zones have a very clever mechanism of average building depth, which creates interesting opportunities to articulate the façades. I heard one of my colleagues expressing concern regarding the proposed permitted building heights. He suggested that in his opinion, lower floor-to floors closer to nine feet from the proposed approximately ten-foot floor-to floors would easily be achievable, and that the resultant eight-foot ceilings are more than sufficient. Our practice designs a lot of rental projects, and we typically design our floor-to floors around ten feet, primarily to provide enhanced livability to the occupants. The problem that we find is that as units' sizes continue to reduce, quality of space declines. We are firm believers that a viable approach to offsetting necessarily horizontally compressed spaces is by vertically decompressing them. In our opinion, once one deducts plumbing drops, HVAC drops, heat recovery ventilator drops, and all the other miscellaneous ceiling drops required in modern construction, we really are better to start with higher ceilings, thereby being cognizant of the end users. One of, one big bugaboo that we have in designing buildings in this city is how much building form is dictated by parking. In my opinion, we should be building cities for people, not cars. Currently, building layout is often dictated by ramp slopes, drive aisles, turning radiuses, and several other engineering requirements for a twentieth-century mode of transportation that does little to improve livability of our shared urban realm. In our study, we were quite happy to find that we were able to satisfy the parking requirements of the parking bylaw without the need to provide underground parking. This is important, because as we transition away from single-occupant vehicle model of moving people around our city, we are not forced to unnecessarily build costly and carbon-intensive infrastructure. This is not a groundbreaking policy, as some have painted it. This is just a small step in the same direction as several other similar preceding policies. And it should not be viewed in isolation. Staff have several other plans and policies that are imminently upcoming, such as the Broadway Plan and the Citywide Plan, that already appear to be more revolutionary and more directly address affordability. In my opinion, there are several ways that this policy could be improved. But policies can always be tweaked through amendments. Lack of perfection should not be a reason why we should not pass this motion, and I urge you to support this proposal by staff. Thank you.
Thanks very much, you have two questions, Counselor Kirby Young followed by Counselor Wade. Counselor Kirby Young?
Yeah, thanks Neil, I'm glad to have an architect's perspective. I have a couple of questions for you, and I'm going to start with your last point. And I heard you say, in your studies, you found to keep the parking bylaw, I believe, without the need for underground parking. Can you expand on that, as to how?
Sure, well, we utilized, in our study, we focused mainly on the A-five and A-six proposed zones. And with the dense, at the maximum densities, and through the use of the TDM, Parking Relaxation Mechanism, we were able to achieve all parking provided at grade. So we don't actually have to build underground parking to provide parking. And then as I see it, as we move away from a car-oriented society and move more towards public transit, more sustainable ways of moving people around our city, those parking, surface parking spaces, and as parking bylaw changes, you can repurpose, more easily repurpose that space to more outdoor trees planting and landscaping.
Okay, so just to be explicitly clear, you're saying at grade on the property, not on street parking?
Yes, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I just want to be really clear, because I think a lot of people listening along would have that question, and I know that you have kind of a gift with words and lingo, but I just want to put it in layperson's terms. And so you're all-
No problem.
And you're also saying that as the reliance, I'm reflecting back, I want to be clear on what you said, that the reliance on, sort of, reliance on cars dwindles. If people have access to transportation amenities in their local community, then you can have more green space and address a lot of what we're hearing from people about the need for tree canopy, things of that nature, correct?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I mean, right now, we're beholden to the parking bylaw. So we have to, you know, we have to provide the parking under there. But there are relaxation mechanisms for secured market rental that allows us to reduce the number of required parking, and then on top of that, we can use the TDM to get further relaxations.
Okay, that's, thank you. My other question is going back to your first point, and I was going to ask you this question, so I'm glad that you've addressed it head-on, and I just want to explore it a little bit, which is this notion that people have concern about the setbacks, because as you referenced, it's just going to be a number of boxy boxes that consist along the street. I mean, realistically, I know that, you know, you're an architect, you take pride in what you do, but do you think that we're going to end up with the same number of boxes? Or do you actually think that people in the sector are going to take time to, as you said, articulate the façades and try to differentiate the form?
Well, there's certainly the opportunity to do that. I mean, like I mentioned, I really, kudos to staff. I really, really like the average building depth. Like, a lot of times, building depths are dictated, you have to be this building depth. But what they allow us to do under these proposed policies is to average it out. So it allows you to play around with the façades of both front and rear-facing façades, and push and pull, and really articulate the facade. Now, I think that you guys need to man- Sorry, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, can you just clarify, what is it that for people that may not be familiar? What is it that is unique about the depths, or can you explain that simply?
So instead of just saying the building needs to be a certain depth, what this policy allows you to do is do an average. So if, I believe the average building depth is seventy feet of building depth, at least in the policies that I recall. So what you can do is you can do a portion of the building at a higher, at greater depth than seventy feet. So it's not a hard line. You can go to ninety feet for one, but then to offset that, you decompress the other side of the building and put it at like sixty feet of building depth. You get these really interesting opportunities for ins and outs of the facade.
Okay, that's really interesting. Do you want to, anything you want to add on that? To provide some additional context?
Yeah, I mean, I think you guys are, you know, a lot of people talking about developers and how much money they're making. You know, in my experience, all these projects are on a nice edge. Like, I can't tell you how many projects we start that end up getting canceled because it just doesn't pencil. And then, again, as we're making, and rightfully so, requiring builders to build to higher standards to make these buildings much more efficient, it makes the building more expensive. And again, with an land acquisition, it's difficult. So you guys, for better or worse, have decided that you're going to be partners with industry and partners with builders. So I think you need to know your partners, and who your partners are driven by, by performance. And they're beholden to banks, who absolutely are beholden to performance, so-
Thank you so much. We, Counselor, I apologize, we start, there was a problem with your timer, but we are at time now.
Okay, thank you Neil.
I'll get off my soapbox, thank you.
Oh, yeah, Counselor Wade, yeah, Counselor Wade has questions. Counselor Wade?
Yeah, follow-up on the average building depth. Would that allow the architect to keep large trees on the property, move around certain ecological landscapes, so they could kind of ensure that the kind of tree scape of that block would be maintained, recognizing they could move the building depth? Is that one of the opportunities that that change has?
Yeah, absolutely. It's an average-grade calculation. So you can, you can play with those numbers and be really creative. At least the opportunity is there. And if you guys empower staff to hold the design industry to a high level of design, I see no reason why it couldn't be quite successful.
Okay, you also talked about enhanced livability, recognizing, we seem to be building smaller suites and decreasing some of the livability. Can you talk about how some of these new standards would allow us to increase the livability of these projects?
Well, I think all you have, thank you for your question. I think all you have to do is go into any cathedral and just feel how light and airy the space is when you're in there. I'm, you know, I'm biased, I grew up in a house designed by hippies with quite high ceilings. And I really, really think that you can really use height within spaces to offset compression horizontally. So it just makes things feel so much less compressed when you can, when you give people a little bit more to breathe. And if you can't do it horizontally, doing it vertically definitely helps a lot.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that.
No problem.
That is it for questions, appreciate you coming in tonight, and I'm going to move to the next speaker. Uh, thank you. We have speaker number seventy-five, Larry Benj.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes, please.
All right, my name's Larry Benj, I'm with West Kids Residence Association. And here we are again, in a public hearing where people have to wait hours and hours and in order to get heard. And we are faced with a three-hundred-and-forty-eight-page tome to try to understand, which comes out as another broad brush stroke approach across the city without neighborhood involvement. As previous speakers have said, no one knows about this, even though it's a major, it's a major change across the city, across all the different zoning regions. Some of my points, we should be separating out the issues in this report. See to zoning conditions and rental apartments in the R zoning are quite different. And they're more, very complex rental zoning schedules and policy areas, which makes it a very confusing paper to the public. The Vancouver Plan, basic planning is yet to be done regarding data and calibrating the Vancouver housing targets. There is a need for data here, once again, you've heard this before. How much do we need? How much rental accommodation do we need? Align this with the census data for population growth and find out exactly how much we need, because we have a lot of huge projects coming online with Senoc and the Jericho Lands and the Heatherlands, and Oak Ridge is now doing more rental, I believe. So there's a lot of opportunities for rental. How much do we really need in the city? We have to find out, otherwise we're traveling blind. Another one, the best, most affordable accommodation is the existing. Previous speakers have talked about retaining existing housing. This does not rule out change. There is opportunities for change in all neighborhoods. There are definitely places that can be torn down and opportunities for change. We hear constantly about homeowners in single-family residential areas, which are really not single-family residents, because they have a lot of renters in them, that don't, that wish to prevent renters from living in their areas. I own a home in Kits. All around me are people who are renting. And they're not renting just basement suites. They're renting the front and back of a front-back duplex. They're renting whole houses. They're renting the main floor, the upper floor, and yes, the basement of various houses in the area. But there is a lot of rental accommodation, particularly in Kits, which are, which exists in existing accommodation, anyway, houses. Also, the idea that developers are all bad people? No, developers are a necessary participant in, in the whole process of developing projects, as well as increasing rental accommodation, as well as others. I'd just like to talk about some other things. The current staff have taken design guidelines in this report, developed for four-story developments, and seemingly plunked an additional two floors on top, presumably uncaring about the resulting shadowing overlook and other impacts that their predecessors were so conscientious about. And why would you consider, as counselors, a policy that compels land assembly with the cost of land passed on in higher rents? A policy that compels unnecessary building heights and related shadowing view impacts for the anticipated density and related forms? And this was spoken about a bit by the previous speaker, and I think there is a middle ground between eleven-foot floor-to-floor and nine-foot floor-to-floor. A policy that limits more innovative missing middle building typologies that can provide similar, if not more, unit yield per site frontage? The policy before you defaults to conventional and inspired, not innovative, housing forms? There are so many other approaches available to you for arterial development, including more contextually responsive building forms on unassembled lots that could be more dense and even modestly higher, and working towards even greater affordability than the policy before you could motivate. I look at, there's right now a house, a single-family housing site at Thirty-third and Larch, where it was an old missionary-style house. It's now being converted to six units on one site. I'm sure they got a rezoning for that, and I think it'll work out quite nicely. And it's not an apartment block.
Thank you so much. We're at the five minutes, so you do have questions?
Did I say one more thing?
You actually have questions? Wait, you have Counselor Hardwick has questions? Go ahead, Counselor Hardwick.
I'll, please, Larry, go ahead and finish your thought, and then I'll pose my question.
I just, two things. A policy that does not enjoy the insight and ideas of local community that a citywide plan process might reveal, the Falls Creek South delegations, and your thoughtful response are informative at this moment. A policy that does not secure true affordability while giving away land value to market speculation. That's it.
Thanks. So, what do you think the motivation is here? Why, why this why now? As a longtime City Watcher, I know you look at it through the lens as, as an architect, urban designer-type person. But what's your take on this? I mean, just cut to the chase.
Well, I guess I think the city is being a little bit lazy. They are ignoring the fact that neighborhoods, and when I speak of neighborhoods, I'm not talking about homeowners exclusively. I am talking about all the people that go to make up a neighborhood. Renters, homeowners, business people, all of that, homeless people where they are. And the city in, in the Van, Vancouver City Plan, it has made no move towards breaking down the city into smaller pieces. Obviously, those pieces would be the neighborhoods, with their unique resources, needs, and what would be unique ways of enhancement. And so this is just a, an easier way to, excuse me, stimulate additional development across the city in a one-size-fits-all kind of way. And I really think it's not the best way to do that. As the previous speaker spoke, you know, about the complaint about boxes, I would add the idea of off-the-shelf designs for these places. Yes, there is an opportunity for architects to innovate within that, but it seems like, especially with rental, you're always going to be looking at kind of the lowest common denominator, because you're trying to keep costs down, and it's difficult.
Right, so you listed off a bunch of developments that are coming down the pipe. Do you have any idea in sheer number of, of units? What, you, we talked, you talked about Camby Corridor, Oak Ridge, Senoc. Do you have any idea from-
Well, Senoc, Senoc, they're talking about, I think they were talking six thousand units or fifteen thousand people, something like that. But then, I'm not going to speak for them, that's just one of their news releases. That's just one of their, um, news, uh, releases, said that. And Jericho, I'm in the Jericho Lands Working Group, um, talking about ten thousand units, eighteen thousand people. Um, and not all of that obviously is going to be rental, uh, but it is gonna be, some of it's gonna be market, some of it's gonna be rental. Um, Sinoq, a large portion of that is supposed to be rental. Uh, I'm not sure the latest figures on Oak Ridge, because it seems to change, uh, it has changed several times through the life of that project and I'm not sure of what that is. But there's a hell of a lot of, uh, rental coming on stream. Whether it satisfies what we need or not, I have no idea. The director of planning has even said they don't have the numbers. Is anybody working on the numbers?
I am.
You know, we, we have to be, we have to develop with an idea of what we're trying to do. And, uh, there are so many questions that come out of the idea of a Vancouver Plan. What are we doing? Uh, why are we doing what we're doing right now? Uh, is it the right way to go about it? Um, how many people can we expect in? Because we're being told on the one hand that Vancouver grows at roughly a one percent growth rate a year. That's sixteen to seventeen hundred people. Yeah, it's compounding. But, um, you know, how can we deal, uh, realistically with any of this without factual backup? I just don't understand it. I don't think any major, major city in the, in North America would do something like this.
Thank you so much, we're at five minutes.
Thank you very much.
Good night and we'll move on to the next speaker. Speaker number seventy-six is Scott Delang. Thank you. Scott Delangbooms, uh, speaker number seventy-six. Clerks, do we have, uh, speaker seventy-six on the line?
They are on the line. Uh, we'll just check if there's a technical issue.
Okay, thanks.
Hello?
Hi there, uh, you have up to five minutes, whenever you're ready, please.
Okay, I'm coming through, okay?
Yep.
Okay, good, glad that got resolved. Uh, Mayor, Council, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I will be brief as this, uh, public hearing has gone on for a long time. Uh, certainly long and fat, now stretching across three days over the span of a week. And this is after the policy got delayed, uh, for a year. Uh, I shouldn't have to tell you that Vancouver has a housing crisis. There's an acute shortage of rental housing out there. Um, I don't know the last time anyone on council tried to look for an apartment to rent, but they are hard to find and even if you are lucky enough to locate one, it's quite common for one to be, uh, snapped up between, uh, viewing and applying. And this policy isn't gonna solve the crisis, but it's gonna help. It, it will move us incrementally towards it and every additional apartment that gets built will help in that respect. So I ask you to pass this and, uh, pass this quickly. Uh, this is, like I said, a fairly small incremental change and more should be done. The six-stories rental shouldn't just be on a part, on arterial roads or just adjacent to the arterials, uh, but on all the residential lots in the city, um, because, um, that is the sort of bold policy that's really needed to actually get the housing crisis addressed. Um, but even so, this policy does help. It should be supported and it shouldn't have taken a year to get to this point. The last version was fine. It should have been passed then and it's important that this council move quickly to pass this and then get to work on passing the next policy to keep moving the ball forward and getting, uh, each step towards, uh, a more permanent, long-term solution to this. You've heard from a lot of young people struggling to find housing in the city. Uh, they need these apartments built and built now and they shouldn't have to spend three nights at council fighting to get this small step, uh, towards building homes they need fast. Uh, so please, uh, pass this, uh, immediately, thank you.
Thanks so much. Um, uh, councillor Dejanova has questions for you, please go ahead, councillor Dejanova.
Thanks very much, uh, for, for waiting to speak to council. I, I know that you have, um, before advocated for increased density and more affordability in the city. I'm wondering if, considering I have to, I have to look at these recommendations, but where this will fit into our policy or what policy that we have that applies to this. Um, are you in favor of the MRP program? Do you think that it was wise for council to have done away with that program?
Uh, I would have liked to have seen it transferred from a pilot project into a more permanent, uh, policy.
Okay, um, and, and does it concern you that instead of doing that, we're, you know, reinventing the wheel maybe and starting all over in some ways with another policy?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, like I said, these are kind of small incremental steps. I mean, the MRP, uh, process alone wouldn't have really been enough, but it would have helped, as does this. And I'd rather us kind of continue to add pieces to it until we can kind of really find that solution, uh, rather than scaling back one and restarting over again.
Thanks so much. I'm just wondering also, and, and sorry, I only have limited time here. So, um, in asking you, in some of these areas on your arterials, do you think we could go higher than six stories? And if all we're incentivizing is six stories and that's the highest and best use that it's zoned for and developers go out and, you know, either assemble land or they own land and they do this and then three years later, we allow a policy where you could have built eight or ten stories? Do you think that we should be considering that now? Or is six stories enough? Would you consider that a missed opportunity? Sorry to throw that all at you, but I have three units left and I wanted to give you that time to answer it.
Uh, yeah, I, I would consider that a missed opportunity, because it's important to understand that, uh, it's not just a matter of passing these in the abstract, but you actually have to get the physical homes built. And that means getting them built quickly rather than, uh, dragging it out. So, yeah, that would absolutely be an opportunity cost. And, uh, I think one of the earlier speakers spoke to some of the economics around, uh, changing construction methods once you get above six stories. But, um, in the likely event that the building code does get updated to reflect those, uh, newer construction technologies, I think it would be good to have the zoning in place ahead of time rather than waiting for that to happen.
Thanks so much, really appreciate your, um, answering my questions in your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, and that's it for questions. Appreciate you calling in tonight. Uh, next we have speaker number seventy-seven, Owen Brady.
Speaker seventy-seven is not on the line.
Thank you, clerk. Seventy-eight, Albert Twine.
Hi, good evening, council. Uh, can you hear me?
Hi there, yeah, up to five minutes, please.
Thank you. Uh, hi, hi, council, uh, your worship, my name's Albert Huang. I work for Terra Housing, Terra Social, Public State, um, or a company that's been working with the over two-hundred nonprofit housing associations and co-ops in the province of B.C. for the better part of thirty-five years, uh, working on affordable housing, rental housing. Um, and in short, uh, absolutely council needs to pass this SRP policy today. Um, uh, my support for this comes from, uh, my, uh, experience having been born and raised in Vancouver and having seen childhood friends have to move away from the city because of the lack of, uh, housing available in the city, uh, rental or otherwise. Um, uh, the, the premise that a single-family home with a few secondary suites as being adequate housing is, uh, i- i- is not at all the case and hasn't been the case since I was a child many decades ago. Um, it seems wholly undignified for me that we're trying to shoehorn people into, you know, front-of-house attic basement living situations, when in fact, um, that housing form, uh, ought to have been replaced by something a little more dignified, where people have their own mailbox and front door, uh, many years ago. Um, further to this, we've had years of polling and public surveys supporting, uh, the idea that this city has needed and does and will continue to need more housing, uh, and that this should not be a controversial issue like, uh, has played out over this multi-evening public hearing, where you only hear very motivated people calling to support this. Um, the whole premise of, you know, coming up with a date of how much we need, i- i- is, is not a complicated question to, to address and, and can be, uh, weaponized as a misleading topic if, if someone were motivated to. But how much do we need? I would suggest what we can watch vacancy rates in terms of rental housing. We know that even during this, you know, pandemic at its, uh, worst, uh, did not even come close to bringing rental vacancy rates to a healthy range of three to five percent plus. Um, how do we know when we've built enough housing? Another metric to look at is look at how much population and housing growth has been pushed out to our suburbs. How much agricultural land has been lost to development of quote-unquote affordable housing in, in our neighboring municipalities and suburban communities? And frankly, what is the worst thing that could happen if we overbuild housing? We see rent stabilize. I see my family and friends being able to move back closer to the city of Vancouver. The, the, the whole premise is, is akin to this city asking ourselves how long a piece of string is, given that, um, we understand that the relationship between housing growth and housing population, uh, growth is endogenous. It should be no surprise that our population growth is low if the amount of housing we've added to this community is, is, is low. And, and, and otherwise, any arbiters to, 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 to the idea that we need to slow down until we understand, uh, the whole system is poorly advised, uh, as it just plays into, uh, the issue of housing delayed being, uh, housing denied as, as far as I can see it. So it seems silly to me, uh, in some ways, that a, a lot of folks now are concerned about this policy. Uh, up for debate for you, council thinks of housing as something to be, uh, prevented as a negative. Um, or the idea that we can, you know, reduce policy to something where we're just incentivizing three, four-story, uh, zoning for rental housing, when, uh, I think we full well know a three, four-story proposed rental project could not possibly, um, outbid an existing use, uh, as a single-family house. Um, the premise that we need to regulate something where we do not allow cookie cutter design, uh, seems misguided as well, when we literally have craftsmen, uh, style homes throughout this, uh, city that were literally ordered out of a Sears catalog. Um, so I'm not sure what that's about. Um, uh, the, the idea, uh, that we need more community space when these projects, when rental projects are, uh, often subject to project-by-project consultation, uh, seems like the whole idea, uh, of being able to allow neighborhoods to whittle down a project in terms of its height, massing and, and loss of rooftop community spaces. I've heard from other, uh, past projects that have been before council, seems ill-advised as well. So suffice to say, there seems to be an extremely common theme of security being, uh, uh, opposed by, or housing being opposed by people that are securely held already. All in there, thank you.
Thanks so much for your time. Thank you, uh, there are no questions for you. I just, uh, thanks again for calling in tonight, participating and, uh, my apologies for mispronouncing your last name. Oh, uh, we do have a question from councillor Boyle, if you're still on the line. Are you still there?
Sure, please.
Okay.
Sorry, I was, I was, uh, slow in, in getting my name up there. Thanks, Albert, uh, for sticking around. I'm wondering if you can speak a bit more to, um, what this sort of policy means for, uh, for below-market or non-market or, or more affordable housing across that spectrum?
Yeah, sure. One of the most important, um, uh, powers jurisdiction that a city has when it comes to supporting, um, nonprofit and affordable housing development is, uh, the power for municipality to issue a development permit or otherwise confirm that the zoning, um, is, is there for the project we propose, because, uh, whether, um, whether my nonprofit partners are working with CMA P and/or B.C. Housing or any other funder or lender, um, the, the, the key thing that unlocks funding commitments is the ability for us to say, yes, the zoning for this property already supports the proposed, you know, five, six, seven, eight-story project. If that's not there, then we're stuck in this hilarious, tragic and frustrating chicken of the egg game where we're, you know, trying to say, you know, this can clearly be built here, but B.C. Housing or CMA P says, well, the zoning is not in place. And having this policy in place would go quite aways in terms of taking the risk out of that whole process. Um, i- indeed, other municipalities around the city of Vancouver, um, understand this and they have gone, uh, a fair ways in, in acting policy that allows for this. And I would put to council that the city of Vancouver, uh, has missed out on, uh, untold amount of dollars from the provincial and, uh, federal governments, because we can't get our policy, uh, house in order. And, and I, I think this is tr- tragic frankly.
So, uh, can I just follow up on that and ask then, in, in your experience working in the nonprofit housing sector, um, if, uh, there, if there are folks whose concern with this proposal is that it's not affordable enough, your professional experience is that, um, this is one piece of what, what makes it easier to build that nonprofit and non-market housing that we also know we need more of?
A hundred percent, yes, absolutely.
Okay, um, I will leave it there.
I would wonder why, yeah, thanks. Thank you, councillor.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, uh, councillor Swanson, you're up next, five minutes.
Yeah, um, thanks for coming in or phoning in. Um, just wanting to get your perspective from a nonprofit point of view. Um, would you actually be building any nonprofit housing in these areas if this zoning goes through, do you think?
Uh, councillor Swanson, um, I, I think there was a policy that was before council a few months ago proposing, um, sufficient density that would really make it possible for, uh, nonprofit entities, housing agencies in the city, uh, to, to, you know, propose projects over six stories. Um, with this rental policy, uh, i- it's definitely a little different, because it's, it's not, it wouldn't be projects that are subject to the social housing definition. So, um, the, the short answer is yes. Uh, if, if a nonprofit were able to control a site that was subject to this policy, they could go above and beyond just conventional, um, market rental affordability policy. Indeed, that's kind of the, right, written right into the bylaws and constitutions of many nonprofit groups. Um, and I think the short answer to your question would be if this policy allowed nonprofits to control a property or a site that was subject to this policy. Yeah.
So, so you could build nonprofit housing if you owned the land to begin with? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct, councillor.
But if you don't own the land, there's not much chance that a nonprofit would be able to build with these new regulations? Is that right?
Unless, right, that, un- unless there was pol- there was policy written, uh, where a nonprofit-led project, uh, were able to, um, outbid, uh, any other property owner for a given site. So, 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 say for instance, if a policy allowed a conventional developer four stories, but there was language supposing that a nonprofit could, you know, put double the amount of height and density on it, um, ostensibly, a, a nonprofit developer and housing operator, uh, would have a better shot at, at, um, getting control of the site based on that.
But are you saying that you'd need more than six stories if you had to buy the land?
Yeah, just given, given, given current, um, uh, land economics and development performance dynamics, uh, I, I think you absolutely would need, uh, over six stories in, in density in order to generate the amount of, of rent, uh, that frankly, council would be necessary for, uh, higher levels of governance to even consider a project, um, at sufficient scale that they, they, they would be prepared to, to entertain funding and committing to.
Do you think there's any chance that, um, governments will, would step in to provide the land for nonprofit projects in these zoning areas?
Uh, it, it, it may be the case, but that'd be a whole exercise of kind of reviewing which lands are owned by the province, by the federal government, by the city of Vancouver. by the federal government, by the city of Vancouver, for example, councillor. And, uh, last I checked, just reviewing publicly available data on lands that the city of Vancouver owned, um, there are scarce number of sites available where there isn't already housing built on it that's owned by the city of Vancouver. And, and so, you know, just, um, from a policy, policy perspective, uh, having to displace, uh, properties where people already live is, is a poor choice. And, and so I, I would, I would put to you councillor that, uh, just employing the use of, uh, federal municipal and, uh, provincially owned land isn't going to be sufficient for us to kind of make a dent in nonprofit housing society wait lists nor the market rental vacancy rate.
If a, if a level of government actually bought the land for a nonprofit, then you could do it.
Sure, but it's not, it's not happening at the scale that's necessary. I mean, uh, councillor, you, you as a council, you know, could, uh, put forward budgets that would allow, um, the city, the city of Vancouver to start, uh, acquiring, say for instance, uh, single family RS zoned sites. And you as a council of the city have the power to increase the zoning and density of those and increase the value of that site. But, uh, I, I would encourage councillor to consider this.
Is there a problem that the private market will take over this land before municipalities are able to do something like that? So that nonprofits can get it?
Sorry, we are at the five minutes, councillor Swanson, so we, we actually have to move on to councillor Dejanova. Uh, councillor Dejanova, up to five minutes.
My question may be helpful to help finish off councillor Swanson's, but, um, you're telling me, you're saying what I was kind of, uh, writing some notes about myself here, just that other speakers had kind of mentioned, but about viability and looking at six stories. And I, I assume that a nonprofit to be able to make these numbers work would also have to cross subsidize. Is that correct?
That, that would depend on, yeah, th- that would depend on, um, the sources of funding and lending for a given project. But by and large, uh, just given the types of funding available from the provincial and federal levels at this point in time, there is a degree of cross subsidization, uh, depending on how much capital grant a project can achieve.
Okay, and then, um, at six stories, would you see the only way a nonprofit would be able to do this? If they didn't own their asset. Um, so if they didn't own the asset, even if they did own the asset, considering the prices of construction costs, even if they did, um, qualify for like BC housing, construction financing, which is next to nothing. I'm, I'm just wondering, do you think that there would have to be almost, um, just knowing the nonprofit sector, um, uh, a joint venture with a private developer? So it would be a nonprofit applying to the city of Vancouver along with a private developer who is backing them for equity?
Councillor, that's, that's in a scenario you're, you're supposing where the nonprofit already owns the site. So the land cost is essentially zero.
Well, if there, I said, there's one, there's one scenario where the land, the land is already owned by the nonprofit. The other scenario is if the nonprofit's buying it, would you say, you know, to your answers to councillor Swanson's question, if six stories even worked, which you're saying it might not, um, just for a nonprofit alone, they'd have to joint venture with, um, you know, someone with some, that, that would, um, be able to inject some equity, um, into the project?
Yeah, yeah, I think I understand your coun- your question now councillor, thanks. Um, that, that's right. If, if a nonprofit did not own the site and there was a cost associated with, with purchasing or acquiring or, or securing the site, um, uh, certainly, uh, one, one common option is for a nonprofit society to partner with a private developer because frankly, someone has to put up that money upfront, uh, at risk, uh, to, to, to secure the site. Um, and, and so a, a, a partnership, uh, is common in, in those arrangements. Uh, where a nonprofit does not need, uh, to partner if, if they already control the site or essentially are able to secure the site for nothing, in which case there is no, there, there isn't necessarily a need for, uh, a market developer partner. So, uh, it is very much, you know, depends on that.
Unless they didn't have enough equity to build, is that correct?
Uh, not necessarily the case. Yeah, not necessarily the case because if, if a nonprofit controlled their own site at, at zero cost, they would be able to approach CMHC and BC Housing and ask them to provide some early, uh, uh, project development equity to, to get projects going. So, so having control of the site is, is key. I, I think you, you're catching on to something there councillor, for sure.
All right, sorry, I was trying to get it all into the five minutes. So apologies for the, the, you know, um, throwing all these questions at you. But I'm really interested, you know, further to councillor Swanson's question, also to know, do you think that that would put nonprofits that currently own C two, um, sites or own sites that, that could, you know, be viable for this type of zoning and, and to build affordable housing for their client groups? Do, do you think that that might, um, preclude them from the status they currently have in not paying, you know, taxes? Because of the city of Vancouver's charter that allows certain nonprofits that have certain status to be tax exempt?
Um, I, I, I think, uh, the, the tax exemption would help a nonprofit that happened to own or acquire property in, in, in C two zones. Um, in, in terms of what, if a nonprofit did not already own a site like that, uh, they, there would have to be the prospect that they could achieve greater density than a market rental developer for a, a nonprofit to, you know, have a business case for, uh, ou- outbidding a, a market developer for a given site. Um, but, but you, you are correct that i- if, uh, if a nonprofit entity did already own a C two site, that there are avenues for, for that, uh, nonprofit to, to, to make available for them, the property they own.
That's my time. I really appreciate your answer.
Councillor Weep, up to five.
Yeah, um, quick question. Recognizing that we're hoping to shift to see a lot more rental and you've talked about the need for non-market rental or by operating by nonprofit, do you think there's an opportunity to create a CAC target contribution that could be waived for nonprofits so that we can use our policy to push more nonprofit housing to deliver the affordability that we need here in Vancouver?
Councillor, just so I understand your question correctly, you, the, the, the question is whether, uh, it should be considered that nonprofits with projects going through a rezoning, uh, are, are made exempt of CACs?
Yeah, so it's like, say, say one of the policies we add to this is that we would look at a CAC target contribution of a small amount so that we can ensure that we can build complete communities and have those amenities. However, nonprofit organizations would be exempt from that. Would you think that would allow more nonprofits to enter the market and build this housing?
Sure, but my only caution there would, would be, um, i- if, if, if the revenue stream, uh, to support nonprofit and affordable housing development through the city of Vancouver is through CACs, like you, you end up kind of creating an incentive, um, uh, for, uh, projects that are on the market side to have ramped up sale expectations, which, you know, may be intended or unintended. Um, a, a, another way you might go about this is to, uh, set fixed CAC schedules such that the whole process is transparent and open and easily understood by the community. Um, in, in, indeed, at the moment, I think there are numerous, you know, areas and neighborhoods within the city where the city updates, uh, you know, publishes a CAC, uh, for the development and construction to nearly at large. And so it's understood. And so each individual CAC isn't painstakingly negotiated between staff and applicant. I think that's the way, if you're looking to generate CACs at suffici- sufficient, uh, scale, that you can kind of make a dent in terms of, of the affordable housing side. You, 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 you want to kind of create a transparent, easily understood process. So, you know, rather than, than fighting over ten projects in a year where you're trying to hit that seventy-five percent CAC lift, maybe you decide on putting out a schedule where, you know, based on that schedule, sometimes you hit seventy percent, sometimes that schedule hits eighty percent, but it's otherwise understood. And it saves a lot of permitting process and review time on the staff. And, uh, and, you know, with that certainty, maybe instead of getting ten projects collecting CACs a year, you, you end up fixing, you know, tax brackets. Um, one approach seems, seems a bit silly to me. I, I think you would agree councillor.
Yeah, no, that makes a lot of sense. I appreciate that input. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the question.
Yeah, I'm mute now. Thanks councillor Weep. Uh, so we've just hit nine o'clock, council. We still have, uh, thirty-five speakers, uh, left, so, uh, we're not going to get through them tonight. Uh, hear from everybody tonight, even if we do extend, so I'll just put it your way. Uh, also, uh, at the rate we're going, we're probably going to need two more, uh, sessions to finish this off because we have another question, uh, we have another set of questions to staff as well as our debates. So I have asked for clerks to, they've already identified December fourteenth as the next day we would speak to this. I have asked clerks to, uh, start identifying days in January where, uh, this, uh, uh, we can conclude this, uh, this, uh, public hearing. Um, with that in mind, I will move us to Jamie Letwin, uh, speaker number seventy-nine. Jamie Letwin.
Speaker seventy-nine is not on the line.
Thanks, we have speaker number eighty, who is, uh, Peter Kaczewski.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to sort of express some, some concerns over this, um, resolution. Uh, I just wanted to make maybe a couple of quick points and then two longer points. Um, one, I've, I missed a lot of this meeting, but I was on for the, the whole meeting the other night. Uh, and the Mario Canseco study came up. So I just wanted to point out a couple of limitations of that study. It was six hundred and six people and it was an online study. So it's not, I, I think the margin of error is, is quite high despite the, the four percent they, they quote. Uh, so I just urge a little caution in interpreting those results. Um, and, uh, the other, the other point with, that I wanted to sort of highlight is the, uh, homeowners being forced or squeezed into selling to developers. So don't, don't really like, uh, that part of it and at least that, that's how I read it. Um, the two longer points would be, you know, the question has come up, you know, will this help or, or not help? And I think we, I, I, I don't know. And based on, um, you know, the chief city planner stating that no robust data is available, it, it sounds like, um, you know, it's probably not, not well known. And I agree with the earlier speaker who said, you know, we may very well never know. However, um, I do think it's worth trying to know because, you know, there are two sides to the equation. There's the supply side and of course, there's the demand side and what will happen to, uh, demand when supply cha- um, changes. And I think, you know, there, there might be some value in coordinating any densification with, you know, with our neighbors in the, um, in the suburbs. Now, the actual main point that, that I wanted to make is, is the idea of, of neighborhood. I've heard quite a few speakers over the last couple of nights try to paint this as a rich versus poor or renter versus owner debate, and I, I disagree with that. You know, for me, it's about the neighborhood and there's no question that this proposal will change the neighborhood, especially the neighborhood I live in. We live on fifteenth, uh, which is obviously between sixteenth and twelfth, which are both, uh, part of the proposal. Um, and the proposals will potentially spill over to fifteenth and thirteenth, which leaves very little, um, of the existing neighborhood that, you know, of course, we would like to preserve. And we would like to preserve it because we like how the neighborhood functions. We've got gardens, lawns, um, dog walkers, neighbors and so on. And the reason I know it's not rich versus poor is because not all my neighbors are rich and not all my neighbors are owners. Some are renters, some have lived here for forty, fifty years, um, some for ten years and so on. And the reason I know that is because I see them on a daily basis. They're walking by, we, we mow each other's lawns, we, we garden. Uh, my neighbor's mother comes over to, to garden in her yard because she doesn't have a garden and she enjoys doing that. My other neighbor's, uh, family comes and tends to their lawn. Uh, we shovel each other's walks and so on. And, uh, no matter how nicely you design these buildings, uh, we're going to lose that and, and I don't want to lose that. So I think I'll, I'll, I'll leave it, um, I'll leave it there and just, if it wasn't clear, I'm, I'm, I'm against the proposal. Thank you.
Thanks for your time tonight. I don't see any questions for you, so we'll move to, uh, speaker number eighty-one, Maximilian Leifer.
Good evening, mayor Stewart and council. My name is Maximilian Leifer. Um, as some councillors have actually pointed out in the past, I've become increasingly attuned to the public hearings that occur before you. Um, I'm a student at the University of British Columbia where I'm finishing my undergraduate degree. My classmates at UBC and I have increasingly tuned into the public hearings that appear before you, not least because of the housing precarious that so many of us have endured. This is why I'm calling in. We need more rentals, we need more market rentals and we do now. This policy will foster further rental development in our city. On most calls I've participated in, there have been few, if ever more than ten speakers. This public hearing has over one hundred registered speakers. Obviously, the residents of our city are aware of this hearing, they're aware of this policy and as it appears before you, they're overwhelmingly in support of this policy amendment. We need less consultation and we need action. I currently live in Vancouver, but I've lived across Europe and the Americas. I resided in cities such as Paris and London. In Paris, we have six-story buildings, in London, we have six-story buildings. The height of these buildings has not ruined the neighborhoods as some speakers have suggested or fear. I'd counter that in fact, they contribute to the neighborhood. They ensure a strong social fabric is created with a diverse community. But this policy, brief, I've read the whole three hundred and some odd pages, includes requirements for family rentals. Antecent speakers have dealt further into this and I'll echo their comments. A vote no will be a vote for protecting RS zonings above all else, including moderate rentals such as this one. This is a vote for perpetuating the elitist and classist exclusionary zoning system. I urge you to vote yes and ensure we have an inclusive city. As a last known and for the sake of brevity, I'll echo the previous points of speakers such as Michael Mortison, who spoke to you in person last week. I'd also echo every to individuals that were here today, such as Grand Development's representative. This policy should be passed and I hope people are in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening. I don't see questions for you, so I will move to the next speaker. Council, we've got Natasha Latik on, uh, speaker number eighty-two.
Speaker eighty-two is not on the line.
Thanks clerks, uh, with speaker number eighty-three, Archelin Scheigen.
Hello?
Hi there, you have up to, uh, five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you, thank you, mayor Stewart and council. My name is Arsalan. I'm a resident of Vancouver and I attend university here. And I work here, Vancouver is my home, um, but I worry about how long I can live here because of the lack of rental market. Uh, my colleagues at uni and I, I'm increasingly concerned about what we will do post grad. Do we stay in Vancouver? Do we move someplace else that has more, uh, rentals? Um, I don't know. Even market rentals are impossible to find. Uh, you've heard from speakers who have spent over two years searching for any rental. We need more supply. This policy will ameliorate the housing supply issues that we face right now. I live in the West End and I'm not necessarily near C two zone sites, but my cousins whom I visit three times a week live along Dunbar. Uh, they do support this rental initiative, as do I. It will allow me to live near their, my family and it will allow me to stay in Vancouver. While I've been speaking to the policy as a whole, I've heard several speakers over the last three public hearing sessions comment on the livability of neighborhoods. I do not think we need a higher, uh, setback or less site coverage or no top level drawbacks. These factors are non-negotiable on a small six-story development. What we should not be voting on a pro rental policy based on these marginal issues. I have faith in our urban design review panel and development board to ensure the development fits in with the neighborhood, to ensure that the neighborhood is livable and to ensure that we have strong social fabric. I will echo previous speakers and urge you to vote in favor of this proposal. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your time this evening. I don't see any, uh, questions for you, so we'll move on to the next speaker. Speaker number- Speaker number eighty-four is Sina Mobiani. Speaker number eighty-four, Sina, Sina Mobiani.
Speaker eighty-four is not on the line.
Thank you, clerks. Speaker number eighty-five is Andrew Shields.
No, not on the line.
Thanks. Eighty-six is Ethan Whitting.
Uh, no, not on the line.
Thank you. Eighty-seven is Peter Remmellong.
Speaker eighty-seven has withdrawn.
Okay, thank you, clerks. Speaker number eighty-eight is John Guaramel.
We just had eighty-four call in.
Okay, Sina Mobiani.
Hi there. Is this Sina Mobiani? Yeah, yeah, that's me. Sorry, I had trouble just logging in here.
No problem. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
All right. Well, hello, Mayor Stewart and Council. I just want to say, I'm Sina. I'm a student and resident of Vancouver and I like, as many of the previous speakers I'm calling in today to express my support of the application for streamlining rental around C-two sites. I will echo many of their concerns and thus keep my speech pretty short here. I've been calling in quite frequently. A lot of my friends at UBC and I have started to follow the public hearings. We have been keen on learning more about the housing process, given the housing crisis in our city. I called in today because they included rental, this includes rental and is such good developments, in my opinion, currently going on in the city of Vancouver. My, my friends live here. My family lives here. I am feeling pushed out due to the lack of available rentals. I've already made friends that have left their city and I'm hoping City Hall will enact some policy changes that'll help me stay in my community. This policy change will ensure that there is more rental stock by doing a blanket policy change for all C-two sites. These are the measures we need. This is what I want to see in our city and I'm hopeful that you will support it. Finding secure rental housing is extreme difficulty for me. I've been living in a precarious housing situation as the lack of supply has hindered across to housing. Even at market rates, the beginning of every term, I've struggled to find housing. As so many applicants apply, there's simply not enough supply. This proposed policy would facilitate the construction of purpose-built rental in the midst of this housing crisis. But even beyond merely having a place to live, I see this policy as one that we can ensure to have resilient neighborhoods. As this policy change is only for rentals, these units would be, will be occupied by members for our community that live here rather than offshore investors and strata units. This will ensure we have a strong neighborhood that remains vibrant and resilient. I want to live in a neighborhood that has strong community, one where we get to know each other. I can list a plethora of other reasons for supporting this policy, but I will echo the staff recommendations and urge you to support this policy. Thanks for your time and thanks for listening, listening to me. I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions for you. So just thank you again for phoning in tonight. And we'll go to speaker number eighty-nine, who's Mohammed Salah. Salah, Salah, Mohammed Salah.
Mayor Stewart, just one moment. We, we just, we may have a speaker eighty-eight on the line. Just one moment, please. My apologies, speaker eighty-eight is not on the line.
Okay, thank you, clerks. And eighty-nine, Mohammed Salah.
Uh, no, not on the line.
Thank you. And number ninety, Colin McGrath.
Hello.
Hi there. I have up to five minutes whenever you're ready, please.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to speak this evening and for your diligence to sit through these long hearings, patiently from speakers. I've never actually before spoken at many, any city council in any city around the world that I've lived in. But three times this year, I've come to the city of Vancouver motions to speak and it seems like it's becoming a common modality. I mentioned my name's Colin McGrath. I'm a resident of Vancouver. I'm an owner in Kitson. I am fortunate to have a family with kids ranging from four to fourteen. I live in a multi-generational family house with an elderly family member and we also have an elderly young family. Contrary to the popular narrative, homeowners are not always the cash-rich, lush stereotype that portrayed. And even though some were fortunate enough to acquire homes at a different time and price, the growth in values has not resulted in the additional real wealth or cash flow. And I believe the situation is true for the majority of homeowners in this city. I do want to tell you a little bit about my experience in dealing with the city for our own housing requirements as it has relevance to my position on this motion and, and also highlight the problem with the city's approach, which results in motions like this tabled to council. I oppose this motion to many reasons already cited by previous speakers. Lack of community engagement and transparency, which sees much, much community feedback provided by the city essentially ignored and then subsequently motions coming out, which frankly, the average person in the city could not comprehend the technicalities on. I, I think some of the people who might even support this motion don't fully understand the consequences and simply think that more density means more housing and thus lower cost. This is not the case. Market rental housing is one of the most lucrative investment types for institutional investors globally. And I suspect these large-scale rates will probably be the owners of many of these buildings and will be focused on profit and increasing revenues, which we should not expect any less from them. For my part, my housing story relates to the renovation of our existing house to be able to house our growing family and accommodate the aged in-law, who would have needed a low-cost, affordable housing. We were tied up in the development permit process for our house for over two years. At every turn, we would be halted by city staff for our own requirements for all manner of things that would add cost and time. Items such as requiring cedar on the front of our house, but requiring fireproofing on the side and then not being allowed to change materials on the exterior of the house. This alone took three months and vast amounts of money to engineers and architects for us to straighten out. This is just one of the many other added things that were put in place that added hundreds of thousands of dollars to the cost of our renovation and effectively put us into debt. The pinnacle was actually when we were looking for a concession on roofing, which would not have had any consequence to how the house looks. Would have added about a hundred K if we'd done what the city is asking. And the engineer was saying the house would actually be stronger and better for insulation if we did something differently. The city was not allowing it, but then I witnessed another property in our same zone, two streets down, which was being converted into three two-million-dollar townhomes able to do this. This would have all been profit for the developer on those ones, but for us, it was our own money. But after considerable escalation directly to Jill Kelly's office, I was allowed to meet with some senior staff in planning and building. And I explained our property. I showcased the other property and why they allowed it. And I showed them how this was allowed to be granted to me under bylaws under the city. They in turn gave me this concession, which was great and, and the single home properties. So while the zoning exists and all of this could be done, there isn't an ability for homeowners to execute. I was only for, it was only my own fortitude and commitment to show me to be able to do our renovation and it took its toll financially and emotionally on our family. We still feel fortunate. But seeing this motion, which would effectively allow a fast pass for mass development, while many single-family house opportunities to house rentals lie in wait or tucked up in red tape. The idea that single-family homeowners don't want to build rentals or don't want renters in their area is false and this false narrative serves an ultimate agenda. Most homeowners would not have the capacity to stay the course as I did or the funds and would simply move and sell or do nothing. This has been a story I hear again and again from my neighbors who downsized, sold their single-family homes, but would have happily have kept them to house their adult children, their young children with families or even renters or students. But dealing with the city was not feasible for them to make this happen. The missing middle housing can come from this group, but instead the gates are set up for failure and the talk track of vilifying single-family homes is a good soundbite for many who wish to land parcel and build big. Streamlining single-family development for owners would provide more rental properties faster with less environmental impact using local builders and businesses, but this is ignored. The soundbite that homeowners don't want renters is misinformation. For many homeowners with rising taxes and costs of living expenses need renters. They would need renters to pay for their renovations too. In attending the Home Open, the open house for securing rentals for this initiative, many of my
Sorry, Speaker, you, you are over the five minutes, but you do have, councillor Hardwick has questions for you. Councillor Hardwick?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you very much. So there's two points that I really wanted to pick up on what you, you said is that, first, that people thought they were doing the right thing by supporting this. But then you made a comment about soundbites. Could you elaborate on that? I'm, I'm, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to just think about, I think people feel that, you know, by saying that, you know, more density and more, more density, more height and those things are going to somehow result in lower cost. It is, is not the case, right? The, the, the land lift and everything that comes from these is considerably more than one would see land lift from allowing single families to build more. But I, I think that's what you're, you're getting at. And I think people, you know, think that it's a good thing, but the unintended consequences are quite, quite widespread. I, I'm not sure if that's the comment.
Yeah, no, that's, that's it. So, but what you are saying is that within the existing zoning, and of course, we're told that, that single-family exists, zoning exists, which is not true. But you can get four units on a so-called single-family lot, thirty-three-foot lot, but that it's cost prohibitive. And it's the city that is making it difficult to be building from within what is already zoned.
Correct. Exactly. I mean, I went to the open house sessions, discussed it. I showed, I talked to a great planner, a very nice person about my site. He thought it was great, asked me to provide that feedback. It was duly ignored. But when I said to them, why don't you think about these things? Why don't you do this? The answer actually was, well, we never really considered this. We were just thinking about how we motivate developers. I mean, that is the essence of what's happening here, you know? And I think that that mindset just completely needs to be changed by the city housing and development department. Because, you know, that's what's going to cause motions like this to come out en masse. And, and, you know, I think that that is part of the problem. There's a, there's a better way to do this, but it's ignored.
Well, why do you think, think that is? You know, again, we've heard that we have all these speakers, but listening to them, we've got, on the one hand, people that are living in the neighborhoods that are, you know, conscious of, of this widespread implications. Then we got tons of people from the industry that are coming on and saying, you know, we need to do this. So from your perspective, why do you think it is? Why do you think that the city is taking this from your experience, this, this approach?
Like what I said, I think there's this mindset, for whatever reason, that developers hold a key for unlocking all of our housing problems. And they are certainly a part of the solution, but they are not the only solution. And I think other things get walked past because, you know, it's not viewed as, it's not going to happen fast enough. Someone said, lane my housing. Well, it doesn't count as a secured rental. I mean, who do you think is going to go in here? You know, if it's a family member or they might need a rental, but none of that's considered. And it's very much a, I'm going to say it's a developer agenda that's based around build big, build large. And that's lucrative. And, and, you know, I think a motion like this, which is exclusively market rentals, is of great interest to, you know, people with special interests around it and, and the ability to capitalize on, on these sorts of motions.
So finally, it would be interesting to know what there is in terms of existing zoning in, in terms of what we could be building into.
Yeah, well, there's, there's lots of discussion by Tomquist and those, you know, the zoning capacity. And I don't think there's any data set that exists that's shown that we're encapping that existing zoning and instead we go for these spot zonings and then these mass zonings. It's not, it's not the way.
Great. Appreciate you speaking with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's it for questions. Thank you so much. I'm going to move on to the next speaker. And we've got speaker number ninety-one, Elliot Hoyt.
Yes, thank you.
Please go ahead.
Hello.
Hi there. Please go ahead.
Hi. Yes, my name's Elliot Hoyt. I'm a homeowner in Mount Pleasant and I live just outside the area in question. And I'm not connected to the real estate industry, but I am close to properties that will actually be affected by this rezoning than many people who are in a neighborhood that is being affected by this rezoning. And the reason that I want to phone in is because I strongly support this policy because I live on, on an arterial. Living, living in an, on an, on an arterial is a choice that I made as a homeowner, but it was a choice. Renters are not given any choices in this city. As a previous caller in said tonight, it took them a hundred hours to find a rental. Scott Delange Boom mentioned that people will, you know, it's for rent between the time you see them and the time you can fill out an application. Renters don't have choices in this city. I've been a renter myself. I rented until three years ago. I had to find three apartments in that time over the past seven years. We need more, we need more rentals in all of our neighborhoods and this policy is a great start for that. Providing options that are off arterial is a great start. Also, by providing options off of arterial, that means we activate more formerly single-family RS-one zones. Like we're offering more single, quote-unquote, single-family homes to building rentals, which means that we can displace fewer renters by building more housing. If we want to talk about zone capacity, that means tearing down a three-story building to build a four-story rental. That's displacing a lot more people. My neighborhood, we have a great mix of owners and renters and fundamentally, every neighborhood should have housing options to enable this. And this program is again, a great start for that. And I just reject the notion that someone should have to justify their presence in a neighborhood based on their housing tenure. Renters don't, shouldn't have to be helping someone's, pay off someone's mortgage in order to belong to a neighborhood. Every neighborhood needs housing options and some neighbors of a member, and if some members of a neighborhood think that rentals don't belong in their neighborhood, they're wrong. I strongly support this motion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. I don't see any questions for you. So we'll move to the next speaker. We have speaker number ninety-two, Utay Lee.
Speaker ninety-two is not on the line.
Thanks very much, clerks. Speaker number ninety-three, Clara Prager.
Hi there. Can you guys hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Awesome. My name's Clara Prager. I am a resident of Vancouver, have been for, let's see, nine years now. And I live in Mount Pleasant, actually pretty close to Main Street. I live on like a pretty quiet street near Main Street, but I absolutely love it here. And, you know, I can go and do my shopping just by walking. There's like so many amenities and restaurants close by. My husband can bike to work in like five minutes and it's just, it, the quality of life we have here because we live close to a local shopping area is really good and so good for our mental health to be able to just walk out the door and go get our takeout and support local businesses. I just really wish that more people could experience that and so I'm strongly in favor of this policy. I think increasing rental stock close to shopping areas is good for the economy, good for housing affordability. It's really good for the climate and I saw recently that this council is not close to meeting its climate targets, not even remotely close, which is very disappointing. So yeah, I, I think this policy is a kind of a no-brainer. And I would, yeah, strongly support it. I, my understanding of this is, is that this is an already kind of watered-down version of something that has been in the works for a long time and, and has already gone through like years of consultation and has been amended. So I don't think you need any more consultation. You're already, you know, you're hearing from a hundred and fifteen speakers over three nights. That's a lot of consultation, a lot of chances for people to voice their opinion and send in written comments. So yeah, I think, yeah, this, this policy is going to increase affordability. It's going to be good for the climate and it's going to increase people's mental health. I know that a, a previous speaker had talked about loneliness in this city and how apartments might not be good for loneliness, but I actually just had dinner with some friends who used to live in an apartment building and some of their best friends who were their neighbors in that building and still, still get together, like supported each other really well through COVID because they lived across the door. And like, I live in a basement suite, but like, I don't see any of my neighbors ever. But if I lived in an apartment building, I think I would have better relationships with my neighbors. And yeah, frankly, like when it comes to loneliness, I have, listening to these proceedings has been very demoralizing. As a renter, I feel like I'm a second-class citizen in the city based on what people are saying about renters. And I don't think that's true. I think I really contribute a lot and I a lot, and I'm a good neighbor, I look at, I keep an eye out for people around me, make sure that I, you know, say hi, and somebody, I see somebody's dog get out of their house, I go and grab it and knock on their door, and, yeah, I think that the rhetoric that renters are ruining neighborhoods isn't true, and I think I, I think people like me have a lot to offer neighbors, and it's, it's, yeah, it's been quite alienating to hear a lot of the rhetoric, frankly, but I, I trust that this council has my interests in mind and doesn't see me as a second-class citizen, and that you, yeah, that you'll support this policy that will make it easier to find a home, because at this point, I don't know how long I'll be able to stay in this city, and a lot of my friends have already moved away, so it's hard to like build long-lasting friendships, because you just don't know if people are actually going to live here for the long term, because they, it's so hard to find housing, as so many people have said already. So, yeah, I, I also just, I don't think that council can reasonably go back to citizens in three hundred and thirty-nine days and say that they've lived out their mandate to increase affordability in the city unless they support this policy, so I strongly support this, and I urge you guys to as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I don't see any questions for you, just thank you so much for calling in tonight, and we're going to move on to speaker number ninety-four, who is Leopold Wemberecy.
Speaker ninety-four is not on the line.
Thank you, Clerks. We have speaker number ninety-five, Sarabi Shakarwa.
Hello, hi.
Sarah, I'm sorry if I've mispronounced your name, but please go ahead, about the five minutes.
Thank you. So, I'd just like to start off by saying that I fully support this policy proposal, and I believe that it's long overdue, and the streamlining rental policy will give all renters in Vancouver who range in all demographics, a large number of whom come from all parts of the world, the option to live off of busy polluted arterial streets, or not live in people's basements, or, you know, in a small unit behind someone else's house, and it will just provide most people a fair chance for having a good life in Vancouver. Other than that, just with regard to the compactness of development, this policy will definitely promote sustainable, compact living, and lesser reliance on automobiles, and definitely prevent urban sprawl. And as per my understanding, as it is, like, a rezoning proposal could put a rental anywhere in Vancouver, this policy is just saying that we would not require a rezoning to happen for a rental building to go up in some parts of the city, so the, the entire process of public consultation, development permit, design panel, would all happen on a project-by-project basis, what this policy is going to do is simplify the process for City of Vancouver, which I understand is already overloaded with various development applications, and with a large amount of land being already blocked off in these area plans, this is just going to simplify the bureaucratic process of getting more housing into Vancouver, where we're already seeing that there's a lack of housing with respect to how many jobs we have. So, I just think this policy has been long overdue, and eventually, the, the result of how much rental comes out is going to be decided by the market anyway, this policy is just going to make us get there sooner, quicker, happier. Yeah, that's all from me, thank you.
Great, thank you so much for your time this evening, I do not see anybody on the speaker's list for you or questions, so I'll move to the next speaker, thanks again though for calling in. We have Taizo Yakamoto, speaker number ninety-six.
Hi, my name is Taizo Yamamoto, thank you to Mayor and Council for allowing me to speak in favor of this policy. I'm an architect and I live in East Vancouver. Over the past ten years, our firm has completed six rental buildings with five hundred and twenty-seven units under the secured rental policy. We currently have four rental buildings with three hundred and fourteen units under construction under the secured rental policy. We also have four rental buildings with two hundred and seventy-one units currently going through the secured rental policy approval process. Most of these projects have been on C2 sites, and all have been required to go through rezoning. None of these projects have been rejected at public hearings. In addition to these projects, we have been approached by developers to do feasibility studies for sites that are eligible for development under this policy. Over the past year, we've looked at six sites, and all of them are on arterials, we have not looked at a site on a local street. Altogether, these six sites would create approximately five hundred and ninety rental units. One of these sites is within C2, and my client is awaiting the result of this decision on whether to proceed with fifty-eight market condos or one hundred rental units. On another site, my client would provide sixteen units of below-market rental units, taking advantage of the twenty percent density bonus. I've listened to speakers of the public hearings, and I wanted to just highlight a couple of technical points. First, related to building heights, there was some discussion earlier this evening about this, an architect spoke about doing nine-foot floor-to-floor, this is no longer feasible, our floor-to-floors are ten-foot-two, this allows for floor assemblies that provide acoustic separation, fire resistance ratings, seismic requirements, and it also allows for drops for HRVs and other equipment that's now required to satisfy green buildings policies. Another point had to do with greenery, these, these zones allow for large setbacks on the front, on the rear, and one detail that has to be mentioned is that planning has included a stipulation that parques where they exist have to follow the setback of the building above, so this means that the building doesn't extend, the parque doesn't extend past the building face, which allows a lot more soil for large trees, robust planting, and preservation of existing trees. One small detail which may have been missed in this is some minor change to C2 zoning, which allows for more flexibility in retail density, so previously, there was a maximum residential density above grade, which ended up creating bloated retail. With the new policy, point three-five FSRs required for retail, but that allows the developers more flexibility in how they allocate that space, and I think will result in smaller, finer-grain retail. Finally, I think designs mentioned as these simple boxes that will be proliferating across the city, I think that's not true, I've known, I know from experience, going through the DP process is not simple, and planning has a lot to say about design and character, and I assume this will be carried forward through each of these projects. So I'll leave it there, and I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any, thank you.
Thank you so much, I don't see any questions for you, so just want to thank you for participating this evening, and I'll move on to the next speaker. Counsel, the next speaker is Sean Lang, speaker number ninety-seven of one hundred and fifteen.
All right, can you hear me okay?
Sure can, up to five minutes, please.
Great, thanks, I didn't, I didn't write anything out, so just going to keep it real, I'm going to say the same thing I said last time something like this came up. I've, I've been a renter in the city for the past seven years, I work in the film industry, I'm still living in a studio, I'd like to be able to move up, but year after year, the market gets more expensive, and I know part of that is, is a supply problem, and it seems more often than not, you know, we have to, we have to fight for more rental housing in this city, especially through rezoning, so I, I support this policy, anything that helps make it easier for, for more rentals to go up, because I, I live in a bit of a pot of rental apartments, but you walk a few blocks and then it's just, it's just kilometers of single-family houses, which, which are nice, but you know, if we want to be a world-class city, you know, we gotta, we gotta build for the population that's going to be moving here eventually, and the population that's currently here. And, yeah, just wanted to call in and say I support this, so that's, that's all I got.
Thank you so much for your time, I don't see any questions, but appreciate your participation, and I'm going to move to the next speaker, we have speaker number nine.
Mayor, point of procedure.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Carr.
Yes, I'd like to move to extend this meeting to hear the remaining speakers, and refer the debate and decision to the council, the next council meeting, which I think is a council meeting of just, of November the sixteenth.
Five, five ninety, okay, I was just sorry, I was counting how many speakers were left, Counselor Carr, so do we have a seconder for that motion?
Point of privilege?
I'll second, Counselor Boyle.
Okay, sorry, the privilege point goes next, Counselor Dejanova, privilege point?
Well, I suppose maybe I can just speak to it, I, my point of privilege is I won't be able to participate, I imagine some members of the public might not be able to either after a certain time, but just because I will not have childcare after that time, and I'd like to be present for all of it, and also because I know the public knows that we meet until ten.
Sure, sure.
I won't be able to support it, but I just wanted to note that.
Okay, it's kind of proving into debate there.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right, so we, we have a mover and a seconder, if you'd like to speak to this, I'm just going to, just before I do that, Clerks, I just want to make sure that this motion to extend is debatable, and I think it is actually, so I just want to double-check. So if anybody wants to speak to this, please put yourself on.
Yes, because it's past ten PM, it is.
Thank you very much, so Counsel Dejanova, we have up to five minutes for debate.
Thanks very much, I won't be supporting this, and my apologies merits, it's been a number of long nights, and I should have saved that for debate, but my point of privilege was that I, I won't be able to stay, seeing the amount of speakers that we have, and the fact that we have usually, unless there's just one or two or three left, extended only on that basis, and considering there are quite a few, I think over a dozen, on the list, plus more that may want to speak, sign up to speak, I'm not in favor of this, because also that would mean, Council, that we would be asking questions and making a decision within the time allotted for our council meeting, that I'm not even sure that we would get through on Tuesday, so to have this unfinished business, there are a number of people also may not be able to attend, because that's during regular working hours, so for that reason, I prefer that we find another reserved date for this, and I'm happy to limit my questions if that's what it takes, but I, I, for my own reasons, I've already shared that, I assume the public may have reasons similar, but also because there has been some talk about consultation and giving people the chance to speak if they haven't been notified of this, I won't be supportive of this, thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
Yeah, I'm not going to support this, there is an extensive list of speakers, and as at the end of all public hearings, we have the opportunity for the public to call in, and that's, I mean, we're all ready at quarter to ten, so I think it's, it's the wrong thing to do, it's the wrong thing to the public speakers that are yet to come, and it's, it's, you know, we're all, we're all tired, we're not, you know, I know we're talking about putting off debate and decision until later time, but I just think it's the wrong thing to do. Again, if it was just a handful of speakers, and we've done it in the past, we've, you know, it's been clear, but that's not happening here, this is, it is controversial, and to just try and run it out, run out the clock tonight, I think is the wrong thing to do, so I won't support.
Counselor Swanson, up to five minutes.
Ten o'clock is late enough for me.
Short and sweet, thank you, Counselor Swanson, Counselor Dominado.
Thanks, Mayor, I just had a point of information, or a small point of pardon, I'm pretty sure it's you, but whether, if we were to hear the remaining speakers on the list tonight, and close off the list, could we allow on Tuesday to, that if anyone hadn't, we missed or skipped over, could still call in on the Tuesday, we wouldn't, so the list would be closed, but for anyone who had signed up and not been able to speak, for some reason they missed their spot, we would allow the, sort of that last call of names and going back through the list as we have in past, does that make sense? I'm just a little tired.
It does make sense, and it may, it may work for a council meeting where we can vary the procedures, but since this is a public hearing, we have to really strictly abide by the rules, just so you know, there are twelve speakers currently on the line, so that is at least, you know, could be, should allow for an hour, that would be five minutes each, and if there were any questions, it would go beyond that, and so I'll just leave you with that information.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Counselor Carr?
Yes, thanks, Mayor, I just want to remind counselors, of course, you know that you can hear the, the speakers in the recorded section of this meeting afterwards, so of course, you, you won't miss any of the, of the speakers, although the opportunity to ask questions, of course, won't be there, but that is there. I've been in many meetings where we have extended, in fact, past eleven to twelve, I've also been in very long hearings where we've, we've gone on many nights, but we have already gone on the third night, and I was rather dismayed to think that we might be extending this into January, that's a couple of months away, so I, I think that, that extending to hear those speakers tonight, to close that speakers list, and then debate and decision in the nearer future, i.e. at the next council meeting, makes a lot more sense on this as a very pressing, the very pressing issue that it is.
Okay, do we have Counsel Boy?
Sorry about that, I was double muted here, no, I just wanted to speak in support of the motion, I think, after listening to three days of speakers, and then what looks to be by our schedule, a likely decision in January, it will be very difficult to sort of reflect and recap on the concentration of information we've received over the last week and a half, and I, we've gone to eleven before, it's not ideal on a regular, but this is the timing of this particular report and the time of year, and getting this decision made, I think, is quite important, so I would be voting in favor of the motion.
Okay, just going to remind counselors of the procedure here, we have twelve counselors registered, sorry, speakers registered or on the line at the moment, but in order to close the speakers list, I have to go, we would have to go back through the list and call the names of the many, many speakers who did not, were not on the line when their names are called, and then I would have to go through and call three times for any other speakers that would want to speak to this item, so my, my calculation is it would, it would probably take us well past eleven PM to finish this this evening, so I decided to let you know, just for information for the voting, so I don't see anybody else on the line, or sorry, on the queue to speak, so I will call a vote on this, just for reminder of the clerks, we do need a two-thirds vote in order to extend past ten o'clock.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thanks, so council knows that, so I'll call a vote on this now, we've already had some, knowing it's not going to be unanimous, I will call a recording vote. Okay, Council, that has passed, and so we will be extending to hear from the remainder of the speakers to, to, to close the list, and then to move the debate and decision to, to a council, a future council's meeting, so with that in mind.
Procedure?
One of the speakers, Counselor Dejanova?
I have, are you going to call out the names of those who are in opposition, ma'am?
Sorry, I didn't do that, I don't know if it's still up there, perhaps the clerks could do that. I think it was Counselor Swanson, Counselor Hardwick, and I think you, Counselor Dejanova, but I just wanted to double-check. To re-oppose, I know.
That's correct.
Great, thank you so much, sorry for that, for. Great. Thank you so much. Sorry for that, for getting a call that out. And with that, we're going to move to the next speaker, who is speaker number ninety-eight, Marcus Weber.
Yep, hello.
Hi there. You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready. Please go ahead.
Okay, thanks a lot. So yeah, so I am a renter in Vancouver. I just moved into the Aspen building that was done by Catalyst, which just opened on Main Street and Sixth. So first, I would like to thank council and the mayor for supporting that project. I think there should be many more projects like this. It's a fantastic building. I'm really happy to be in this part of town. So I am very much in favor of the proposal. I think this should be an easy vote for council. This goes along with the plans that have been voted for in favor by this council and that they supported when they were elected. And this is just fulfilling the promises that were made. And I think the, a lot of the people who have spoken against it use terms that are very dramatic, like this is going to change the city in a, in a really harmful way. I think that's not true. I think this is an incremental and a common sense approach. We're allowing high density on places that are, that have a lot of traffic anyway. It would allow the people that are commuting on these, on these roads and avenues to live there instead of commuting farther away. So I think it just makes perfect sense for the city. If you look at models like New Zealand and California, which both are moving very quickly towards banning single-family zoning almost entirely in, in, across, you know, across California and in, in some of the major cities in New Zealand. I think this is a way to keep the decision-making within the city. So it's that, that power is kept within the city and not moved up to higher levels of government who might not know the community as well. So I think this is an excellent proposal. And I think it it will allow the city to organically grow. It addresses two of the major problems, which is the supply of housing, the density, and as well the, the cumbersome zoning process that adds cost, reduces profit, and ends up getting in the way of obstructing buildings and, and projects that might have been done already. So I'm very much in favor of it.
Thank you so much for your thoughts and opinions. We don't have any questions for you, so I will move to the next speaker. Council, we've got, thank you. We have Erica Weiss, speaker number ninety-nine.
Good evening, members of council. Mayor Stewart, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Which is another way of asking whether you're all still awake. I'm opposed to the rental rezoning policy, and this is why. Given the rate of development that we've seen in the past city, in the city over the past fifteen years, if there was a favorable correlation between development, the amount of development and housing prices, housing costs would already be greatly reduced by now. How much do we have to build before everyone who wants to live in Vancouver can afford to do so? And do we really want to build that much? I live in a property that would be directly impacted by this proposed policy. I wasn't notified of it by the city, and until very recently, I had no idea that it was even happening. I found it incredibly difficult to obtain the clarity and meaningful information that I need about the policy and the impacts of it from the city in order to make an informed decision and meaningfully participate in the process. And given the significant impact of the policy across the city, I'm frankly shocked that council has failed to notify members of affected communities directly to engage them in the process very early on. I am supportive of thoughtful measures being taken to increase the availability of below-market housing that are based on actual demand gleaned from census-driven data, taking into account the numerous housing developments already underway across the city and which are appropriate in design and scale to applicable neighborhoods. I do not support the speculative arbitrary one-size-fits-all approach of this policy, which would treat each neighborhood the same way without any community-specific planning or engagement. I'm particularly concerned about the potential environmental impact of this policy. There's a lot of talk about the green aspect of this initiative and how environmental it will all be. But the reality is that if this policy is approved, we will be losing an abundance of actual literal greenness due to the loss of numerous private gardens, especially in conjunction with the formation of land assemblies on off arterial roads. How will the removal of private gardens and the corresponding loss of green spaces be meaningfully compensated for? How green is any development if it entails the permanent loss of countless gardens, wildlife habitat, and other green spaces? Where are the accessible comprehensive studies on the environmental impact of this policy? In the absence of a clear understanding of the environmental impact, the emphasis on the green build aspect seems like a smokescreen for the loss of habitat and green spaces it would entail. Habitat loss is the leading cause of bird population decline in the province. One of the goals articulated by the Vancouver Bird Strategy is to support habitat by creating conditions for native birds to thrive in the city by protecting, enhancing, and creating habitats for diversity of native birds and reducing threats to birds in the urban environment. A two thousand and three Vancouver study found that species richness declined in relation to increasing urbanization. How is the loss of habitat due to the destruction of private gardens pursuant to this policy going to protect and encourage diversity of bird life? I'm also concerned about the impact of this policy on traffic. I believe it is utopian to assume residents of these developments will rely exclusively on public transit. While some may opt to take transit for certain trips, the reality is that many people will continue to own and drive private cars. What modeling has been done to project the impact on traffic across the city? What measures will be taken to alleviate increased traffic congestion resulting from this policy? In the absence of underground parking, how will resident and visitor parking be accommodated without flooding nearby residential streets, which are already strained by parking demand? Ultimately, I fear this policy does not do justice to a city known for its thoughtful and deliberate urban planning and which lods itself for its greenness. If this policy is approved, I envision the significant loss of green spaces and wildlife habitat across the city. I envision, I envision huge arbitrary height and density increases that are out of sync with affected areas. I envision material increases in traffic congestion across the city and the construction of countless market-driven and therefore unaffordable boxes built to the maximum permitted height and footprint. In short, less green, more homogeneity, and maximum capacity and congestion across the city. Increased places to live at the expense of overall livability. Why would we do it this way when we could do so much better? Thank you for allowing me to take the time to speak to you all this evening.
Thank you. I don't see questions for you, but really appreciate you calling in this evening and sharing your thoughts. I will move on to the next speaker. We have speaker one hundred, Sandra Hayden.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be very brief because I'm going to actually echo speaker ninety-nine's a lot of what she had to say. Firstly, the lack of community engagement was very upsetting. I actually just heard this about what was going on a few days ago from a neighbor. And speaking to other people in the neighborhood, they have no idea about what, what the city has been planning. And I, so basically, I am in opposition of this. I think also because the issues that speaker ninety-nine brought up, traffic congestion, with all the other developments being planned for Jericho lands, the amount of buildings that have been done at U B C. Already, the traffic is shocking. And I do agree with her that I don't think it's necessarily going to be cutting down on cars. The other thing that really concerns me is that I feel that the city does, the, the, the issue of boxes and homogeneity. I think that there's, there's such poor lack of long-term future vision of, of what's needed in, in, in communities. And I don't, I, I understand and agree with the issues of high density. But I just don't have faith in, in how things will proceed in this neighborhood right now. And I think just because this is sort of something that I just recently heard of right now, I feel I just can't support it. And that's really all I have to say right now.
Hey, thank you so much. I don't see any questions for you at this time. So I'll thank you again for calling in this evening and go to our next speaker. Our next speaker is Philippe La Bilon.
Thank you very much. Very well done. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for staying up late to take our calls. It's very nice to be in a country where, where citizens can speak. So yes, like the previous speakers, I learned about this by the wayside. It's interesting to know that you've spent your entire working life, you know, saving money, investing, and then being told, you know, what you bought is not really what, what you get. So it's fine. I think it took change. And, you know, we live in a city that is dynamic and is open on the world, and that's great. But I'll make a few points. The first one, and I was talking with David David today about it, and he confirmed that as Minister of Housing, its supply alone is not going to get us to affordability. It's very important to address demand, and demand side is key. And I'm very glad that the N E P government tackled that and the previous one as well, and started to recognize that this is the way forward. So it means that we need to determine who can access supply under what conditions and where, and that the land be reasonable according to already the situations we're in. And of course, the route from another that municipal government and the provincial government has. So what's the reality in the ground? On the ground, what we see is that there are many places that are already very expensive and will most likely be further increased in value where the reselling that is presented will be allowed. So there will be more speculation that we've seen. And so I've seen, like a friend of mine, selling his three million dollar that we build a year and a half before selling it, the house being raised and put down. And yeah, the reasoning being done, etc. So I don't think that afforded more, you know, affordability as far as I could see from people who moved in, or at least those who pretended to move in, because not so many moved in actually. But anyway, that's another issue. So the result will be the likely more expensive I N condos and affordable rental units for the workers than most. And as one of the developers said tonight, if I may repeat what he said, builders are not price stickers. They're, they're not, they, they, they are price stickers. They are not price makers. And the rents will have to be at market price because they'll have to buy them on the market. So that brings me a little bit to a second point that I'd like to make. Second is that the social and environmental advantages of housing density and densification are realized when the densification is concentrated. That's the principle of densification. And so those advantages don't arise when densification is spread thin. So letting the market to further distribute condos across much of the city is not going to yield many of the advantages that the city council is rightly, you know, hoping for. As you know, building clusters and at scale can reduce costs, which under well-regulated condition can translate indeed into more affordable rents. So cluster resoning also allows for higher residential units, which can further reduce costs, as it was also mentioned this evening. You know, those seven stories in particular. And finally, the clusters then to concentrate retail opportunities and rapid transit accessibility. And that's the goal of, you know, those are also goals of the city council, and it's a very good thing. And all these reduced mobility impacts that otherwise this kind of steady spread patchwork of condos that we risk ending up will create. So what we're seeing indeed with this reasoning proposal is dispersed construction work and never-ending work in many, many places that will respond to local opportunities and create the kind of linear patchwork. I don't know if it's a good concept, especially in planning, if there's been duct tape of isolated condos stretched out along what will become even busier roads, called by traffics. If I take a few examples, but I don't have time for many, but I'll take the Point Gray area. There are obviously two major clusters at the moment that can be developed, is the former Safeway land and the Jericho land. And former Safeway land can have about six major residential towers, presenting eight hundred units or more. And the Jericho land project has, it's planned nine thousand units. So together, that represents about twenty-five thousand new residents in Jericho. And I'm not including the two additional clusters down on Alma at Broadway and Four, stretching actually from tenth all the way to fourth. We're likely also to see there, you know, really good, well-planned clusters, if that can be done by council. Instead, maybe things are not going to quite happen, take time. And instead, we're going to see, you know, developers doing a little thing here, a little thing there. And I'm not sure that's going to really change the game, except that there'll be a lot of stuff, people around the neighborhood, which will let some of them to move out, as we've seen in the past. So.
Thank you. You are actually over time?
I'm up. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate it. Council, if I can just remind you, in order to keep quorum, we're just at quorum right now. Some is to leave your cameras on, just so we can maintain our six folks, so that the clerks will keep an eye on that. Thank you. Okay, council, so we're on to Richard Campbell, who is speaker number one hundred two.
Hi, Mayor Stewart and council. Can you hear me?
We sure can. Please go ahead. Up to five minutes.
Great. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak on, on this. I strongly support the proposal, specifically the rental houses. We desperately need more of them, as many speakers have already mentioned. And especially it's to see rental housing going in off the noisy and polluted arterial, so that's, that's critical. I, I do have some concerns on the proposal. I, I looked at the, there were some changes being proposed, the streetscapes. Mostly, I believe, more space for, for the sidewalks, which is certainly great to see. But I, I think the city really needs to do far more than that, as far as the streetscapes in, in general. And I was disappointed not to see that as part of the proposal. So generally, I think there's two things. One, we need less lanes of traffic. That will slow the traffic down and create less noise and, and safety problems. And that will make it much healthier for the, and safer for the people that live and shop along the, the, the arterial. So I think that's something that perhaps is probably would be the scope of future work. But I would like to see council commit to doing, doing that. You have more space, so let's make better use for it. And also, I think we really need in front of these buildings is not to have any on-street parking, except maybe some that's essential for, for accessibility. So the, the on-street parking, it creates a few problems. One, it generates car trips, which is exactly what we're, we're trying to avoid here. So let's really encourage local businesses and local shopping, rather than new businesses going in this place that depend on people driving from around the region to get to them, which is totally not what we would want to do. It also creates some space for protected bike lanes, which are absolutely essential on arterials. And I'm disappointed that the city is only committed to doing that on, on a few streets. And that's a really backward policy. It's behind, it's behind Burnaby. It's behind Richmond. It's behind Surrey. So we really need to kind of pick it up. And finally, the, the heat wave tragically showed us that we really need to add more trees. Ideally, we'd have a double row of trees on each side of the street. And get, getting rid of the parking and getting rid of travel lanes are a good way to do that. And just make the, the city healthier for everyone, but especially for the people that live on the arterials. And sadly, those units will be cheaper because people with money don't want to live on the arterial. So it's really essential, in addition to creating more space for people to live off the arterials, especially rentals, is to make the, the, the arterial is much more pleasant. And it's really inequitable to have speeding by or allowing people to speed by these places, creating noise, pollution, and safety hazards, while the people there, that are living there suffer the negative consequences. So I encourage you to approve this and, and then quickly take work to totally redesign the streets to make them healthier and, and better for everyone. And really, this is the only way we're going to meet our environmental and G H G and health goals that we have at the city. So I think, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time tonight. I don't see any questions for you. So we're going to move to the next speaker. Council, I was, just before we get there, I was incorrect. It is through the council meetings that I have to go through the list of, we're required to go through the list of speakers who missed. In this case, I will just call three times, and that is. we're required to go through the list of speakers who missed. In this case, I will just call three times and that is the proper procedure. I just check with the clerk. So next we have speaker number one oh three, Alex Boston.
Hi there. Your worship, can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Okay. I'd like to really commend staff for their analysis on this amendment and thank you, mayor and council, for your incredible patience. This decision is a balancing act. I'm urging mayor and council to tip the balance in favor of housing and transportation affordability, congestion management, public health and climate action. And this amendment has the potential to address all of them. Further work is necessary, but overwhelmingly this is a solid, solid amendment. I want to address a few items that have been raised by others. One, inadequate data. There's a heap of data on the demand for affordable housing and the supply that we're constantly missing year after year after year. And I'd refer those in attendance, as well as mayor and council, the excellent report by the Director of Planning, May third, reporting on the Affordable Housing Strategy, which is also consistent with Metro Vancouver's Affordable Housing Strategy. We need more affordable housing. We're not delivering it. From a supply perspective, the demand is there. One of the major barriers is existing zoning policies and it's undermining our economy, our health, traffic flow, climate, as well as affordability. In terms of inadequate consultation, there's been a massive consultation on variations of this policy, but also this is solid alignment with the Affordable Housing Strategy, with the Climate Emergency Action Plan. There's been a lot of work that's been done by staff and by council and consultations that are aligned with this major amendment. There's concerns being raised about density in single-family neighborhoods. The reality is, is over half of the fabric that we're talking about has been losing density. There hasn't been a point in time, considerably nineteen seventies, where density was lower in half of these neighborhoods. And we are only talking about developments on the arteries, which is a tiny, tiny share of these entire neighborhoods. I would agree that across North America and across Vancouver, we have too much ultra-high density, but we also have way too much ultra-low density. This proposal of four and six-story development is very human scale and entirely appropriate for these arterios, notably because of the good transit service that they can have. Strategically creating affordable housing along these corridors with affordable transportation will mitigate growth in congestion and cars. And as mentioned previously, if we strong active travel infrastructure that is integrated to complement this amendment, it will do a tremendous amount to further mitigate congestion in the region. On top of the loss of density and the plummeting roads in one and two-person households that we see dominant in the single-family fabric, we also see that in these proposed neighborhoods are the neighborhoods where we have very, very low walkability. And that's in large part due to inadequate destinations, commercial destinations. So this proposal also puts in place the opportunity to move neighborhoods that are overwhelmingly unwalkable to make them entirely walkable. Once again, cutting local car trips. Short trips are the biggest share of congestion that we have on our roads and a major source of carbon pollution. So this proposal is another important contribution to the Climate Emergency Action Plan, notably in the leadership area of land use. And it will contribute greatly to the fifteen-minute walkable neighborhood big move in the Climate Emergency Action Plan. So I would encourage council to strongly support this policy. I submitted earlier today a number of maps that outline the plummeting density and the huge opportunity that can be taken advantage of with this proposal.
Thank you so much for your time this evening. I do not see any questions for you. So well, thank you for participating tonight. And move to speaker one oh four, who is Steve Leathley.
Hello. Thanks so much for extending the time and giving me a chance to speak. I'll be super brief. I had a long speech written, but I won't give you the whole thing. I totally support this motion. It needs to happen. It's critical that we keep growing the city as it needs to be. Keep growing. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and your comments. I don't see any questions. So we'll move on to speaker one oh five, Ben Wells.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Great. Thanks for hearing me, mayor and council. Yeah, I'm a thirty-four-year-old renter in Kitsellano and I live in a pretty mixed neighborhood with a bunch of sort of medium-scale stuff. I think that this kind of housing being off arterial roads and in neighborhoods is excellent for those neighborhoods. I live a life very closely connected with my neighbors in my neighborhood. I walk most places to get things that I need, bike to the other ones and then drive infrequently to get to other services in my life. So, yeah, I want to really encourage a support of this motion or this amendment. I think that these kinds of movements towards medium density throughout a much bigger portion of the city are sustainable and really do contribute to a vibrant and healthy city life that we need. Yeah, and I think that I like birds too. And I think that we need to make decisions that focus more on people and the bigger scale challenges of the city and what that means for people's lives and equity, rather than necessarily trying to make small preservations on very niche issues.
Thanks very much for your time. I don't see any questions for you. So thank you. And I'll move on to Ajay Gang, speaker one oh six.
Speaker one oh six is not on the line.
Thanks, clerks. We'll move on to Karen, Karen La Bilion.
Mayor Stewart, we're just checking speaker one oh, one oh seven. There seems to be a problem.
Okay, thanks.
Hi.
Hi there. Thanks for calling in. Oh, that's fine. Thanks. We can do. Up to five minutes, please.
Thank you so much. First of all, I'd like to express my support for the goals of your initiative, but to express my opposition to particular formulation of this policy. So the support is for greater density, support for renters, support for densification, for all of the reasons that have been outlined tonight. However, the particular policy that is in place, I think, may not achieve the desired goals. I would particularly like to point out the lack of robust census-informed data, the lack of emphasis on supply-side policies, and the focus on developer-driven agendas that has not allowed for an inclusive collaborative process whereby a variety of rental properties could be provided in neighborhoods across the city. In particular, speaking as a homeowner, I have shared the concerns raised tonight about the difficulty of attempting to introduce rental accommodation in existing single-family dwellings. Moreover, the lack of information provided to residents in my neighborhood has been stunning, honestly. The majority of the neighbors that I know have not heard of this initiative, are unaware of these hearings and would be truly surprised if they knew the large-scale changes that were being proposed without their input. So to sum up, and then I'm going to make a few recommendations. The initiative is an excellent one. I do not think the policy as currently proposed should go ahead. The amendments I propose are as follows. First, I think that the linear development that would be permitted under this strategy under the major arterios needs to be reconsidered. Notably, an earlier speaker referred to the benefits of organizing development in clusters, nodes, perhaps. For example, Fourth and Alma, Broadway and Alma, Sassenat and Tenth. These are all nodes that are in need of renewal and are locations where buildings should be concentrated, creating transit hubs, creating sufficient density of customers for retail, etcetera. Nodal development versus linear development should be the emphasis. And I will particularly note that in the Point Gray neighborhood, this initiative could lead to a further undermining of the business improvement area, the Point Gray commercial area that stretches from, if you know it, from Blanca through past Sassenat on to the gas station. In that particular area, a lot of businesses have closed. Creating new high-rise towers in the former Safeway lot is something I'm very much in favor of. That should be the priority in this neighborhood rather than linear development down Tenth, which could simply actually drag more activity away from what is actually a dying business area. So a particular amendment I would like to suggest, if this does go forward, is that Tenth between Alma and the business area at the top of the hill in Point Gray be excluded, that that be sequenced for development at a later date, in particular, given the close proximity of the Jericho Lands redevelopment, as well as anticipated development on the Safeway Lands. And again, to make that recommendation absolutely clear, the amendment would be that if the policy were to go ahead, Tenth Avenue would be excluded from Alma West up to the area where we do currently have, of course, medium density. A couple more points. The importance of coordinating development at U V C. Oh, am I out of my time?
Just twenty seconds.
Okay, I'll sum up there and I'll just leave you with my recommended amendment regarding not permitting development along Tenth between, from Alma westward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. There are no questions for you, but I just wanted to make clear, I think, are you Karen Baker?
Yeah, because I didn't get a speaker request coming back in for my first email, I thought it didn't work and I sent in a second one. So that is a duplicate and I don't need to speak again. Correct?
Okay, sorry. But you're, yeah, okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, so we're going to move on to speaker one oh nine, who is Jamie Vaughn.
Hi, mayor. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Hi, mayor, council. My name is Jamie Vaughn. I am a resident in Vancouver. I am also a developer. So I want to be clear about that from the get-go. I will not, I'll remove a bunch of what I was going to say, as it's been said, and there's obviously a time crunch. I appreciate you guys extending the time here. I did want to point out that, you know, councillor Swanson's brought up the fact that, you know, there may not be a lot of affordable rental being built. And I did want to speak slightly on that because I think staff have done a good job of kind of amending that policy to a certain degree to kind of eliminate vacancy control and allow these rents to kind of track up with the R T A standards. And I think based on that, performers will pencil a little bit better because providing a twenty percent affordable component is really, really challenging for a project because it essentially renders one-fifth your density in your areas as worthless. And so it makes it really challenging to make the numbers work. But I think staff have done a good job of rectifying that. I will point out that, that affordable component, they say, is twenty percent below C M H C rent numbers. And in actuality, it's a lot greater than twenty percent because C M H C looks at their rent numbers from a citywide perspective. So they're basically grouping in a new build plus a sixty-year-old building. So, for example, like a one bed that's in an older building could be charged in a thousand bucks, whereas a new build could be at two thousand bucks. So based on that grouping of all those into one group, it actually means that that twenty percent below C M H C standards for a new product is actually more like forty, forty-plus percent from an affordability perspective. So there is a lot greater affordability there, which I think the city is obviously trying to achieve. And I think, I don't necessarily think staff should look at it that way. I think they should compare a new product to a new product and not group in all the old stuff. But regardless, I do think staff have done a good job of kind of massaging that part of the policy to try and make it work and try and really encourage developers to build that, me being one of them. So I just wanted to point that out. And I appreciate staff and everything they've done. And I appreciate mayor and council for extending the hour tonight. And, yeah, I hope, I hope this policy gets approved. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any questions. Oh, councillor Weave. Councillor Weave has a question for you. Please go ahead.
Yeah, quick question. So you're saying that the affordable component of this policy is something that you would look at doing and you think it is, you could pencil it in. Is that correct?
I think from the perspective of, I look at it from potential projects that are mixed-use. So you'd be kind of located next to a C two zone, but in an R S zone, that those would require twenty percent affordable units. And I think based on the fact that that affordable component has changed slightly from staff perspective, I think it does work a lot better. I think if there is vacancy control put back in, if there's amendments from council on this particular piece, I think you're going to really make it impossible to make it work because as my expenses rise and you're telling me now these units, their rents are basically set forever, it's going to basically make it impossible to make it work. So I think staff have done a good job of that. And I think in these mixed-use projects next to C two zones, I do think you will see people build projects with an affordable component to them.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
It pencils better than it did before, so.
Okay. Thank you. That's it for questions. Appreciate you phoning in tonight. And we're going to move to speaker one ten. Speaker one hundred and ten is Penny Noble.
Hello.
Hi there. Up to five minutes, please.
Great, thank you. So I am a Vancouver resident, Kitsellano specifically, in the upper part of Kitsellano. I'm not sure how articulate I'm going to be at this time of night. It's way past my bedtime. But I do want to thank all of you for your hard work, both staff, council and mayor, because this is not an easy process. I am speaking against this proposal, although I do agree with many of the concepts. Walkable communities, lower rentals, more amenities, better transit, improvements in our climate, trying to do something about climate change. But I just, I just do not think that this is what's going to happen with this proposal. The other night, staff admitted that most of the housing obtained will not be below-market rental. And I think by, after listening for three nights to many of the people speaking for this, they're simply seeing the word affordable or below-market and thinking that's what's going to happen. But it seems to me, from what I've heard, that's not what's going to happen. So what are we going to end up with? We're going to end up with no more affordable rentals and we're going to lose a lot. We're going to lose green space. We're going to lose character. We're going to lose heritage. We're going to lose the walk-up rentals that are more affordable. And who, in terms of amenities, who's going to be able to afford to pay the kind of rents that you have to pay in new builds? Only multinationals, not small, local businesses such as we have now, but who are leaving in droves because of the the city taxes and other, and other costs. leaving in droves because of the, the city taxes and, and other, and other costs. So I, I just, I just don't have confidence that this is actually going to achieve the ends that, that you're setting out to achieve and that I think most people would, would agree are, are good concepts. And I do also want to say, I, I'm sorry to hear that the, one of the renters said they feel like a second-class citizen. I can assure you where I live, it's not like that. We have many renters on our block and they're included. We have block parties, they're included in everything we do. But I can tell you that I feel like a second-class citizen right now. I feel that anybody that owns a so-called single-family house, and by the way, almost nobody around here where I live is in a single-family house. There are suites, there are laneway houses, there's almost nobody that you would call single-family. But we're made to feel like, that we should feel guilty that this is wrong somehow. And I, I would love to see you allowing us to have more than one secondary suite. It doesn't have to be a basement suite, but to have two secondary suites, it could be an attic, a, a, above-floor suite, as well as a laneway house. I think there's a lot more room for, even though it's already fairly dense in the area I live, I think there's room for it to be more dense. And what I would love to see is to, for you to, for the city to make it faster, easier and less expensive to make these kind of modifications, to make enhancements to what already exists. And I'd like to just quote from Counselor Adrian Carr years ago, who said the most affordable home is the one already built. That's still true today. And Speaker number 58, a young man who said, he thought it was dreadful that these three-story rentals in Carisdale were, would be torn down for four-story condos. I totally agree with him. But what does he think is going to happen if this goes through? The six-story buildings will replace those three-story affordable rentals. For what? Something that is not going to be affordable. In fact, I don't see it as being very different from the condos, other than it'll be rental instead of condos. And in, I remember hearing Counselor Pete Frye speak at a heritage event a few years ago, and I, sorry if I'm, I'm misquoting you, but my takeaway from what you said was that in Strathcona, it was still a beautiful, characterful neighborhood, but, but all kinds of densification had taken place, but it was sort of behind the fronts of these character buildings and heritage, so that when you walk around the neighborhood that everybody loves there, it still felt the same and yet achieved having more density. And I, I don't see why we can't do something like that in, in other parts of Vancouver. So there, there, there's so many other, other reasons why I feel this simply won't work, but I think that the concepts are something that are worth pursuing. And, and I also just want to bring up again the Senoc development, 6,000 units to go in there. And where are we going to have space for all these extra people when we know we've already got 6,000 units that could produce space for up to 9,000 people is what I have read about that development? So there's lots of stuff already happening.
Thank you. We're at the five minutes. Appreciate you calling in this evening. There are no questions. Next, Council, we have a person, in-person speaker, Jan Alexander.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Jan Alexander and I'm here because I work really hard in my community to develop good relationships and I really believe in ground-based architecture where communities can be very strong and collected and connected to nature. I am opposed to this proposal, partly because I'm really concerned about unintended consequences. I really looked at the map of the entire city. I feel that north, south, east and west across the city, we will have developments of real concern and real impacts on our neighborhoods, the people living in them. I looked at the map of my neighborhood and really, I prepared a map here and I mounted it on foam core just to show, I don't know if you can see it in the camera, but everybody will be familiar with what colloquially has been called the blue line map.
All right, Speaker, I'll have to go back to the microphone because we can't hear you.
Okay, I'll just put this here. Colloquially, I think what people have been calling this, those who happen to know about it really, because so many people are not aware of these changes that have been proposed in our communities. But I put together this blue line map because it, I figured out that it, that blue line in my neighborhood has taken up about 33% of the housing, the individual properties in my neighborhood. And then I kind of thought, well, how many houses are they? So we made a big, huge map and mounted it this big so we could look at the actual individual addresses and count them up. Well, I think there are about 400, 1,400 properties in my neighborhood that'll be impacted by this if it proceeds. That's 1,400 properties, how many houses? You know, with this new duplex zoning that we could be building, that is maybe, that could be four households there on those 1,400 properties. How many properties rentals are we trying to encourage in the neighborhood? What if instead of making these rentals and rental buildings just in this one area along the arterials, but what if we took our whole neighborhood and did what we might call, well, lots of people call it gentle density, but let's not be gentle about it at all. Let's get some carrots going here. Maybe change the FSR, drop the FSR to maybe, I don't know, say 0.4 or even what it was before, 0.5. And then have some carrots, let's put some carrots out there that anybody within our community, like maybe a family wants to put another rental on their property or a developer, a small developer, put together one or two lots and have some carrots. Like if you keep a big, huge, massive tree, you get some zoning density for that. You put a rental on there, you get some zoning density for that. And just keep cranking it up. I think the character zoning really worked. Some good properties are going forward for that. At, I think that took it up to a point, up to maybe 8.5. I know a really good project that's going at 30, 30 and large, Birmingham Woods, and great architects are working on that. I went and walked it the other day with a potential buyer and I think it's got real possibilities and I don't think it would really take much. When I say unintended consequences, I'm very concerned about, as, as many of us are aware, people, anybody living on arterials or in the Canby area, they don't know what to do. They don't know whether to stay in their neighborhood, they're facing having, and maybe someone knocking on their door wants to put together a land assembly. These things take years and years and years of uncertainty and people having to, oh my gosh, engage in multimillion-dollar decisions with their neighbors instead of being so secure in things like aging in place. You know, just today I had a call from a neighbor, so excited, I'm just feel so joyful, they just had a baby. Well, my gosh, I'm hoping I get to know that baby for maybe, I don't know, the rest of my life. Because, you know, at the same time, I was actually feeling a medical call from another friend who first met me when I was three days old. I came home from the hospital, she came across and saw me in my baby carriage. We are still friends today. Those are the types of strong, solid relationships that we need in our neighborhoods to keep us able to age in place and have families helping each other. It takes trust, it takes knowing each other, it takes long-range planning. And wouldn't it be great to do all their planning with landscape architects who do understand? I don't know, maybe we could open up some creeks around the neighborhoods and maybe have the focus around those or just really get away from these really tall buildings. I, you know, having six-story buildings overlooking the rest of the neighborhood, I think that's very unfortunate. I think I'd like to know how, where are the kids going to play? Where we, when we develop these kind of projects, it's all about families. I think that's great. Let's get the families onto the single-family lots or maybe put a couple in together, maximum maybe 100 feet, then it's not too big a development. Unlike some large projects, we could have lots of individual owners. Thank you very much.
You're at your five minutes, so I don't see questions for you, but I do want to thank you for your participation tonight. Appreciate it. And with that, I'll move on to the next speaker. We've got Speaker 112, who is Terrell Rothery. Terrell Rothery.
Speaker 112 is not on the line.
Thank you, Clerks. Speaker 113 is Barbara May.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes, please, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I bet you're all exhausted. I am a resident of Vancouver and I'm strongly opposed to the streamlining rental plan that seeks to add density to many neighborhoods across the city. Some of you have said that rejecting staff's plans would be going back to the status quo. This is absolutely incorrect. It is not only the only plan available to you, there are far better ones out there and whichever we as a city adapt must include neighborhood-based planning with residents and businesses, meaning meaningful consultation with all neighbors. We need to get this right if we ever hope to have an affordable Vancouver. Don't vote yes to this current plan just because it is faster, it makes it easier for developers to build because the wrong plan will have consequences for years to come. As we have witnessed, prices of all homes, whether they be singles, detached apartments, condos or townhouses, are beyond the reach of many individuals to rent or buy. City staff's answer is to build as much as possible, as fast as possible, under the Quick Start Plan in as many neighborhoods as possible. But building more doesn't fix the problem, as we have seen time and time again, and building quickly across the city will continue to push prices upwards. A friend of mine recently sold her mother's house, which was on the Canby corridor for $8 million for a regular house. I mean, things are getting crazy. Looking at page 10 of the SRP referral report, even the social housing envisioned along the blue-lined streets is too expensive for many people who work in nearby shops and support the local economy. Please don't ram this housing plan through without thought to individual neighborhoods, housing needs and types, and most importantly, affordability. We don't have a housing crisis, we have an affordability crisis. Let's make a better plan together. On my block, out of the 20 houses located on my block, six are rental. The people who live in those houses are family with young children, multi-generational families, students renting individual rooms and pet owners. Within the same block, there are several secondary suites available as well as laneway houses. Many of these renters have lived in the neighborhood for years and are part of our community. If this plan goes through, my street is one of the streets that would be affected by this rezoning and all those renters would be forced out with nowhere to go but more expensive houses. So I would really consider this plan very carefully and I would also split it into three ways. I don't think that a, a business shopping area should be paired together with rentals on arterial streets. It causes a lot of confusion and I think the public, the public needs to be aware of what's happening to their city. Thank you.
Thanks for your time this evening. There are no questions for you, so I will move on to the next speaker. Council, we've got Speaker number 114, Michael Butler.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes, please, whenever you're ready.
Great. Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. I know it's going pretty late, so I'll try to keep it short. I am strongly in support of this bill. Bottom line is Vancouver does need more affordable properties. I just found a new rental three months ago and I can assure you the process was very difficult and I had to go way over my budget just to find somewhere to live, which was problematic to say the least. I think ensuring housing security for everyone on the economic strata is a necessity for a healthy economy and a healthy culture. And, you know, you see artists, restaurant workers, people that you might not think are essential, but I would say definitely are essential for a healthy culture and economy, are leaving the city in droves simply just because they can't afford to live here anymore. I think without affordable housing, the economy and the culture will begin to stagnate in Vancouver. The housing market here is, I believe, hyperinflated. I looked at the average price of a house in the city and MLS stats says that it's just under $1.5 million, which is like unbelievable to me. I think it's completely unsustainable and, you know, it, it's really disheartening for a lot of people. Like I'm 26 and I, I moved here six years ago from Calgary with the hopes of, you know, going to school, starting a family, buying a house, and a lot of those things just seem completely out of reach for me when I'm just struggling to pay rent every I think that I do agree with some of the people that are opposed, just with a few of the issues. I think environmental sustainability and obviously like congestion and traffic needs to be kept in mind. Green space and sightlines need to be preserved as much as possible and obviously continuing to work on public transports and bike lanes, things like that will help a lot with the Just to conclude, I think the things that make the city great are, you know, being threatened by the unaffordability of living here. And yeah, I think, you know, we do need to preserve the greenness and that's one of the most beautiful parts of this city. And, you know, someone talking about the birds and people talking about the gardens, I agree with that absolutely. But unfortunately, or, you know, for better or worse, I don't really know, humans come first and making sure that everyone has a place to live and can feel like they have financial stability and security is of the utmost importance. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time tonight. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move to the next speaker. We have Speaker 115, Victor Rizov.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes, please.
Sounds good. Hi there, guys. I hope you're all still awake. My name is Victor Rizov and I'm a 26-year-old environmental engineer working out of Vancouver. I'm a renter here. I focus on greenhouse gas emissions and climate consulting. Anyways, I'm in support of this motion because I believe that whether we, no matter what happens, the city is going to densify. The question is, are we going to have it be above board or are we going to have it be in a black market type of way? We're already seeing densification. When you walk around any neighborhood, as people have mentioned here before, there's renters all over the place and laneway houses and basement suites. But the issue is that people who rent in those kinds of environments don't have equal rights as the people who own the buildings that they're living in, whereas apartments are much more equitable places to live. And so this density is happening one way or another. We might, in my personal opinion, I believe that we should allow for commercial properties to be built, so like little grocery stores in neighborhoods, so between like Canby and Main, you know, having little grocery stores there to allow all of those people who live in that area already, who, you know, when you have more than one family in a single-family home, you should have that, you should have those people have access to amenities and we should allow for that type of zoning as well. But the reason why I bring this up is because of an anecdote, well, I want to share an anecdote. When I was in third-year university at UBC, a couple of days before the start of the semester, I was desperately looking for housing. I managed to secure something that was somewhat affordable, but it ended up being managed by a landlord that wasn't very present, wasn't very involved. And there were seven of us crammed into this house and there was, I hate to bring it up, but there was mummified rats in the walls. It was very, very disgusting conditions. And the thing is that I ended up getting kicked out of that house because the city got, got noted, got wind of this, of this house and my landlord basically kicked me out so that he could make it all look like it was up to code in there. So that all said, I just want to kind of, I summarize one of the issues that I see here, the skepticism around whether or not increasing density will actually lower costs. And I tend to agree with some of the people on here that it's not for certain. Increased supply, yes, should lead to lower costs, but it depends on how quickly it's rolled out. If it's a slow rollout, prices will be high, developers will profit. I propose a model that we have seen work other, in other places in the world, notably in Vienna. It's called the Vienna Housing Model, one where the city has taken a lot of ownership over developing social housing that's affordable. Vienna is 1/3 the price to rent as Paris and over 2/3 of the population, they're high-income as well, rent and don't own. It's been an amazing success story for the citizens of that city. Buildings are built in a way that's taken into account the local environment, the local ambiance, and it's been a wild success over the last 100 years. And I believe we can replicate that in Vancouver as well. That would remove, that would make any property 25% cheaper because as I understand, it's usually the profit margins developers are going for. And instead of people paying for profits that go into shareholders' pockets, those profits could instead be redirected into local communities. And remember, the more we densify, the more taxes we have, the more amenities we can build locally. So that means we can build more schools, more community centers as we densify and that way our neighborhoods will become more bustling. Remember, nothing stays the same. Vancouver 100 years ago was mostly farms. Now it's very different, the character of these neighborhoods are always changing and they're going to keep on changing. And that is just the nature of us being a young country and that is what we're going to witness here. So for all those reasons, I vote, or rather, I don't vote on it for anything, that's your guys' job, I support this motion and I would really recommend and urge you guys to look at the Vienna Housing Model. at the Vienna Housing Model. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much for your time this evening. Uh, we don't have any questions for you, so I'll just thank you for your participation tonight. Uh, council, that's the end of our list of, um, speakers that are registered, so we, I know there are a number of speakers on the line though, so I'm just going to move to, um, the next part of this meeting. So, um, we're, uh, we're gonna call three times for additional speakers. I'm just gonna make my first call now. So if there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, participant code five six seven two three pound, uh, before the close of the speakers list. Uh, this number's on Twitter and on livestream, and, um, uh, we're going to, I'm gonna go to the clerks now and, uh, see if there's anybody on the line. Warren Chambers. Just one second, council.
We have Max Kitner on the line.
Okay, uh, Max Kitner, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Um, I am in support of this motion. We are honestly wasting our time with public hearings that can bring out the worst to Vancouver. As a twenty-two-year-old renter who has lived on both the east and west side of the city, we really need action. People are being displaced because of the lack of housing, and it will only get worse with your continued inaction. Housing justice is climate justice, and this proposal is a small but tangible step that we can achieve. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. I don't see any questions, uh, for you. And so clerks, I'll ask if there's, uh, I think we have Leopold Wambersie on the line.
Yes, hi. I'm a first-time caller and longtime listener. It's also late, so I hope that I'll be able to speak coherently. Um, even though I don't believe it should be a condition for calling in, I am a resident of Vancouver, I'm a renter, I very strongly support this policy. Um, I'm calling in two capacities. Firstly, as a, as a young person in the city, as someone who understands how hard it is to find housing in the city, I have to live with five roommates to make it work, and while we have put effort into finding a lovely little community despite our absentee landlord, how will we ever start, start families in the city? I, I have friends who are PhD students at UBC and who are functionally homeless, or living in housing that is, is so subpar that it shouldn't exist anywhere in Canada, or hostage to awful dishonest landlords because they can't find housing, even market-rate housing. We desperately need more rental housing in Vancouver, both affordable but also market-rate, so we're not competing with every white-collar worker in the city. The current status quo is forcing everyone who isn't privileged enough to own a home right now to fight for the scraps, and I believe that's deeply unjust. This policy won't solve affordability, as a lot of the other speakers have said, um, but it's really a step in the right direction. I'm also calling as somebody who works as a researcher for a nonprofit working on climate work, and here, here the evidence is absolutely incontrovertible. Zoning is a climate issue, and the way we move ahead has to include densification. It's how we increase transit ridership, bring people closer jobs and amenities, create walkable communities, increase the efficiency of services, and you could, I can, I can just go on. Every apartment in Vancouver is a little less sprawl out into the Fraser Valley and a lot less carbon in the atmosphere. Finally, to conclude, I just wanna say that I spent part of my life growing up in an apartment building in a neighborhood that is denser than almost any place in Canada, and it was really beautiful and vibrant, and I strongly believe, like, no, I, I know that new mid-rise housing increases neighborhood character and definitely should not be feared. Thanks for letting me say my piece.
Thank you so much for calling in. I don't see any questions from counselors for you, so, uh, again, thanks so much. Um, I'm now gonna make my second call for speakers. If any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, code fifty-six seven two three pound before the close of the speakers list. Um, and this is available, the number's available on Twitter and on the livestream. Um, clerks, I'm gonna check with you if there are any other speakers on the line.
Elizabeth Murphy is on the line.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth Murphy. Please, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi there, sure can, five minutes, please.
Hi, thank you. Um, there are many different ways to provide more rentals and to accommodate growth that could be implemented through neighborhood-based planning. While I strongly support building more rentals, especially social and co-op housing, however, the recommendations in this report are an arbitrary citywide approach that lacks neighborhood context, therefore I cannot support this. There has been no notification or meaningful involvement of those who would be affected. The combining of dramatically different types of rezonings into one, um, public hearing is very confusing. There are actually three different zoning proposals in this one three hundred and forty-eight-page report. Uh, the proposed C2, uh, changes to zoning schedules and design guidelines include two types of changes. Uh, one, in all C2 zone citywide, the outright four-story strata would increase heights and decrease setbacks. This includes areas currently under recently approved community plans, such as Grandview, and would make commercial drive more, um, attractive to chain stores and price out even more of the local small businesses there and in many areas across the city. And two, in C2 zones in eligibility map for, um, six-story rentals. And then the third is the proposed RS RT zone changes, uh, that allow ran- random spot rezonings for rentals of up to six stories on arterials and four to five stories off arterials. Note that some areas in eligibility map cover existing apartment RM zones, such as along Cornwall Avenue, West Fourth Avenue, West Broadway, um, East Broadway, and Hastings. Yet there is no mention anywhere in the report that RM zones are eligible, uh, that, and this would displace many existing renters. These three different types of rezonings, uh, that should be in, in separate, uh, reports and, and also, uh, public hearings. Um, this proposal was, uh, from the previous council that was wiped out at the last election. Uh, you were all elected to do things differently. Um, please refer it back to staff to separate the three major, uh, zoning initiatives, allow for neighborhood-based planning work and community consultation, and provide a proper notification to the properties affected. Uh, the petition, "Our Communities, Our Plans," is opposed to these arbitrary rezoning policies that has now almost forty-five hundred signatures. My comments are mostly related to the new rental rezonings. Um, there is a lot of talk about single-family zoning, uh, that no longer exists in Vancouver since every lot can now have up to four units. The city's housing report says that these RS zones are fifty-three percent renters, and these people would also be displaced by this policy. This policy allows full-block assemblies, both on and off arterials. On arterials can be full-block assemblies as a single building. Off arterials may be limited per project to a maximum of a hundred feet frontage or a hundred and fifty feet, um, including a corner. However, there is no limit on how many projects can be on a block, so a developer could assemble a full block and supi- submit applications as separate back-to-back projects with the result covering the whole block. This is not the kind of incremental changes that established neighborhoods can absorb. It will have very big effects on displacement of both renters and owners over a vast area of the city. Heritage-listed properties are not exempted. They are not protected from demolition unless they are voluntarily secured on title by the owner, which few are, so most are at risk of demolition. It is unclear how it is anticipated that the services and amenities for this growth would be financed, given that DCLs and CACs would be waived. This is particularly problematic for neighborhoods also proposed to get a lot of increased growth from other major projects like the Jericho Lands or other neighborhoods that are already amenity deficient throughout the city. For example, Norquay was rezoned a decade ago, and they are still waiting for any of the amenities they were promised, even though they were underserved before their rezonings. Funding is already insufficient for schools and parents have to compete in lotteries.
Thanks so much for your time. You're right, you're five minutes, but councillor Hardwick has questions for you. Go ahead, councillor Hardwick.
Thanks, uh, very much. Just wanna make sure that I've got this right. So, your recommendation is that we refer back, split it into three, because as you outlined, we're dealing with three separate rezoning chunks within this, uh, report. Um, undertake proper community-level consultation and, and, uh, make sure that notification is done more thoroughly. Did I get it all?
Yes, and, and, uh, meaningful, uh, community consultation at a neighborhood-based level, for sure. Yeah, that's what really needs to happen, and, and it was totally missing in, in this whole process. Um, it, it seems like, um, as some of the other speakers have mentioned, that, um, it's just lazy. It's, it's, it's a lazy way of just trying to roll out a plan without really thinking it through and all of the impacts that this is gonna have, and each neighborhood, um, can have, you know, different solutions to, uh, providing more development, depending on what they have existing, what kind of housing stock they have, um, what other pro- major projects are going on in their, in their area, uh, what kind of amenities they already have, how much more they're gonna need over time. Like, all of these things need to be planned out, and of course, as you've pointed out many times, uh, and, and council has requested but has not yet received, we still need the data. We need to know, uh, how, how much growth, uh, we are going to have, and this is not just on, on straight, uh, data, but actually we need to do the proper analysis and, and figure out exactly what, what is, uh, gonna be, uh, projected, and, um, how that can be distributed so every neighborhood can take, um, a reasonable amount that they can absorb and, and still, uh, keep, you know, the things that are, are important and worth keeping, and making sure that we have the infrastructure to support whatever, uh, we need to, um, make sure that e- every community is successful and walkable and has all of the needs it has. But, um, growth is not benign. It, it, it has effects on the environment, regardless of how energy-efficient it is. The amount of development we have affects the environment, the embodied carbon that we are creating. And everything we demolish, everything we build has a carbon footprint, so we better make sure that what we're building is what we need, and it's gonna be affordable to the people that need, need it, the local people that need to be housed, and, um, for current and future generations. Like, we need to be thinking not just a ten-year plan, a thirty-year plan, we need to be building things that will last a hundred years. Like, these buildings that we're knocking down now have been around for over a hundred years. I live in a house that's, uh, designated heritage, and, and it's over a hundred years old, a hundred and ten years old. So, uh, you know, and, and it's been restored, so it can last another hundred years.
So that was one of the things I just wanted to touch on. Sorry to interrupt you, but you mentioned something.
Yeah, don't worry.
And that, that was that, that heritage properties are at risk of demolition.
Yeah, because, well, unless they are designated, like, uh, um, when they're just on the list, they aren't protected from demolition until they are designated on title. And like, for instance, my own place was a week away from demolition, even though it was a listed heritage building. Uh, but as the new owner, I was able to, uh, do a heritage project with the city instead. It's now permanently protected on title, and I won a heritage award for it, and also did an infill. I built a duplex on, on a separate, uh, part of the property and, um, also put in suites. So, um, you know, I think that there's ways that we can grow and, and, and accommodate for growth and rentals and owners.
Thank you so much. We are, we are at the five-minute limit, so, uh, do wanna thank you for your time this evening, um, and there are no other questions for you, so, so thanks for calling in. Uh, we do have other speakers on the line, council, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, at least eight at this point. Uh, the next is Kit Sod- Soder, Kit Sodder.
Thanks for your worship. Uh, hi, everyone. Um, thank you for your time. My name's Kit Sodder, and I'm a renter in Kensington Cedar Cottage. And in, uh, listening tonight in the last two, two, uh, hearings, um, the number four has come up a number of times for me. I've, I've lived here in Vancouver for four years. Uh, I live in an apartment with four rooms. My wife and I moved here in twenty seventeen, uh, and we got married, and this was the first apartment that we moved into after we got married. I live in a forty-eight unit, six-story, purpose-built rental on Kingsway, on an arterial, exactly like the buildings that you would approve with this policy. I've lived here for four years. My wife and I are UBC-educated professionals. We've lived in the interior, we've lived in Victoria, I've served the province at the highest levels. I've supported a number of you in this community. I have sat on the Renters Advisory Committee for the last six months with councillors Fry and Swanson. I'm an active volunteer with a number of nonprofits and charities. I lead a nonprofit focused on sustainable finance, and I run my own small business. And four weeks before the pandemic was declared, I had a daughter. Four rooms on the fourth floor in a purpose-built rental. And then we locked down for four months. And this was the only world my daughter knew. These apartments are not high-density. They're missing middle. They're complete communities. For four years, my wife and I have been looking for an apartment with a second bedroom. A week ago, we signed a rental agreement to move across the hall because everyone on our floor knows us, and our property manager held the unit because we know everyone in our building. We haven't been able to find two bedrooms for less than twenty-five hundred dollars in four years. This apartment is not too large. It is just short enough that a little girl can hold her father's hand and climb a staircase. The elevator ride is just short enough that she can learn to count to four, and she cries it out every time we get to our floor. We have spent the better part of two years making sure that we walked the four blocks in our neighborhood to Betard on Fraser, to Pallet on Knight, to make sure that our local community businesses were supported. So, I want to remind all of you that this is the beginning of the fourth year of your term, that you got elected, almost all of you overwhelmingly, on a commitment to affordability, to tackling climate change, and to building spaces for Vancouverites of all walks of life. The depth of this policy is about forty meters. The impact of buildings like mine is a replication of these forty-eight units with not just forty-eight renters, but families. My neighbors, who are archaeologists with a cat next door, who I take care of every time they go out into the field, the sisters across the hall who work in game design and television, who made sure that we got their unit to have a home for our little girl, so that my wife and I could stop sleeping on the floor of our one-bedroom and den. So this is your fourth year. This is one policy that isn't perfect, but will have an impact, and I encourage all of you. And I encourage all of you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. You do have questions. Councillor Kirby Young, up to five minutes.
Yeah. Hi, Kit. Thanks for speaking and sharing a very real experience. It was very clearly conveyed. I have one question for you, and that is really simply this. It has been suggested by a number of speakers and, you know, council may be responsive to the suggestion that council should either A, potentially refer this back to staff or components of it, or potentially alternatively refer it to the Vancouver Plan for inclusion in different study. I wonder if you can comment on what you think that would mean as a real family and in terms of rental in the city overall from a broader policy perspective.
Thanks, councillor. The the real impact is going to be the question of whether or not we become a family of four. The real impact is whether or not we find another unit with three bedrooms or two bedrooms and den so that we can have a second child. And the real impact is we already lost our closest group of friends who have all moved to the suburbs, my sister, who is moving to Victoria, because none of them could find stable rentals and stay in the city. So that's the real impact if you delay.
Okay. That's very clear. Thanks. I'm going to keep it short because it's late, but I really appreciate you speaking to council.
Thanks so much. Thank you. That's it for questions. Appreciate you calling in tonight. Next speaker is Owen Brady.
Hello, can you hear me?
I sure can. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Stewart and council. My name's Owen Brady. Like several previous callers, I could be affected by this policy. I live in an RM zone, but my home faces across lane to RS zone lots that could be rezoned for five-story social housing under this policy. And I think that's great. I strongly support it. I also hope to see six-story mixed use across the street from my building. It would be great to have a grocery store and other services too, as the case may be. We desperately need more apartments in this city. That is a fact. Our rental vacancy rate is perpetually too low and we know from experience and basic economic reasoning, that means that there is too much competition for apartments and rents have and will continue to go up. I have personal experience looking for an apartment in Vancouver and it's not fun at all, especially when you need pet-friendly rentals. This policy is a no-brainer. When we build more new rental, we know that people move out of existing apartments, creating vacancies in older homes that are more affordable. While it's true, as councillor Swanson says, that rents in these apartments will reset to market rates on turnover, how much those rents go up is a function of the vacancy rate. This policy is not a big departure from the status quo. People have been accustomed to rental rezonings in Vancouver since at least 2012. It's really disappointing how genuinely unambitious these policies actually are and how much they have been cut down from the original policy that council approved in 2019 and even the interim policy that preceded it. The people who always say the sky is falling continue to say the sky is falling, no matter how many West Side streets get excluded from this and other proposals. We should be trying to make policy that is actually meeting the real needs of Vancouverites, not trying to make policy that is as small as possible in order to try to appease those who will never be appeased. Many of those opposed to the SRP have talked a lot about consultation. This policy actually was covered by several news outlets that I'm aware of during the consultation periods. I know that some of the residents associations were involved outside of the the first open house in twenty, early 2020 in Kitsellaw. There were several neighbourhood consultations. I have also seen several editorials in different outlets, all of them opposing and often misrepresenting this post. But I, along with thousands of others, participated in many of these consultations. They were really well done. Planning staff did a great job. The truth is, this policy has been consulted to death. I also think this policy brings a refreshing element of fairness. People care a lot about fairness and often people living on the east side feel that West Side is getting special treatment when it comes to deciding which neighbourhoods will not see any change. I think the way this has been arranged with focused consultations in several neighbourhoods, but a policy that is fair and applied equally to all, is a feature and not a bug. So instead of putting this policy on trial against a hypothetical that doesn't exist, I would like you to think about what it would look like to reject this policy or refer it, which is is basically rejecting it at this point. I mean, it's been on the go for two and a half years. So, over the last decade, we know that most development in Vancouver has been detached houses and duplexes. People get displaced all the time from this unsecured rental. We know that hasn't worked. Rebuilding houses into new houses and renovating character homes is not producing affordability. This council passed a motion saying that renters should not be forced to live on polluted arteries. Did you mean it? This is the smallest possible step toward that goal. If you can't support this, you don't mean it. This council voted for the Climate Emergency Action Plan. Was that sincere? The city is not on track to achieve its emissions targets. If we can't build more rental apartments in transit-accessible locations, there is no way we can meet our goals. Households do not disappear because apartments are not built for them. They move to Langley where they are much more likely to drive, or they move to Houston because Vancouver's been adding a lot of tech jobs, the third fastest growing in North America. But if there's nowhere for them to live, eventually employees and employers alike are going to get frustrated and move to other jurisdictions in North America, which, you know, almost universally will have higher emissions. We have a real chance to lead here to show other cities how you can build a affordable and climate-friendly city. You've heard recently how difficult it is to fit council's priorities into a five percent budget increase. Council directed staff to bring the SRP forward more than two years ago. Council did not intervene to redirect staff during that time. It would be a huge waste of taxpayer dollars and the time of everyone who participated in good faith, like myself, in the many phases of consultation that went into these recommendations. If you're serious about climate change, you have heard that these energy-efficient wood frame parking light buildings are key to meeting our climate targets. Referring this plan is the same as defeating it at this point. If you think passing the Vancouver Plan is going to be easier than this, you know, it's just not realistic. Like, real change doesn't get any smaller than this. I've been in some of the Vancouver Plan workshops and, you know, they're talking about six to twelve-story buildings, you know, whether that's preferred away from transit nodes or more focused growth near transit nodes.
Thank you, Speaker. Give me a little extra time there, but I want to thank you for calling in this evening. And I am going to move on to the next speaker as there are no questions for you. But thank you for staying up late and participating tonight. Thank you. The the next speaker is John Guramel.
Hi, Owen. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and staff. Even though this call has lasted for the last four hours, I patiently been waiting to express my strong support of the application for we are much broader than just homeowners or people living in the neighbourhood. And so that's why I disagree with the concerns about this being a blanket, one-size-fits-all policy. Like a previous speaker, I think it's much more fair for these approvals to be done on a wider basis because we all have a stake in what housing gets built in, let's say, Point Gray. And, you know, we should all have a say. And when it's just a single rezoning and there are dozens of them happening, it's very hard to hear about them when you're not in the neighbourhood. The homeowners groups, they have a lot easier easier time organising to come to these hearings, especially for spot rezonings. And with these broader rezonings and these broader plans that are publicised, especially in the news, you you get a much more diverse group of speakers who who that you usually don't hear from. So I have more to say, but I know it's late, so I'll just leave you on just to say that I hope you vote in support of this policy and have a good evening.
Thank you so much for your time tonight. There are no questions for you, so I will move on to the next speaker. But again, thanks so much for coming in this evening. We have Ethan Whitting next.
Hello?
Hi there. You're you're up. Five minutes. Yep, please go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor and staff. How are you guys doing tonight? My name is Ethan Whiting and I'm a and I am from Vancouver. I went away to University at Queen's in Kingston, Ontario. I've recently come back and now I'm residing in Vancouver. And I simply cannot believe how crazy our rental housing prices are. We need more rentals in the city to help with, to help accommodate young residents like myself. All types of rentals will help elaminate our housing crisis by ensuring an increase in supply. We'll free up other housing stocks that can be affordable. I was listening in on Tuesday's hearing and one of the speakers, Michael, really spoke out to me. I want to echo Michael's testimony to you guys. He hit the nail on the head. We need fewer amendments, fewer spots rezoning for each rental building, and we need action. Please take action tonight and vote in support of this policy change. It will ensure we have diverse communities that will foster sustainable neighbourhoods and thus a more sustainable city. By allowing more rentals in dense urban areas in our city, we will help gentrify our areas and lower the lower the prices of rental housing. Therefore, allowing young young students coming back from university and and the lower income residents to be able to afford and stay in the city that we all love. That's everything for me tonight. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you so much for your time this evening. I don't see any questions. And I'm going to move on to the next speaker. We have Tuba Sammez.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Yep. Up to the five minutes whenever you're ready.
Hello, Mayor Stewart and council. Like so many others, I've also wanted to call in to show my support of this application. I've lived in the West End for the last nine years and it's really becoming very difficult to live here with the ever-increasing rent prices. We need more rentals in the city. There's too much demand and not enough resources, which which is resulting in these unreasonably high prices. I know many of my friends and family friends that had to move out of the city and the only reason is just so hard to find secure housing. Although this project is not going to decrease rent prices, it is a step in the right direction. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you. There are no questions for you, so we'll move to the next speaker. Thanks. We have Devon Hossack.
Hello. Am I on?
Yes, you are. Please go ahead. Up to five minutes.
All right. Thank you very much. I know we're all tired. So I just want to say I completely agree with one of the previous speakers who noted that there are real consequences to when we tear down buildings and what we tear down in our region. And that concerns me because I think when we go and we don't approve homes in Vancouver, we lead to mountains of trees being torn down and farmlands being, I can't think of the word, the soil being turned over to build housing hours down the street, hours down the highway, where carbon-intensive vehicles travel back and forth every day, as opposed to building in a city where, you know, I know we all like our lawns, but they're not very sustainable either. Now, you've heard a lot of stories over the last few days, very personal touching ones, and I don't want to reiterate everything you've heard because it's late. And frankly, as one of the first speakers said, I believe he was the fellow who worked as a developer with councillor Hardwick's father, actually, said, "You already have the data." And that means it's time to act. We've all seen the city planning process. There's been little else to do over the last few years. However, it's really the next year you need to think about. And how will voters react in our city to years of planning, all this time, for even the most smallest measure to be referred back to city staff for more years of planning? As speakers have highlighted, these delays have had real effects where four-four-floor shattered buildings have been built instead of six-floor rental building because it's easier. Admittedly, a homeowner, me and my family can endure that, but my friends who are renters certainly can. And nor can local businesses. Look at Modern Burger, who sold their property on West Broadway and moved a few blocks to the east. Now, granted, this is good for me. It gives me the opportunity to enjoy their mini burgers and shakes more often. Yet I wonder what would happen if their process, if this process would have been made easier for them. What if they could have built a rental building and partnered with a developer and still owned their property? They could have returned to the community and kept their vital role in it instead of coming to mind. Now, there's a reason your staff felt comfortable bringing forward the small change now and that's because it'll help these local store owners build back better from the pandemic. Imagine, if businesses are now returning, they could have kitchens that are set up to use alternative forms of gas and their buildings would be better insulated to help them keep costs down. That's one of the benefits of the set form of buildings before you. They've been designed by your staff to be more energy efficient and in addition to being more livable. That has a direct benefit for the renters who will call these places home, these families. And I can guarantee you, they'll be feel far more comfortable and have more light than they would in a basins suite. Those green roofs and amenities spaces will help unite these buildings and slowly rebuild Vancouver's communities. Now, I know some speakers have expressed fears these small changes could shatter that very thing. Then again, I remember four years ago, duplexes seemed scary too, and now apparently they're being embraced by some of their harshest critics. Which goes to show, there's always fear when it comes to change, even small changes. I understand that. We've all been through a lot lately. But I ask you, in another year, in another four years, will we come back and say, "This was too much change?" Or will we say, "Can we believe we spent four days debating these such small issues?" Thank you for your time, Mayor and City Council. I hope you get some well-deserved rest after this.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions for you, but appreciate your phoning in tonight. We've got Oliver South next.
Oliver South has disconnected. He's not on the line.
Okay. The last individual I have on my list is Richard Nantell.
Yes, my turn to go ahead.
Please go. Up to five minutes.
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, I'm completely opposed to this dramatic rezoning process that you're trying to impose on the citizens of Vancouver with very little public input. And it just seems like another vision Vancouver done deal that you're imposing on neighbourhoods, residents and ratepayers. I I don't think, we've been building Vancouver up to the sky and around Lowhee Mall and Brentwood and Oakridge and everything like this. And we've been creating more and more units, but it's none of it's affordable. And I I get the idea that we should have purpose-built rental in this city. I think that we should have co-op housing projects. I get all that. But the fact is, not everybody in Canada can live in this city. And if we're at the logical conclusion of where we're going here, are we going to create like a Manhattan City with no residential neighbourhoods or and we're just going to fill up the landfills of the province with torn-down housing that's that is affordable? And I don't think increasing the housing supply is going to really increase affordability in this city. And I just don't really think that I like the process that's happening right here. We have community plans. We had Vancouver plans and all these public input plans. And it seems like our Department of Dance of Vacation and city councils in the last twenty years basically selectively take what they like from community involvement and public involvement and residential involvement and completely disregard what people are really wanting, and that is to maintain vital and unique neighbourhoods in the city without trashing them and mowing them down with bulldozers and putting them in landfills. I think that the city, the residents of this city and the and the citizens of this city don't mind putting selective co-op and purpose-built rental in this house, but it has to be, it can't be, we can't give you, City Council, a blank slate to do whatever it wants on to do whatever it wants on spot rezonings and basically demolish the city in a way that you think is valid and appropriate as opposed to what we think, right? I think you have to start listening to the broader public opinion out there and that is that a lot of people in this city, like the parking tax initiative and all that, don't like the direction of where this council is going or the majority of members on this council are taking us. And again, I would urge you to not approve this zoning initiative which has massive implications for so many neighborhoods that have, you know, tried to, you know, basically have public input into the process and are basically slammed in the face with done deals like this. And I would say that you better vote no to this or prepare to go on the next civic election next November. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, there are no questions for you, thanks so much. I am going to call a third and final time now, Council, for participants. It is 11:40 and so we'll give five minutes for folks to call in. So I'll come back to you at 11:45. Just so you know, with the way this is going this evening, we have a slightly different process. There will be then another 15-minute waiting period that will come after this, after we close the speakers list. So 11:40, we will see you at 11:45. Checking for quorum here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Think we've got, we've got quorum. Okay, clerks, I'm gonna check and see is there, is anybody else phoned in? Or come to chambers, uh, for the last five minutes?
Uh, we have nobody on the line and no one in the chamber.
Great, thank you so much then. So, uh, seeing there are no additional speakers, the speakers list is now closed. Um, so Council, uh, as, uh, it's been a long hearing, um, the clerks have advised that we have a slightly different process here. So, um, anyone who wishes to submit a written, written comments to Council, uh, must do so within the next fifteen minutes. So, uh, we will keep the, uh, council meeting open in order to do, uh, allow people fifteen minutes to send in written, uh, submissions. The comments can be submitted in writing through our online web form at Vancouver dot C A forward slash public dash hearing dash comments. And of course, the, the clerks are tweeting that link out, uh, once again. Vancouver dot C A forward slash public dash hearing dash comments. And it is, uh, eleven forty-six, uh, Council, so I will come back at twelve oh one and then we can, uh, close the meeting and, uh, and then, uh, refer it to December fourteenth. So we'll see you at, uh, twelve oh one.
Mayor, can I just clarify if we're sending it December fourteenth or to the next council meeting?
It'll be, uh, in my script, I have December fourteenth, but I will double-check with clerks when I come back to you next.
Be great, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Had a extra correspondence that has come in over the last fifteen minutes. And, um, as we've stated at the beginning of the, the meeting a few times, uh, December fourteenth, that six P M. is the, is the date we, uh, would be, uh, reconvening this meeting. The, uh, reason why is because we have another round of, uh, questions. Uh, at least one round to, uh, to staff and, uh, you know, uh, leaving enough time to debate, uh, what's been a, uh, fairly well-attended public meeting. So, uh,
Point of procedure?
Yeah, Counselor Carr?
Yes, I believe that the motion that I put forward was, um, to refer debate and decision to the next council meeting, which would be...
We, uh, the motion, I checked with the clerk, the, the motion that was passed earlier was to extend the meeting, uh, but to refer debate and decision to a later meeting, uh, not-
I'm almost positive I said, I'm sorry, I can't review the tapes, but, um, I'm almost positive I said the next council meeting.
Well, I've been, uh, I have been conferring with the clerks and this is what they've sent me back in writing, so-
Point of, point of, um, procedure, Mayor? Counselor Kirbyon?
Counselor Kirbyon?
I also heard Counselor Carr make that motion explicitly for November sixteenth, the next council meeting, and that weighed into voting in favor of-
There is no time, this is why I've been conferring with clerks, there is no time on the sixteenth for us to complete this business. Um, so that's why December fourteenth has been stated, uh, as the beginning of this, this meeting.
But the motion was passed and so the direction stands, does it not, as a point of procedure? It can't be, it can't be undone unless it's undone by the body, is that not correct?
According, according to the clerks, the motion that was passed was only to extend the meeting, not to determine the date to reconvene.
Perhaps we do need to review the tape, 'cause that's not my recollection either. I concur with Counselor Carr, that was not what was, what was, uh-
But, uh-
I'm on the queue, just noting that.
Yep, there's no, uh, there's no queue at this point, 'cause we, we are just finished now. Um-
Um, so I'll just weigh in, um, is I did hear Counselor Carr indicate there was to extend the here speakers and to refer debate and decision to the next council meeting as unfinished business, uh, which we've done previously.
Yeah, there wasn't a bunch of discussion around the motion, but the motion as passed by the clerks, as indicated by the clerks to me in writing is that it's, uh, only to extend the meeting, not the date to recon, not the date to reconvene.
Do we need to, point of procedure, do we need to propose a motion to review the tape then or to challenge the chair? Because I'm quite clear on the most-
You can judge the chair if you want. It's not really a ruling, um, because it, it, this date has been established since the beginning of this meeting, of December fourteenth, um, because that's the only time available and that's, uh, I know that I read it at the beginning of my script and I know that, 'cause it's in my script. And I, I've got it in my script now that December fourteenth is the, is the date that this will be reconvened.
But they had a motion sub- subsequent to that and a council motion and direction.
Yeah, I'm not-
I believe, Mayor, problems-
So, you guys, you, you can do what you want, but this is, uh, that's the information I have from the clerk. Um, and so what we're doing now is the public comments that we've received will be assembled by the clerk and distributed to council members, uh, prior to the decision. So now we're recessing and continuing, uh, this meeting on, on December fourteenth. And I believe the clerks, that's at three P M. on December fourteenth. And that's, uh, the, the other thing to remind you is it's important you don't engage in any discussion, uh, about this until we've actually, um, finished with the item between now and then. Okay, so-
So, as a point of procedure, can you advise, uh, Mayor, please, what council's recourse is to review the motion that was actually put forward?
There's no recourse at this point, really. I mean, it's, um, there, there is no room on the sixteenth meeting, uh, to do this. There hasn't been since the beginning and that's why the date was at the beginning of the, you know, was expressed at the beginning of this meeting. It's in my script and I've, I've said it, uh, a couple of times, I think, through this meeting. There's also a, another public hearing on the night of the sixteenth, a different public hearing. So that's why there's a time crunch.
Yes, I under- I understand that, but it's also up to council how we get through the business and we have committee as well the following day.
While public hearings are set well in advance, so, so, I mean, we're-
I, I understand that, Mayor, but this procedure is no different than council has taken previously and we've dealt with things for the full agenda before then finished business. So I'm just-
All, it's all set, Council. There, there's really, so really, we're, we are, that we've completed the business, we're, we're recessed now, so that's it. Um, so, um, thanks and have a good night and thanks for, uh, thanks for, uh, staying up late to finish this item.
When did we recess? Do we need a motion to recess?
Nope, you don't need a motion to recess. We're, we're all done. Because we finished the, we finished the requirements of the public hearing with, and it was expressed in the beginning of the meeting that this, if not finished, would, would finish on December fourteenth. So, um, you know, I've been conferring with the clerks, uh, all evening on this and so that's where we are. Okay, thanks then.
Everyone.
Goodnight. Thank you, goodnight.